Supervisor Madrone?
Present.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Bone?
Here.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Morning.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, and if you please join us for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission for one goal, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's nice to have so many people in the chambers. All right, so CIO Hayes, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Good morning, Chair Madrone. We do have two modifications. Item D-18 will be polled for discussion, and item I-3 will be polled and will return on the 18th.
Can you say to get out of here?
Yeah. Item D-18 is polled for discussion, and item I-3 will return on the 18th.
Great.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Glad to have you here with us. I know your voice is still somewhere else, but we appreciate you being here. Thank you. Okay, with that, let's see, we have a lot of proclamations today. It's going to take us a while to go through these because this is our opportunity to really honor folks and programs that are very important, so bear with us today as we proceed. It'll take us a while to get through the consent. We're leaving them on the consent agenda, but we're going to go ahead and read some of these proclamations. We'll see how that goes. So the first one I have here that's on the consent is Godwit Day's proclamation sponsored by Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you. Hold on one second here.
You bet.
Organized. I have a few of them, so I just want to make sure I have the right one here.
Y'all getting ready for spring? We're seeing some windows towards the end of the week, aren't we?
It's snowing next week.
And snow next week, right.
So this is a proclamation for Godwit Days, which has been happening in our community for, I don't know, it seems like 40 years or something like that, a long time. It's happened every year. It brings folks from around the world. I affectionately call them bird nerds. Sometimes I find myself in that camp occasionally with the binoculars, looking at these amazing critters that fly across our planet. Whereas any one year, as many as 47 million people in the United States take trips, especially to watch and enjoy birds. I find that amazing. Whereas tourism continues to be important, contributing segment of our North Coast economy, and whereas Humboldt Bay rivers, estuaries, mountains, conifer forests, rugged oceans, coastal habitats offer a variety of bird species that surpass tolls of 40 states and 10 Canadian provinces, and whereas Godwit Days Spring Migration Bird Festival showcases a rich diversity of birds, attracting tourists from all over the United States and making Humboldt County a destination for birders, and whereas Godwit Days Spring Migration Festival is an educational tool to help maintain our natural habitats and diverse wildlife populations for the future by offering field trips throughout Humboldt County. And I want to say that there are, I think, 70 field trips available. Many of them are free. A lot of them have fees associated with them. And on the Friday night opener, there's at the Arcaded Community Center, there's a talk on the Condor Rehabilitation and Release Program, so if you want to come check that out, it's on the Friday of the starting of this festival. I don't have the date in front of me at the moment. Oh, actually, it's held April 13th through April 16th. So therefore, be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors encourages businesses and residents of Humboldt County to invite all their friends, it doesn't say that, but I think that should be in there, to actively participate in the annual Godwit Days Spring Migration Festival, to be held on those dates, which is the 18th through the 13th, and to welcome our birding visitors to the Pacific Northwest in all ways that will inspire them to migrate back, just as the birds have been doing for centuries. So I just wanted to put that out there, that we have this festival, and there you go. No one's here to receive it, I just wanted to let people know.
No pictures with the Godwits?
I don't have any pictures with Godwits, but...
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. Next on the list is the Sexual Awareness Week, I'm sorry, Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation.
Is anybody here for this item? Okay. Do you want to come up? So whereas sexual assault affects children, youth, and adults and elders of all genders from all racial, culture, and economic backgrounds, with public health and social justice implications for every person in Eureka, and where staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour service to survivors and their significant others, and encourage every person to end sexualized violence by providing prevention, education, awareness, rising programs throughout Humboldt and Delnort Counties, and whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but can through collaboration and partnership work together to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not revictimized. Now, therefore, we, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors reaffirm our commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and holding to our values of heal, help meet survivors where they're at, empower them in their healing journey, affirm their choices, and listen to their stories, and acknowledge April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So thank you for all your work, and would you like to say something?
Yeah. Thank you. Hi, my name is Kira Morse. I am the Education Coordinator of the Sexual Assault Counselor with the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. I wanted to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for your continued support of Sexual Assault Awareness Month and the work of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. Our team continues to provide free and confidential services 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to anyone of any age, gender, who has experienced or been affected by sexualized violence. In the past year, our team has served over 300 survivors and their families through advocacy, accompaniments, crisis interventions, and one-on-one peer counseling. Our services are rooted in our values of heal. Our work is not possible without partner agencies, most notably law enforcement, the District Attorney's Office, the SART team, those sexual assault nurse examiners, and tribal organizations, as well as through our community partners. This month, our team is the recipient of the North Coast Co-op Seeds for Change. So if you guys round up at the register, it goes directly to our services, as well as at the Heights Casino. There are two buckets where people can put tickets or donations, and that helps provide us with unrestricted funds that we can't have without our grants, so we can provide different things to survivors, like different food vouchers, hotel stays, things like that. So thank you. Thank you for honoring survivors.
Thank you for all your hard work in that important arena, very important arena. Next, we have number five, proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Humboldt County, and I believe we may have a couple people here today, Jan and/or Cindy, to come up and receive this. I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll bring it, and then we'll let you have some comments, and then come down and provide this to you.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. Thank you. Whereas children are our future and deserve to grow up nurtured and free of the maltreatment of abuse and neglect, whereas preventing child maltreatment is a community problem that depends upon collaboration among agencies and individuals within neighborhoods and throughout the community and the county, and whereas child maltreatment not only directly harms children, but also increases the likelihood of long-term physical and mental health problems known as adverse childhood experiences, which come at great economic and social costs, and whereas child maltreatment occurs in families of all cultural, ethnic, and economic backgrounds, and whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has that support needed to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment, and whereas there's a growing body of knowledge that primary and secondary prevention programs offered within the community and throughout the county can stem the tide of child abuse. Now, therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, recognizing the importance of working together to prevent child abuse and promote the well-being of children and families, does hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and calls upon all residents to increase participation in these efforts to support families, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. So...
Thank you. My name's Cindy Sutcliffe, and I'm the current president of the Board of Directors for the Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council, otherwise known as CAPC, and I want to touch on a couple of highlights from our annual report, which you also received. The first being that our recommendations to child welfare services, that the Children's Trust Fund for 2022 through 2025 be distributed equitably to the Community Pathway Partners for what's known as the Comprehensive Prevention Plan created under Family First Prevention Services Act. The Community Pathway is made up of the 16 Family Resource Centers, the Tribal Social Service Offices of Bear River Band of Raniville Rancheria, the Trinidad Rancheria, the Wiat Tribe, and the Humboldt County Transition Age Youth Collaborative. The annual allocation, which will, because it's $20,000 a year and there's 20 sites, is only going to be $1,000 a year per site, but you know, something's better than nothing anyway, will support primary and secondary child abuse prevention activities at all of those sites. The second thing I want to mention is that CAPC has maintained a seat on the California Citizens Review Panel that addresses child abuse prevention for many years now, and on our board, we, our current member, Jan Bramlett, has served on the Citizens Review Panel and was able to take during this past year our recommendations to the Citizens Review Panel around changes that are going to be made at the state level on mandated reporting. And she was able to do a great presentation and also attended the National Citizens Review Panel Conference, which was held in Asilimar, California this past year, and speak to those issues. And then finally, I wanted to touch on the fact that CAPC was actively engaged this past year in 2022 in the creation of our Community Health Improvement Plan, the CHIP, through Public Health, otherwise known as Live Well Humboldt. We were specifically asked if there were any particular issues that we wanted to be included in the CHIP, and we responded yes, and that would be ACE's, Adverse Childhood Experiences, which is one of the selected focus groups, focus sections for the CHIP. And then we also participated actively in their data work groups, which was really enlightening for us, and we felt very, very supported in the recommendations that we made being incorporated into the CHIP. So it was a really great process, and we were happy to be able to be a part of that. And finally, I want to invite all of you, and everybody out there too, also, to the Children's Memorial Flag Raising in remembrance of the children who have died due to child abuse, which is going to be Friday, April 28th at 9:00 a.m. at the Eureka Teen Center. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. How about a little applause? So next, we have number six, the National Public Health Week proclamation, and I believe that our Public Health Director, Sofia Pereira, is here to receive this. Yes, please.
Is the teen center the same as the Boys and Girls Club? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Where it is every year, right?
Where the big river water...
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Bone for that clarification, and look, we have the whole team here today. This is wonderful, important work. All of these are very important programs. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, I'll bring it down for you folks, and then you can all offer your thoughts for us here today. So whereas this year, National Public Health Week is the week of April 3rd, 2023, and this year's theme is centering and celebrating cultures in health, and whereas the goal of this year's National Public Health Week is recognizing the contributions of public health in improving the health of the people of the United States and achieving health equity, and whereas the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services Public Health Branch is an accredited local health jurisdiction and includes the Public Health Laboratory, the Divisions of Environmental Health, Nursing and Healthy Communities, the Women, Infants, and Children's Program, the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program, and the Office of Performance Improvement and Accreditation, and whereas many of the leading causes of death for individuals in the U.S. result from chronic conditions, which are among the most common, costly, and preventable of all health challenges, and whereas studies show the small strategic investments in disease and injury prevention can result in significant savings in healthcare costs, and whereas DHHS public health staff work throughout Humboldt County to provide services ranging from hepatitis C testing to supporting first-time mothers and their babies, and whereas DHHS public health collaborates with partners across various sectors, recognizing that many organizations in our community can influence health outcomes, and whereas part of improving the overall health of individuals and communities is by addressing social and other detriments of health, determinants of health, including health disparities experienced by many minority populations, and whereas efforts to adequately support public health and the prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness into a health system focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors recognizes the week of April 3rd, 2023, as National Public Health Week, and applauds the efforts of public health professionals, the federal government, states, tribes, municipalities, local communities, and individuals in preventing disease and injury, as well as the role of public health in mitigating the short and long-term impacts of infectious disease outbreaks on the health and wellness of individuals. So...
You guys want to get a picture? Up here, one up here, I guess. Turn the other way.
Well, thank you Chair Madrone and your board for recognizing National Public Health Week. I'm Sofia Pereira, I'm the Public Health Director, and want to thank you for not only recognizing the work in general that public health does, but the professionals that make up the field of public health. So in our public health branch, we have about 230 public health professionals. You're also recognizing the public health professionals that work in tribal public health, that work for community-based organizations that support the work of public health, and it's really, we couldn't do this work alone, as mentioned in the proclamation, but you're recognizing all the professionals that do this work, day in, day out, working to achieve health equity. I want to recognize representatives of our branch that are here today, because we don't, I don't stand here alone in this work, so I want to recognize Mario Kalson, our Director of Environmental Health, Dr. Pepper Stockton, our Public Health Lab Director. We have Jan Bramlett, who works for the Office of Performance Improvement and Accreditation, supporting our Community Health Improvement Plan. We have Dr. Candy Stockton, our Health Officer, and we have Brianna Sherlock, our Senior Program Manager for our Healthy Communities in WIC Division. Our Deputy Director, Laura Weiss, and our Director of Nursing, Megan Blanchard, weren't able to be here today, but my colleagues here today represent those about 230 professionals in our branch, and just really want to appreciate them and the work that they do to support us, and thank you for supporting us as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And next on the list, we have McKinnonville Chamber of Commerce Award, Annual Members' Choice Awards, and I'm just going to read these very quickly, and these were actually handed out last weekend, but we're doing the formality of approving them today. The first one is to the McKinnonville Community Service District for Excellence and Community Service Award. Congratulations to them for that award. Next, we have the McKinnonville Chamber of Commerce Ambassador of the Year, Meg Altman. Congratulations, Meg. If anybody's here today, when I read any of these, please raise your hand, let me know you're here, whatever, but I think, I know they've already all received these. Certificate of Recognition to Wes and Teresa Green for the 2023 Azalea Award. Congratulations to Wes and Teresa. And then next, we have the 2023 Nonprofit of the Year goes to the McKinnonville Senior Center. Congratulations to them. The 2023 Home-Based Business of the Year Award was to Spot to Spot Mobile Detailing, and the Outstanding Customer Service Award went to Redwood Community Pharmacy. The Small Business of the Year went to the Bigfoot Tap Room, and the Large Business of the Year went to Six Rivers Brewery. You guys seeing a theme there? And then we have the, yep, that was all of them. So congratulations to all of those recipients. Very much appreciate the work that our businesses do in the community, and it's good to be able to support them. There is a letter of appreciation. Do you want to just mention that? And, yeah, okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. A few weeks ago, we lost a very longstanding member of our community, John Rice. He's a rancher in my district, and also his father and himself have been proponents of the Williamson Act, and John served 20 years on the Williamson Act Commission Board, and so on behalf of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, we would like to recognize John serviced on the Williamson Act ad hoc commission for the past 20 years. John was originally appointed in 2003 and served as the District Two representation. He was a valuable asset to both the community and community he served. We would like to extend our appreciation to his dedication from our board and our condolences to his family on his passing.
Thank you for that, and I believe we may be closing the meeting today, in his honor as well. So thank you Supervisor Bushnell for that, and thank you, John Rice, for your service to our community. Next, we have number nine, which is Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month proclamation. Supervisor Wilson?
All right, I get all the fun ones today. There we go. Okay, here we go. This is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors. Whereas the arts work to heal, build community, engage youth, advance racial justice, and create jobs, and whereas arts are not only an impressive and important agent for economic development, but are also, but also impact societal issues that include health, connections, housing, immigration, veterans, transportation, and education, really everything. It is imperative that all children and youth in California have access to the arts education in their schools, and whereas California employs the highest number of people in creative industries, architecture, entertainment, fashion, media, publishing, than any other state in the nation, and whereas California is the fifth-largest economy in the world, with creative economy in 2019 of approximately $232 billion, representing 7.4% of our GDP, and 779,000 jobs, according to the Bureau of Economic Analysis, and whereas California Legislature, legislation, excuse me, Legislature, Legislature, excuse me, adopted Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 33 on April 25th, 2019, proclaiming April 2019, and every April thereafter, including this one, as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, and in 2020, 21, an additional resolution, SCR 40, was dedicated to recognize artists as second responders, and whereas the month of March is Art is Education Month, and 2023 marks the 23rd annual celebration highlighting the important role of arts education as a core element of high-quality and equitable education, and whereas efforts must continue to increase funding for the arts, arts education, and cultural barriers, and whereas in a state as diverse as California, the arts serve to give voice to our many communities, spark individual creativity, foster empathy and understanding, spur civic engagement, and serve as a continual source of personal enrichment, inspiration, and growth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby designates April 2023 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in Humboldt County. And I think Monica is here. Monica Topping, you have something to say about this?
Yes, good morning. Thank you so much. I'm Monica Topping, I'm the Administrative Director of Ink People Center for the Arts, and I also coordinate North Coast Open Studios, coming up the first two weekends in June. And on behalf of the Ink People and creatives around our community, I wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for your continued support of art and culture.
I have a follow-up. There was a visit by a state official related to this sort of effort. Can you give us a couple sentences on that?
Oh, putting me on the spot, Mike. Yeah, actually, the Director of California Arts Council, John Moscone, made a visit here a couple weeks ago. He got a tour of many of the art and culture locations throughout the county, and we had a really great mixer with him at the Old Town Ink Lab. He also met with some of the local art and cultural folks in this area, and he said that, while he's still kind of in the, you know, the beginning stages of his directorship with the California Arts Council, he really enjoyed his visit up here, and while he's been trying to kind of visit around the entire state, this place really impressed him. He was really happy to see all of the work happening here and honored that he got to really visit some important spaces. So we are being seen by the California Arts Council.
And we have a wonderful and thriving arts community, so thank you very much. I'm going to present this to you. Hold on one second. Stay right where you are.
Right.
And next, we have Proclamation for Dispatcher Appreciation Week, and we have Supervisor Rex Bone and a lot of folks here in the audience today.
Who's coming up here, guys? And gals? I like it. Under Sheriff steps forward, everybody steps back. And I say this every year, I hope everybody on this board takes time to go up to the dispatcher center, spend some time, just pop in there. I pop in on the weekends and everything else and actually see the amount of work and how much they, how much they actually do and how calm they are in doing it. Whereas life and death emergencies can occur at any time, and dispatchers are the first and most critical link in that moment when citizens need emergency assistance from law enforcement or other emergency services. Whereas an emergency communications dispatcher is always poised, ready to answer a call for service, no matter how stressful, frightening, or tragic that call may be. The training and experience they have ensures they don't panic, freeze, but remain courageous, calm, perform their duties in the face of these challenging times. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of deputies is crucial to the protection of life and preservation of property, and the safety of those deputies is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by the dispatcher from citizens who telephone the Humboldt County Sheriff's Communication Center. Whereas a dispatcher is able to multitask like no other person, they are able to answer 911 calls, answer an internal phone line, listen and respond to the radio, monitor other law enforcement jurisdictions, enter essential data into the computer, talk to the fellow dispatchers, and deliver exceptional service in a dedicated, diligent, and compassionate manner, all at the same time. Whereas a citizen may only call 911 once in their lifetime, and the calm, reassuring voice in a time of need is priceless to our community. They have become the experts in crisis intervention and de-escalation. Dispatchers serve the public daily in countless ways without recognition of their outstanding services. We throw them in a bunker up there and let them go. Whereas the Sheriff's Emergency Communications Center answered 140,479 public calls in 2022, of which 25,729 were 911 calls, dispatched 64,667 calls for service. Our dispatchers answered 911 calls within 10 seconds 98.57% of the time, which far exceeds the national average standard. They have also been called upon to provide mutual aid to counties experiencing fire emergencies. Whereas the Humboldt County Sheriff's Officers' dispatcher team has combined 70 years of service, and each... service, and each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Humboldt County Supervisors, Sheriff William Hansel and the staff of the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office hereby commends and thanks the Humboldt County dispatchers for their service to this community.
What? Am I allowed to say something?
No.
You're in handcuffs, of course you are.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to apologize on behalf of our dispatch center. They were notified late of this since the Appreciation Week is actually next week. And the only ones that are on duty are on duty, and we can't take them away from the consoles right now. But just really quick, they really truly are the lifeline of our community in getting emergency services to people. I myself, over the years, have been in situations where there was definitely some fear and impending doom that things were all lost, and their voice over the radio has been a comfort that there was still some attachment to getting assistance. And that's a big deal for law enforcement and the people we serve. Whether it's walking somebody through the birth of their child, the death of a loved one, and everything in between, they really truly embody what we intend to do is serve and service behind the scenes, what they do. So they also are one of the few non-peace officer in the law enforcement family that work shift work, and they don't obviously probably get enough credit for that because that's a very difficult thing on family. And they also have one of the hardest jobs, and this is what I'll finish with, that they always get to hear the start of the story, but very rarely get to hear the end. And that's got to be one of the most frustrating things ever and an internal joke that we have with them. But from the bottom of my heart, I truly appreciate what they do and the impact they have on our community. So thank you to all of them if they're watching, and thanks to all of you.
Thank you very much for that and all that important role. Next, we have number 11, the National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week Proclamation with Supervisor Bushnell.
Are you coming back up here?
My discrepancy.
Yeah. Whereas National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week is celebrated every year on the second full week of April. This year, it takes place from April 9th to the 15th, and is a week when communities are encouraged to learn about the jobs of animal control really entails and to be grateful for those who do it. In the past, the evil dog catcher was, I did not put that in there, was something you would see often in kids' cartoons, but the description only promotes lives to protect both animals that are sick or injured and humans from animals that may be violent or have contagious disease. And whereas Humboldt County Animal Shelter Days and Hours are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 10 to 4, and Thursday, 10 to 7. And whereas the animal shelter cares for shelters and feeds approximately 1,500 dogs, cats, and other animals a year. And whereas the animal control officer responds to approximately 2,500 calls for service in a year. And whereas the animal control officer takes approximately 80 to 100 dog bite reports a year. And whereas the animal shelter has successfully adopted out 565 animals in 2002. And whereas the animal shelter has 12 employees and 40 volunteers. And whereas last year, the community supported the shelter and our animal control officers by donating just over $44,000 to the Emergency Medical Fund and 8,317 hours of time to ensure that those abandoned animals are taken care of. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, Sheriff William Hansel, and the staff of the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office hereby commend and thank the Humboldt County Animal Control Officers and their service to this community. I have to say that it takes a special person to do this work, and it's heart-wrenching. And also, you know, people are fearful of animals and dogs, and so when you get called out, they don't think things happen timely, and they want you to do something right now. And I really commend your work, and thank you so much.
She volunteered, but she can go after me because I actually did want to say something too.
Although they don't work shift work, this part of our law enforcement family has, as Supervisor Bushnell said, a very difficult job. And I'm reminded of it when I go up there and at the shelter and deal with them, but also in the field, is just like peace officers deal with people that are oftentimes in some of the worst moments of their life, it's the same thing for our animal control officers, dealing with animals who are in some of the worst times of their life, between life, death, and everything in between. And what I think is the hardest part of their job, that's heart-wrenching for me in the small amounts of time I'm exposed to it, isn't necessarily dealing with vicious animals, stuff like that. It's dealing with getting attached to something alive, something that, you know, you grow to care about, and then whether, regardless of what the disposition is, that they have to let go. So they have these animals, it's not a quick interaction like oftentimes peace officers have with people. They are with these animals for long periods of time, develop a care and a relationship with them, and then they have to continue to let them go. So I don't have it in me to do that. I would grow too emotionally attached, but we definitely appreciate all that they do and are blessed to have the ones we have in our community. So thank you to all of them, and thank you to all of you.
Hi. Just really quickly, I want to say thank you so much for your continued support and the support of our community. Without the community and the volunteers, Redwood Pals Rescue, who take care of the dogs in the shelter, I think my job would be a lot more miserable. As it is, it's a privilege to be able to work with the people and the animals of Humboldt County every day, and more often than not, it's a delight, and I'm not usually evil. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I do want to recognize that, you know, animals, we create what animals are, and we're responsible for them. And oftentimes, the animal control officer has to deal with what people have created. Animals in general are not mean, they're mostly fearful, and it's really sad a lot of the time. And I know that you get to see that, and it's never, I mean, it breaks my heart when I do see it. And so, you know, it's so important that we take responsibility for our animals in whatever form they are, and that we continue to, you know, we make them domesticated, and you get to deal with the ones that don't deal with their animals, and it is very heart-wrenching. So again, we thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell. And that's the end of our proclamations, and I just wanted to make two other quick notes. One, I want to thank the Wolf Family Trust for a donation of $500 to the Nurse Family Partnership. Thank you to the Wolf Family. That's even better. Supervisor Bone mentioned that they do this every year, so take note. Last, I wanted to note that we have the award authorization for the Humboldt Bay Trail South on the Consent Agenda today, which has been a project long in the making that's going to connect Arcata with Eureka. So with that, we'll go to public comment. First, we'll go to the board to see if there's any additional comments. Supervisor Bone, did you have something?
No, I was just going to mention the Wolf Family Trust, because a good part of that funding goes towards low-income, first-time mothers for home health visits, which is so important. And I know that if it would have been on, there would have been a presentation, but I think that's, and $500 annually may not seem like much, but it recognizes the good work they do and the public, seeing someone in the public notice via that. So I appreciate that, and so I just think it's a big thing.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Bushnell? Let's do it after the public comment. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we'll go to the Zoom for public comment. I see two hands up. First hand is 0116. Welcome, and you've got three minutes. And I think you know the drill. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, this is Ash Teeter with LostCoastPopulace.com. I wanted to first just thank, you know, all the people in the community for all the good that they've done, and there is so many examples of that in this. Also, I must mention, and since the Public Health Week was part of it, that please, we've got to stop pushing the COVID vaxes on the kids, like I had it still recommended, ages 11 to 12, and it's really not necessary. You know, kids have done, there's just been so much bad advice.
Ash, that's not really, excuse me, Ash, that's not really on our agenda, so if you could stick.
No, it was mentioned.
Public Health Week was mentioned, yes.
Public Health Week was mentioned, okay? This is a real statement regarding that, okay?
Yes, as long as you're on topic, thank you.
Okay, and I'm talking about public health, that we're still pushing COVID vaccines on kids in the community, okay? And in New Zealand, they just, you know, came out that the COVID vaccines make you, you know, that they have serious health risks to them.
Ash, that's really, Ash, that's not really the topic in front of us, so I want you to have your time, but please stick to the topic in front of us, which is proclaiming Public Health Week. I believe that's what you're talking on. So, all right, we're going to go to our next caller here, which is 5288.
Yeah, hello?
Hello? Are you still there, Ash?
Chair, would you like me to unmute him?
Yeah, let's give him another 30 seconds if he can state a topic. Thank you. Ash, you've got another 30 seconds to continue. If you can stay on topic, please. Star six to unmute, Ash. There you go.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead. 30 seconds.
I'm talking about public health, and I will say it without saying any key trigger words here, but just saying that we need to be real with what has happened in the past. We've gotten some seriously bad advice from the CDC telling us to keep kids out of schools, telling us that, you know, the things with, you know, stop transmission, stop all these things, and it was not true. But we need to stop pushing this on the kids in the community. This is a public health concern, okay? And I'm just serious about that. We need to be real about this stuff and not just go with the top-down, you know, the CDC says it, the state says that we're doing it. We need to look at local numbers. We ship our statistics out to the CDC.
Thank you, Ash. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have 5288. Star six to unmute. There you go. Nope. Technology. Star six to unmute. There you go.
Okay, two tries. First, Chairman, I have a point of order. I could not hear. Was D18 polled off of consent to be discussed later, or is that still on consent? I couldn't make it out, and we all know why.
It's been polled for a separate discussion.
Thank you so much for the clarification. So I did, of course, I, everybody knows me, I would like to make comment on number 11, the National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. Really appreciate that being on there. The, it's an important thing to me. For those of you who know, there are people out there who, they had a sale on getting the dogs out, and somebody went in there, and I happen to know who that is, but bailed off, I think, 10 of the dogs, you know, so that fee was paid. If you ever want to do a neat thing, go down to the animal shelter, work with these wonderful people, appreciate what they're doing, and work with them, and if you have a birthday or something, you don't know what to give your significant other, your sweetie, or child, or whatever, go down and get them a gift certificate for bailing out a dog. So somebody who can't afford $250 for especially a female dog with all the cost involved can have that dog, and it just warms your heart. So thank you for that. I also did wish to make mention on item 19, we're losing another one of our county employees, Sean there with the probation department. Sounds like you have an excellent person to replace that person with. We do have a systemic problem, in my opinion, why we're losing these people. I think if you were doing the research from 2000, the year 2019 and '20, we have lost close to two-thirds, headed toward three-quarters of our electeds and our department heads. And this is a concern. If somebody has other stats, I'd appreciate it. That does not include the supervisors. I think only two are gone from that. But there's a problem there. We don't want to lose people like Sean, you know? We want to keep people like Sean, and I just wanted to shout and thank him for the time he was with us, and thank both his predecessor, Mr. Domiano himself, and hopefully, it sounds like Coral Sanders, has had the experience to be a good probation officer, chief of probation. Thank you for opportunity to speak on your consent items today.
Thank you, Speaker. And that's all the hands we have up in Zoom, and so we're going to go to those in the audience today that would like to speak on the Consent Agenda. Please let us know which item you're speaking on, and you've got three minutes, so step forward. If anybody has any comments on the Consent Agenda, just state which item you're speaking on, please.
My name is Charles Wilson. A funny thing happened to me on the way to the board meeting here. My wife got a message on her phone from YouTube, said, "Your content was removed due to the violation of our community guidelines."
Charles, I'm sorry, but what item are you speaking on?
Public health. Are you talking about public health?
The public health.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I just want to understand which item you're speaking on, trying to, some comments are better for this.
The M1 rifles did my ears in, I can't always hear too well.
I understand. I'm just curious, some comments that are wide-ranging are better under public comment on non-agenda items.
Oh, yeah.
Is that where you want to speak, or is this?
I wanted the general speaking.
Okay, thank you, Charles.
Is it the general speaking now? No.
No, no, this is still on the Consent Agenda.
Oh, okay.
No worries. Thank you both. You look lovely again today in your paired outfits. Okay, no, anybody else here today that wants to speak on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll come back to the board.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So I do want to recognize that Sean is leaving us as well and retiring, so that's a good thing, and that Carol is going to be interim. Coral, thank you. And so congratulations, I think, and we look forward to working with you. And with that, I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second. So we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Wilson to approve the Consent Agenda. Any other discussion? Can we do a roll call? Or actually, we have our tabs up, yes? No? Should we wait? Brooke, or you want to do a roll call? We'll do a roll call, that's fine.
How about now?
Oh, there it is. Okay, wait. Didn't come up on mine, but I've had it up since the beginning of the meeting.
I can do a roll call.
Let's do a roll call.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
Great. Thank you very much. And so with that, we're going to go to public comment on non-agenda items, and we'll go to those in the Zoom platform first, and then we'll come back here to those in the audience. So let's see, we have 0116, and Ash, this is your opportunity to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Welcome. Star six. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ash. Go ahead.
Hello, again, this is Ash Teeter with LostCoastPopulace.com, speaking on non-agenda items. Today, I'd like to address dangerous trends that I have witnessed going on nationally that can be described as a cycle of violence and a normalized tolerance of retribution. Going back to 2020 with the death of George Floyd, the summer of subsequent riots were normalized and tolerated, despite causing $1 to $2 billion in property damage, killing 36 people and injuring over 1,000 police and civilian bystanders. Progressive media, national and local government...
How about now?
Oh, there it is. Okay, wait. Ah. Didn't come up on mine, but I've had it up since the beginning of the meeting.
I can do a roll call.
Let's do roll call.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
Great. Thank you very much. And so with that, we're going to go to public comment on non-agenda items. And we'll go to those in the Zoom platform first, and then we'll come back here to those in the audience. So let's see, we have 0116. And Ash, this is your opportunity to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Welcome. Star six. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ash. Go ahead.
Hello, again, this is Ash Teeter with LosCoastPopulace.com, speaking on non-agenda items. Today, I'd like to address dangerous trends that I have witnessed going on nationally that can be described as a cycle of violence and a normalized tolerance of retribution. Going back to 2020, with the death of George Floyd, the summer of subsequent riots were normalized and tolerated, despite causing $1 to $2 billion in property damage, killing 36 people and injuring over 1,000 police and civilian bystanders. Progressive media, national and local government largely dismissed this act as justified. There were no proclamations warning of extremist activity on the rise, as we have heard so much with the January 6th, which was truly a mostly peaceful protest, which is turning out to be proven to be manufactured to some extent. This is relevant because recently in Tennessee, we saw another tragic shooting, resulting in multiple deaths. The only difference is this time the shooter was part of the trans community, targeting a Christian school. Progressive media, national and local governments have treated this incident far differently, blaming the gun, not the shooter, while also refraining to identify the shooter's group affiliations and likely motives, subsequently giving a free pass to the poorly timed, then canceled Trans Day of Vengeance event organized by the trans radical activist network. The national pretext is reflected in local acts of hate against Christians that do not seem to be politically convenient to equally acknowledge or include in local proclamations on the subject. I would request that a proclamation be made condoning all cycles of violence and any such normalization and tolerance of retribution, a statement that addresses reality as it is, not reality through a political lens. And that's all on that topic. I'd like to go back to what I was talking about before and note that COVID is a, it's a community health issue. So it should be under the blanket of a Community Health Week, being that we're still recommending these, this, you know, experimental treatments to children in our community.
30 seconds.
So I don't know how that's not part of a Community Health, you know, week comment. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, commenter. And next, we have 5288. 5288. There we go. Star six. There you go.
Hello, again.
Hello, yeah, the, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Your, your prompt is coming in a little late, later than when you're asking for us to unmute, so I guess I'd let you know about that.
Thank you.
I did, I did wish to make a comment, and I made a little comment. I'm so glad that Sean's retiring. I'm glad that he's not going to another job like, like our rock star from CAO's office, Tabitha Miller, did. But it still is a concern when you start seeing the ratios of people taking retirement and things. I did wish to make comment, and it's regarding keeping your staff there. I was a little bit, just to tell you what I did. I had an issue today, or started, I saw something on Friday, contacted some of your staff people there, Ryan Heights, and I also contacted with AEDC, Hannah Joy. So I did my due diligence and contacted those people to find out what's wrong. Last meeting, it was kind of distressing to see a project that Tom Mattson brought before you and kind of be blindsided by people from the board, not mentioning any names. But basically, I think that is very disheartening, and I think, I think in the future, I recommend the supervisors that, in my opinion, did that, that they reach out to Mr. Mattson, find out what's going on, get an opinion before the meeting, because the political theatrics of blindsiding your staff doesn't bode well. Managerially, if you feel that you're being in that position, and I think this is the second time I've seen this happen from the same source, that, that you basically are not encouraging them to feel like you're a team. And of course, management is team. So I highly recommend in the future, any of you who think you want to have a major, major problem with something coming before the agenda, be it consent or a regular item, take your time to get a hold of your staff. I know some of you do it, and I want to compliment you for doing that. But this, the, the last minute blindsiding just really doesn't bode well for, for your morale of your people. That's a little bit of what I do is managerial skills. So thanks for my opportunity to speak on this topic today, and thank you for, I, I really don't have a problem with reading all these things in the record and doing what you're doing there. You know, you have a lot of them, but it's great work, and I think those need to be acknowledged. So I do support when you do read your things, like at the beginning of the meetings. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on non-agenda items today.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to those here in the audience today. This is an opportunity to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. It's been seven, I'm Charles Wilson. It's been 70 years since the M1 rifles did my ears in, so I don't always hear too well. But anyway, I did have this funny thing happen to me on the way to the board meeting here. My wife got a message on her telephone saying, "Your content was removed," this is from YouTube, "your content was removed due to a violation of our community guidelines." And they gave her a warning and told her what kind of punishment she'd get if she persisted in doing whatever she was doing there. I was curious, what, what did she do that got this response? So I listened to her phone call there. She said something about Humboldt County's beautiful area, mild winter, we got an earthquake, electricity is problems we have, and the electric stove nonsense, and the CO2, she mentioned that just briefly. She talked about the, a little about the four jabs and still get COVID. In other words, the CDC goofed up on, they redefined what a vaccine was and everything like that. And they're still pushing it. And one out of 10,000 people back a couple of years got side effects, and they stopped using the vaccine. And now it's one out of 800, and they're pushing it. And what is the reason? And a lot of people are forced to take the jab when they don't want to, but they've got to live and they've got to survive. And, oh, she sang two songs, "America and Freedom," and another one from Les Misérables. And she, then she said, "Happy New Year. Take your vitamin D, C, and get lots of sleep, and your chia seed and vinegar." And that's more than the Health Department has said there. My wife's been, and came from Taiwan 50 years ago, that's almost half a century. We talked to our friends in China-
30 seconds.
And they don't have the problem we have. They had nobody die from the Corona. They, she, they live in a 10 million population town. There's no lockdown, there's no, nobody died, nobody's died recently, and no lockdown, no masks, anything. It's just wonderful. There are lots of food and everything like that. And we just should emulate Communist China because they've such, done such a good job. Thank you.
Next.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. Good morning, all the supervisor. Nice to see you. But anyway, I'm just like a nurse, just have passion for people. So I talked to people, like recently, get kicked out in the Kus Bay Casino, just two and a half hour before I finished the music, they said, "Get out of here." I said, "What happened?" She said, "Because I talked to the workers, they say, "Stay away from the thirst shop because people do die from that." I mean, too many people. And then I explained to them, because of my compassion, that's why I speak up. But they said, "Leave now." So we packed and leave. Then when I left there, I thought, gee, I got special escort. I mean, I do my best, that's all. But my point is, situation now, we are being controlled a lot. It should be a medical freedom and personal choice. And we see things happen, but I don't know, I had too many people have problem. So I'm very compassionate. A friend of mine in Hawaii, 110 pound, swimming every day, he just told me she recovered from open heart surgery. That's unthinkable. You know, no, maybe I should be the one, I'm chubby. So but anyway, I, another thing is, we are concerned about what's going on right now, the bank and everything. We're going to have digital money. But look at China. China's, they say these are very proper. Everybody, they have no cash anymore, but they control your money, the central bank. So one of my Chinese doctors said, "Hey, you be nice. You get a car, you can go to the restaurant to eat breakfast, lunch, and dinner." I said, "Yeah, they can poison you too, right?" So my point is, you have to think about that part. My point is, when the central bank control your money, like I don't take the jab, then you might, they might not give you money to use. But my point is, nobody want to be controlled like that. Your little two-years-old child won't like to be that way. So China is very good at controlling people, and if you have so much money, they want to get part of it too. So you know, Alibaba, and all this, they disappear. And recently, it's very important. This guy defected to, to United States 2018 because she was, he was so rich in China, he got in trouble. So he come here. But what happened? We should be a free country, you can defect here. Who can come here now? And March 15, because she has some, she knows a lot something about Fauci and whatever, so they arrested him. FBI, 100 people arresting him in New York. And then six hour later, they are still in the building, but there 15 room in the hotel that belonged to him.
30 seconds.
Okay, I know it's coming. But anyway, watch out. Commonness is no good. Anyway, just make sure that. Thank you very much for those things. Freedom, we love to have freedom, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here today with public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll go to our next item on the agenda, which is item F1. And after this, we'll go to the item that was pulled from consent. So this is item F1, which is AB 1976, Mental Health Services Assisted Outpatient Treatment. I believe we're going to have a presentation from, from DHHS. Welcome, Emmy. Director Rogers, Deputy Director. Welcome.
Good morning, Emmy Batzler-Rogers. I'm the Behavioral Health Director. I'm here today with Jack Brazil, who's the Deputy Director for Behavioral Health, one of them. And we're presenting to your board an update on assisted outpatient treatment, also known as Laura's Law. And Jack will walk us through a presentation, and then we can have discussion or answer any questions.
Is this the suicide fatality review?
Nope.
Just a moment. I'll just need a few minutes. I apologize.
That's okay. This is far more complicated than the person behind the curtain in The Wizard of Oz, right? So this is our one-year annual review, is that correct?
Yeah, we started services July 1, 2022, and so we have, we're reporting through February of this year.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll speak to that a little bit.
Great, okay.
Can we please take a break?
Yes, we'll take a-
Thank you.
We, yeah, we'll go ahead and go to the consent calendar item, and then we'll come back to this item in just a few minutes.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Brooke. All right, so we're going to jump ahead and then come back. And so we have item D-18, if I remember correctly.
That's correct. Chairman Dron and Economic Development Director Scott Adair and Ryan Heights are here to present on this item for your board.
Great, thank you very much. Welcome forward.
Good morning, board members. Scott Adair, Director of Economic Development. Also with me is Ryan Heights, Economic Development Coordinator. We're with the CAO's Office of Economic Development, and here today to answer any questions that you might have with regards to this Headwaters loan item, which was pulled from the consent calendar so that there could be further discussion. This loan is a participatory loan with AEDC, which is one of our Headwaters partners. AEDC also has staff in the room, if there are any questions that they may be able to answer from their perspective. This loan is for a project site which is located approximately one mile outside of geographical boundaries of Humboldt County. The Headwaters home board did unanimously make a recommendation to move this forward to your board for further review and discussion. That said, happy to, we didn't have a presentation planned per se, but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have about the, about the loan or about the item.
Great. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. There, I had some questions as why or how it would qualify in Trinity County, and also what the, you know, if there was a, going to be a lien, or not a lien, but a, you know, something to ensure payback for the loan. I had received quite a few questions from the community. So if you could just explain that, there seemed to have been an, you know, not a lot of detail in the staff report.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a very good question. There is a provision in the Headwaters Charter which does allow, under unique circumstances, for loan activity to be made using Headwaters funds outside of the county geographical area, as long as it can be demonstrated that the benefit of the loan will be, that there will be primary benefit to Humboldt County residents or Humboldt County population. In this case, a study analysis was done of the population in the area. It was found there were approximately 200 individuals who lived in Humboldt County who were within the service area of the Salyer store. We also received testimony from residents in the area who said that they did shop at the Salyer store location. We do have a lien on that property as collateral to secure the loan. We also have a, there's a more comprehensive analysis that AEDC did. We did not attach that to our agenda item, but we could certainly make that available to the public if there's more questions about the valuation of the property or how that decision was made.
Thank you.
Yeah, I spent quite a bit of time out there in Willow Creek, and that area is experiencing very similar economic downturn as Southern Humboldt, Garberville area. You see closed stores all over the place, frankly. And recently, the Riversong Natural Food Store closed. So now there's really only the Ray's, or Murphy's, I believe it is now, shopping, what's that? Shopping store, and then Salyer. And if we get down to just one, that could be not so good for the local community on a lot of different levels. A lot of people do go to Salyer, even though it is one mile over into Trinity, but I would say the Salyer store is probably supported primarily by Humboldt County residents. And up to Burnt Ranch, once you get past Burnt Ranch, you're going to Weaverville for a lot of things and such. So I fully support this. I appreciate the work of Headwaters Fund and Economic Development in trying to figure out, is this appropriate? And there was that clause that allows for exceptions. And so I appreciated that in the staff report. So I'm supportive of it. I think the community is absolutely supportive of keeping this store around for them, so.
I can add too, just for clarification for the public, that this loan was not competitive, so it did not exclude any other loan activity. We're still doing loans within the county. We still have loan funds available. We, and, and I think actually it was probably good for your board to pull this, because this is a rare, it is a rare exclusion in the Charter that allows for this activity to occur. So I think it's important for the public to understand that Headwaters does take a perspective of not just geographic activity, but where the activity is actually benefiting Humboldt County residents and citizens.
Absolutely. You know, that boundary at the South Fork Trinity River where you cross over into Trinity County, just a mile before the store, it's an invisible boundary, you know, for those that live out there. And when the fires have been happening a lot more recently with the Monument Fire, the Knob Fire, the Lightning Complex, the snowdown event, I mean, we've had so many disasters out there, and none of these- disasters out there, and none of these events recognize county boundaries. So there's been a lot of talk in that community about the need to work better across these across county boundaries and working as a community geographically. And I think this exemplifies that. So again, thank you for your work as staff. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the board? Yes, Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, I get the the only thing that probably got me, and we work across the county lines pretty well, if you've noticed in Measure Z with the Willow Creek Ambulants. I mean, we it would be nice to get more of an input from Trinity County because that's a big portion of their response area. We do the same thing out at Mad River going into Trinity County. So we we already we were thinking way ahead and cross over those imaginary lines. And so the only problem I have is is saying if it closes down, the only other market in town is going to take advantage of everybody. And I and I think that's demeaning to those people that are still that does not give them a whole bunch of empathy to say, wow, they really trust us. So and I consider and I have spent all the way back from when it was owned by Keith Johnson owned the store in Burnt Ranch or in Salyer and Hawk is a bar, excuse me, Hoopah and Willow Creek, and then when Bob took them over, Bob Michaelburger took them over. And now with what they are now. So I want to I want to applaud the people that are still keeping a supermarket attitude. And I know their pricing reflects that. They have specials, they have everything else. And then being very familiar with the Salyer store all the way back in the 80s, when David Ayers and Sue owned it and going through there. So I just think the the tone that if we if we don't loan this money, everybody's going to get screwed, I think is a bad attitude to take. And I'm just and we seem to be elaborate when we I approve this. I mean, I will approve this. I think I think it works out well. So I just the the tone to to push it through, I didn't. It doesn't show much respect for the existing businesses that are there. And we always say we want to support the existing businesses. But right here, we're saying if we don't loan this money, this other store is going to take advantage of the populace. And I don't think, you know, it's it's pretty well under, you know, subliminally said. And I just I just and I thought it was a Ray's, and he says it's a Murphy's now. So so but anyway, thank you.
Point taken. Thank you very much, Supervisor Ron. Any other comments from the board? With that, we'll go out to the Zoom for public comment, and we have 5288 with your hand up. Star six, there you go.
Ken Solatsky, I was the one who kind of wanted to delve in this. And it would have been really nice if we had, I believe you probably would have Hannah Joy in the room from it was really nice speaking with her extensively the other day with your Arcata Economic. They need to be renamed because they do six counties. They're not just Arcata. And so hopefully, they will be a six county or multi county. But anyway, I did have some serious questions, and I would recommend that you table this until such time as they're answered. My questions that were unable to be answered are I was told that I that unfortunately Hannah could not answer my questions or was instructed not to or something there. But anyway, and I couldn't get them answered by your staff, and I really appreciate also having having your staff's time. Tried to call Scott yesterday and today and Adair, and I wasn't able to get hold of him. But my concerns are the following. We have and this is what I do. So I have no indication of what the appraised value of the property is. According to staff report, I believe it sounds like the real property financing is probably close to 100% value loan to value ratio there. I know the property. I have a pretty good hammer for what it's worth. So whatever it was, $640,000 or something, probably is the value there. So I'd like to have have that appraisal, you know, so we could understand that loan to value ratio. A bank wouldn't commercial property doesn't ever exceed 70% loan to value. It bothered me that the owner was not carrying back anything. The owner's done a phenomenal job there. I want to let you know, this is a mom and pop store, and of course, that's a concern when they're not there, what will happen? And most of what they say is, you knew report, it's soft drinks, alcohol, cigarettes, and whatever you need. People from Trinity Village don't want to go into Ray's in Willow Creek. A lot of people shop, most people in the area shop at Costco or something like that coming into town every couple of weeks. A lot of people go to Hoopah because the gas is cheapest there. Now they have a grocery market, Hoopah and cigarettes happen cheaper there. I do seriously, let's see, this store was founded during a $4,000 a pound economy, as we all know, 20 years ago. And that's no longer there. My other question is, what is the term of the lease with the the post office? That's why people stop there. They stop there to get not only, but they stop there to get their mail, really handy to go in and get something. The post office has been threatened to be closed, I believe, multiple times.
Thirty seconds.
The terms of that lease, that's their anchor, would need to be done. And then also, obviously, what what the place is insured for. So I I hope it's not 100% financed. Hopefully, they have an appraisal for like a million dollars on just the real property. And those questions need to be answered, I think, before you would move forward. You may wish to table this till they're answered. The public would love to see that report. Can't see it now that was promised us. So I really request this be tabled to a future date when we can all be a little further educated and I can see the numbers. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. No other hands up in Zoom, so we'll ask for public comment here in the room on this item. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell, we have a question after you from Supervisor Wilson.
Well, I would just make a motion that we approve staff recommendations, although I would like there is some additional information that was given and was not presented in the staff report, and if that could be made available to the public, I would appreciate that.
Supervisor Wilson? Is there a second? I'm sorry, excuse me. I'll second the motion for discussion. There's a question for Scott. So this Scott.
Sorry, I was just confirming with staff. It looks like that other report was attached to the Headwaters Agenda, which would have been made public. We can just push that link out again to the community if anyone wants to access that document. Yes, Supervisor.
So this, just to be clear, this was the the Headwaters Board supported this, but then asked it to be moved to the supervisors. Is that correct?
So the Headwaters Board, they did support it. It was a unanimous vote, but their actions come through the board, your board.
Right.
Historically, they come through as consent. There usually isn't much discussion on these items. I think in this case, because of the extraordinary circumstances, there was.
Okay, I was just clarifying because when you opened up, you're just like, the Headwaters Board is to bring it to, you know, bring it to us. So I just wanted to make sure.
In this particular instance, given the geographic location of it, it's a requirement that it come to the Board of Supervisors for more fits.
I appreciate that. Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Bone. Okay, all right. Well, we've had discussion, and we've got a motion from Supervisor Bushnell, and I seconded it. Can we do we have our voting tabs? Yes, we do.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff. So with that, we'll go back to our item. We do have the presentation prepared now? Great, let's go ahead and pull that up. No worries.
For that.
Stuff happens. So we'll come back to that item on AOT. Welcome again.
Good morning. For the record, Emmy Botsler Rogers, Behavioral Health Director, and I'm here with Jack Brazil, who will walk us through a presentation, an update on assisted outpatient treatment, also known as Laura's Law, and then we'll have some time for discussion or questions your board may have.
Good morning, everybody.
Great.
Okay, so AOT Services Humboldt County, assisted outpatient treatment is the acronym. Just a quick brief synopsis on this for the board. Laura's Law, the the main one, was AB 1421, and that allowed for court order treatment of those individuals that are with severe mental illness who met that specific criteria. Your board approved a pilot project for assisted outpatient treatment here in our county in in June of 2021, and we funded that for about approximately 10 participants. Part of this pilot project was that we did an RFP to have a community provider for this, and EA Family Services was selected for that. During the 2122 fiscal year, we worked on the implementation on that and contracting process. And then in July 22, 2022, we actually began offering services to to clients, mental health services. One component that I think is all important to mention about AOT is the education and training. There's a mandate that we go and educate the community about the AOT process and how to get individuals enrolled in the program. A lot of our initial efforts surrounded law enforcement and ensuring that they were aware because they're potentially a main referral source for AOT. So we we focused in on a lot of our our law enforcement partners here in the community as well as these other these other agencies. So a lot of this data is going to be as of the end of February, though, you know, things have obviously continued here into to March and April. So as of that time, we've gotten about 22 unique referrals. 10 of those have met criteria for AOT, and then they have been sent to to EA to initiate the services. Obviously, you know, 12 referrals did not. And then as of 228, we had seven clients that were currently being engaged by by EA and through the course of time, from July to the end of February, three of those 10 clients were closed to service for various reasons. Here's some of the demographics on our clients that we have currently of the ones that we have sent to EA. We do have one client that is currently going through the process of the court ordered portion of of AOT. Prior to being court ordered, participants do have the option of voluntarily engaging in services. And EA has shown some success with that, getting folks to voluntarily participate in in behavioral services. But we do have one person that currently is going through the court process. These are some of the outcome measures that we're tracking. We we the state mandates that we track a slew of different outcomes for participants, and so we keep track of these things on a monthly basis, depending upon who's participating. I think, you know, we we key in on, obviously, law enforcement contacts, those participants that end up in Semper Virens or other psychiatric hospitals or crisis services. But these are some of the other ones that we we keep track of as well. Because the program's so new, we thought it would be most beneficial to just kind of do a show you guys a couple of quick case reviews for participants that we've had. This is one of our so far, one of our good outcomes, our success stories. This individual had a number of law enforcement contacts. In fact, this individual was referred from Eureka Police Department and had also been in the psych hospital and, like many of our folks, sort of concurrently also struggled with substance use disorders as well as their mental illness. And they were able to go to Semper Virens. They did a marvelous job there and stabilized that individual. They were discharged to EA for outpatient services. This person is voluntarily engaged and obviously, at one point, was at risk of losing their housing, and now that has been rescinded and very proud of that individual so far. The next case, this is our court ordered client. So again, kind of similar history, a lot of law enforcement contacts, public intoxication mainly, and concurrent mental illness and substance use. They did end up at SV, but unfortunately, they declined services. And we decided to initiate that court process. We work with County Council's Office, which has also been outstanding to petition the court for treatment. But this person has absconded some, right? We tell them they've got court and they need to be there on on Thursdays around 2:30. And around that time, we have trouble finding them. And so, you know, this kind of this process that we're at. So hopefully, we'll be able to encourage that individual to go to court. Just a we've we've had a lot of stakeholder feedback about the program, both internal and external to behavioral health. Obviously, you know, Commander LaFrance is pretty well known for his work with this population and has been encouraged by what he's seen so far with with EA and the services that they've provided. So the money, the budget for fiscal year 2122 was 336,226. That's increased in 2223 as we begin providing services for individuals. That first fiscal year was largely for implementation. The Board of Supervisors graciously allocated $336 for that implementation, and we appreciate that. And then we also are using other revenue sources, such as Medi-Cal and behavioral realignment for the the service provision. And you can see, you know, what we've claimed to Medi-Cal thus far since January, and we're looking at ways to increase Medi-Cal billing to ensure we're maximizing that revenue source. So in conclusion, our data is kind of limited right now due to the short timeframe. Obviously, only 10 participants, and not everybody's been participating since July. It's it's kind of varied. But we would, in terms of next steps, we really need to evaluate the impacts of, you know, Care Court and other changes to behavioral health, which are, you know, considerably a lot in in terms of what the state is is doing and initiatives. Care Court obviously seems to run pretty parallel to AOT, so that is of particular interest. But we will definitely return to your board with some additional data and, you know, more kind of conclusions in terms of how we're doing and and how we're we're benefiting the community. So that we will go to questions.
Great, thank you very much. Questions from the board? Supervisor Bone.
This is an expensive process, isn't it? Because we're looking at over $80,000 an individual for ones that are being treated and down to 40 for the ones that all the ones that were treated and then the ones that didn't make the cut. And I know it makes a dent, 10 being helped, this 10 being helped. I agree 100%. But when we have, how many do you have any? We've done a lot of research and, you know, we've paid for all this for the trying to figure out what the amount of mental health is on the streets. How many potential clients do you think we're looking at down? I mean, you're in it every day. So I mean, I can see how many I think I see every day. I mean, I had one out my office window yesterday in a fetal position screaming on the sidewalk, and I don't know if he'd qualify. But what do you what do you think the numbers are? Because we hear that we have anywhere between 14 and 1,800 homeless. We hear those numbers, you know, from the counts and things like that. And then we hear that 70%, better than 70% have some sort of mental or addiction problems, which are both coincide with each other. Where do you think we're at with this? Where do you think this could go? Because we were hoping this could take some of the people that were, you know, we've had them on our courthouse steps on a on a regular basis. So what do you think? What do we need to be prepared for? I mean, now that we're into it, you know, the first, you know, $400,000 to set it up and training and everything else. And now moving forward, where do you think we're going to be?
Thank you for the question, Supervisor Bone, and I'll try to answer if I understand correctly. I mean, I I think part of the point is that we're still so early on in the process, it's hard to know exactly what the impact is. I think looking at the referrals, we're I think looking at the referrals, we're finding just under 50% of those referred actually meet criteria, so that's one piece. In terms of the number of people out there that could benefit, you know, I think there are others out there that could benefit for sure. But I also think there are other services and programs that already exist by the county and that will be coming, such as Care Court. And part of what we're wanting to do is further evaluate the data with a longer timeframe and additional participants, but also really evaluate what the other initiatives and mandates are that we need to be bringing on, bringing on board. To your, I think, to your comment or question about those that are homeless and the percentage of those with mental illness, I think I've heard varied numbers, sometimes less than that. 70% is pretty high. I've heard quite a bit lower numbers, too. I think it's complicated because, you know, there's so many factors involved, and it could be SUD versus mental health or both, you know. So still to be evaluated in terms of data for AOT specifically.
Yeah, and I think the 70% actually came from the point-in-time count, is one of the point-in-time counts. And so that's, I guess I get hung up on that, and I can, give me the other numbers and I'll use that one. I would rather use another one than that. So how does, how well does Care Court work with Laura's Law in other counties? I mean, you know, this has been, Laura's Law was enacted in 2002, and we didn't, we didn't bring it forward till, I think Supervisor Bass was a big proponent of it. And I don't think we brought it in, like you said, 2020, 2021. So does Care Court, will Care Court take the place of other, well, let's go this. When you go to your conferences, what do they say? What are other counties doing with the two programs?
That's what we're learning right now. So we have that first cohort, which is bringing Care Court on board, and it's so early still. So that's the, I think, the determination, is how does Care Court line up with AOT and do they coexist? I think that, I think the belief is that both can be operating at the same time. And I think that what we'll be figuring out is, does that really work like that?
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. So I remember when this presentation came a year ago, and we were very skeptical whether even one person would be able to be helped through this program. So I, you know, 10 is not a lot, but considering the presentation we had previously, I think that's a big success. And moving forward, you know, we'll see how, like, a year is not enough time. But I really wanted to ask you both personally, how do you feel the, it is going? Like, do you, I know that there was a lot of skepticism around it, so I'm just curious on your thoughts.
You know, I'll just say, staff have worked so hard to implement this successfully. And like you, like you mentioned previously, I think I had reservation about whether or not this was the best way to invest resources. I think staff and EA are contracted provider, have worked really hard to make this a success. And to your point, whether we're helping, you know, three people or five people or 10 people, it's important. I think we still need to just determine whether or not these same individuals could get adequate treatment in other ways. So could they be folded into CCT, for instance, and still be treated in a way that was equally successful or more successful? And do any of these other new programs like Care Court offer opportunities to treat them too? I think it's really, to my mind, kind of responsible use of resources and making sure that we're doing the best work we can, but we're also doing it in the most efficient, effective way possible.
Thank you. And I was sorry, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I just was, I know that, you know, there was a lot of ifs before, and so that, for me, is very critical feedback. Also, I'm wondering if we are, I noticed that the bill out for Medi-Cal was only 39,000. And I'm wondering if we're doing as good a job as we could there?
I'll say a piece, and if Jack wants to add anything, he can. I think what we're seeing in terms of the spending and the billing is still part of the short timeframe and the working the bugs out. So we're working very closely with EA around ensuring they have their processes in place for billing for every single service possible and that we, on our end, are being able to process those in the correct, timely manner. I think there are some other expenditures that we still need to kind of identify and process. So those numbers really aren't exactly right. They will grow, but it's about kind of the learning curve of bringing on a new program.
Right. And so that's the word I wanted to hear, that those numbers would grow, because I think we're missing some, some components there that we can, you know, get back for the program. And I, and I, this was kind of a pilot program, and so we'll see, probably another year, have a really good data to whether this is something the county wants to retain. I know it's a large hit out of our general fund. And, you know, this board was pretty, I think we were unanimous on, let's try it and see, because we're, we were missing, we were missing something back then. And so I really appreciate staff's dedication to this and, and to really giving it, you know, the 100% go. And for those 10 people, you know, it is really something for them, and we miss, you know, we miss a lot of services and help that we, we struggle to provide for people.
I agree.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. And with that, Supervisor Wilson, yes?
So, I mean, what I'm reading in this report, and want to get it from you, is that we'll continue this pilot project, and then we'll have a full analysis, understanding that, I mean, you're not, I don't think what I'm hearing is that without this program, the 10 folks that are being served wouldn't be served in some other way. So we'll have some analysis on sort of the cost-benefit ratio with relationship to these options in a, you know, because that was ultimately really what the, what the question was, is for the expense, is this the right path? It's not saying we won't serve people and we won't, you know, we won't do our best to deal with these situations, but is that, is this the best one with limited resources? So that's what we'll, we'll get a better handle on?
Yes, definitely. And I think, you know, just to remind us all, AOT has that added element of the court-order piece. And so I think we, as a community, thought, well, that could be useful because CCT doesn't have that. So maybe that's a way to kind of, you know, compel people to participate in treatment. But, but you're exactly right. We're, we're continuing to look at outcomes, and I think another year, we have a general fund allocated for next fiscal year, '23, '24. And so we'll be, you know, continuing to gather data and hopefully able to really have some substantial comparisons that then will allow us to make recommendations and your board to give us more direction on the continuation of AOT.
Well, we, I know it's kind of hard for us to look at this, but sometimes with relationship to the folks that are most in need, but there's also all the ancillary impacts that they have with relationship to all the other services, to within a community, how they even drag other people that are even, you know, in their sphere into the, into these situations that make kind of, you know, make it, they sort of set the bar at a place where it can be so low. I mean, in terms of behavioral issues, that, that it can affect even a broader community of people. So, I mean, will we be able to take a look at that a little bit, too, in terms of those ancillary impacts?
I'm not quite sure if I understand your question, Supervisor Wilson. I mean, we do have services that really seek to be engaging with the whole person, right? And so really helping with kind of all aspects of what their needs. I think housing is a component that we're really thinking a lot about, like, how do we help support with resources, housing for individuals so that they can be stabilized in that manner as well as getting treatment? I think, you know, you're referencing the impact on our community, which is very vast at times. And so I'm not entirely sure how we would evaluate that piece of it.
Well, I guess, well, on the housing component, I mean, in Arcata, with Arcata House in the Grove that's been put in, the, the Arcata Police Force and especially Mad River Hospital have seen a significant decrease in their, in their, whatever, interface with folks with mental health issues, just that stabilization alone. And so what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is that there's, these, all these ancillary impacts, and I was just hoping that we'll have that discussion when we get to the endpoint here. That's all.
Yes, and that actually helps me think about it a little bit more. I think that was partly what we were wanting to bring to your board in terms of stakeholder input, like, what are those other providers in our community experiencing in terms of the effects of AOT? And, and I do think that we are hearing good impacts and will, yes, continue to evaluate through that through communication.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, we'll go to public comment. And we have no hands up in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today, does anybody wish to speak on this item? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve and accept the presentation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Do we have our vote tabs?
Thank you again to staff.
Yes, just a moment.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Chair, can I request a five-minute break?
Yes. Actually, we have a time set at 11 o'clock. So take a break now, and, yeah, we'll be back in 10 minutes, and then we'll probably be going right into a time set. Okay, we are back in session, and we only have five minutes before our time set at 11 o'clock. So I'm going to jump to two items that I think we can get done quickly, and then we will come back for the 11 o'clock item. And then we'll go to the Assembly Bill 742 right after that. I've been told that the 11 o'clock item should take about 15 minutes for presentation and then, of course, comments and discussion, so that would be about a half hour. So my best guess right now is that we'll be back to item H1, which is the Assembly Bill 742, at about 11:30. So we're going to go to item I1, consider the at-large appointment of the Resource Conservation District Board. So, and is, who's presenting on this today? CAO Hayes?
Yes, Chair Madron, this is Clerk of the Board item, so one of your staff members would present on it.
Okay. Yes, that'll be on their way. And is the next item also clerk of the board, the Audit Committee? I did not give her a heads up, so Supervisor Bone is bringing, bringing the information forward now, so.
I can probably kick this one off while we're waiting for clerk staff. Yeah, so there is one application for Reed Cody to, to fill an existing vacancy. I do believe that Reed comes recommended as an appointment, and so, you know, with that, it is a four-year, your board's consideration on whether to appoint. Tracy can take it from there.
Welcome.
That's all perfect.
So that covered it?
That covered it.
Great, thank you very much.
Make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept staff recommendation. Any other board discussion? Going to the public, we'll see if there are any hands up in the Zoom. I do not see any, anybody here in the audience today wish to make comment on this item. Seeing nobody stepping forward, bring it back to the board, and let's go ahead, and do we have a vote tab?
Yes.
We do. This one's quick and easy. Thank you, Mr. Reed, for stepping up.
Motion passes for zero.
Great. And with that, we'll go to item two, which is consider the appointment of an at-large member to the Audit Committee. And again, Tracy D'Amico, please.
Hi. Okay, so I just wanted to let you know that there was a typo. Cheryl actually resigned in 2022 of March, of which was her term for election. Since then, there was a vacancy posted, and we have been notifying you of that vacancy since that time on the quarterly reports. To date, we have one new application on file for Nicole Alvarado, who would be interested in being appointed, and it is your board's discretion. The appointment would actually term out on April 6th of this year, which is just a few days. So we asked that in the recommendation to appoint her to the remainder of the term with the additional four-year term.
And we can do both those in one action?
Absolutely.
Great.
I'll make a motion to move staff's recommendation and a subsequent four-year term on that.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second, and we'll go to Zoom to see if there's any public comment. Seeing no hands up, anybody here in the audience today wish to make any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any other board, Supervisor Wilson?
Well, I just want to note that these, you know, we have these committees, they're important, and yet we still have, you know, a challenge getting folks to apply. So we all do our best to advertise and get it out in the community. We'll continue to do that. But, you know, just recognize that this is an issue with relationship to recruitment to these kind of committees everywhere. Also, more committees keep getting made quite often, more than our, than Sunset. And, and there's just fatigue around these sort of things, as well as, you know, post-COVID sort of, people are just not quite back in the, in the, in the action in terms of being in that meeting mode. So I appreciate everyone that's applied, and I'm just grateful that we can get people to do these things. Thanks. And qualified.
With that being said, just a reminder to the general public that we do accept applications for all boards and commissions year-round at this, at the Clerk of the Board's office or by email. We do post the quarterly vacancy, which is coming up on the 18th, to let you know what is available and what is going to be opening up within the next three months. But we do accept applications and keep them active for at least a full year. Reach out to those people when any vacancies do occur.
Great, thank you very much. And I know Ms. Alvarado, she is the Finance Director for the McKinneyville Community Service District, which is one of our largest CSDs in the county, and I think she'll make a great addition to this Audit Committee, although we're not meeting very much anymore because we're getting back on track, so.
There is, there is a scheduled audit meeting coming up this month. That's why we're looking forward to fill this, yes.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Our voting tabs are up, I imagine? Yes, they are. Great job.
Motion passes for zero.
Fantastic, okay, great. All right, we're going to go to our time set, and that is to receive and file a report on the Department of Health and Human Services Public Health Suicide Fatality Review Team. Welcome.
I am Dr. Candy Stockton, I'm the Health Officer for Humboldt County.
I'm Breanna Sherlock, I'm the Manager for Healthy Communities in Wick Division.
Their mics are on. Their mics? There you go.
Okay, I'll try that again. I'm Dr. Candy Stockton, I'm the Health Officer for Humboldt County.
And I'm Breanna Sherlock, I'm the Manager for the Healthy Communities in Wick Division.
And I believe that we have a slide presentation. While they're pulling that up, you should also have some folders of materials that we prepared for you today.
Good job.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the Suicide Fatality Review, or SFR's ultimate purpose, is to prevent future deaths by suicide in Humboldt County. The SFR was established in May 2019 and has reviewed 26 suicide deaths to date. The SFR is made up of a multidisciplinary group of professionals that meets quarterly to learn more about the circumstances surrounding suicide deaths, specifically in Humboldt County. The group aims to identify risk and protective factors for suicides specific to Humboldt and to make recommendations for for suicides specific to Humboldt and to make recommendations for local policy and practice changes that apply to our county. Ultimately, the goal, like I said, is to reduce suicide risk and to promote safety.
So we actually follow a two-step process. The first is that the Coroner's Department collects a set of standardized information when they respond to a death by suicide that includes identification of a number of identified and well-established risk factors for suicide. We review all of the data from those forms, and then additionally, we do a deeper in-depth dive into cases where the family has given consent for us to do that. So based on this review process, we've actually collected risk factor information on about three-quarters of the deaths by suicide in Humboldt County over the last three years, as well as worked with our multidisciplinary team to look at recommendations for system improvements and identify best practice tools and guidance. In 2021, there were 28 deaths from suicide in Humboldt County. In 2022, there were 38. These numbers are actually a little higher than they've been in previous years, and they're much higher than the state's average. This work is unfortunately very timely because our initial data from this year is showing that our rates may be as high as as much as three times higher this year in the first quarter of the year. You can see that the majority of deaths by suicide occurred in men, although there were certainly women affected as well. Suicide firearms are a common player in death by suicide, and the average age at death was 52, although that is somewhat misleading because it does tend to be a bimodal peak of a younger population and an older population, which gives kind of a mid-range average age but doesn't reflect the individuals themselves necessarily. You have a copy of the report in the folders that you've given, and for the general public, if they would like to review the report, it is available on the link above. This actually correlates with our Community Health Improvement Plan priority areas, which we'd previously spoken with you about. One of those is actually addressing death by suicide under the Behavioral Health component. So it is one of our priority areas because the impact of suicide is profound on both the loss of life of the individual, the immediate effect on their family members, and the long-term effects to the community as a whole when this does happen. So under the Community Health Improvement Plan, our identified goals are to establish a suicide prevention infrastructure, minimize risk for suicidal behavior by promoting safe environments, resiliency, and connectedness, increase early identification of risk and connection to appropriate services based on that risk, and to improve related services and supports, both for people who have survived attempts at or maybe experiencing suicidal ideation, as well as family and community members who are affected by this. Right now, the Suicide Fatality Review process falls primarily under that first goal, which is to establish an infrastructure for prevention. And to do that, we need to have a better understanding of what specific factors are affecting our residents. I know when I was here previously, you guys had asked about comparable numbers for our region. So Humboldt County ranks fifth in the state for rates of death by suicide, although, again, when you're looking at statistical data, you have to have a large enough sample size to actually have it mean anything. So the very small northern rural counties actually have such small populations that they are lumped together and collectively have a higher rate and come in as fourth in the county ranking system. But we're fairly comparable, you can see, in terms of numbers. Humboldt is at 22.7 per 100,000 individuals, whereas the other rural counties in this area are at 23.1. And the rate for the state overall is about 10 per 100,000 individuals, so we're more than twice as high as the state's average.
So as Dr. Stockton mentioned earlier, the Suicide Fatality Review process is multi-step. First, when there is a death by suicide which occurs, the Humboldt County Sheriff Coroner's responds to every suicide death in the county, and they are able to collect data at the scene of the suicide on the Suicide Risk Factor Surveillance System or surface form. And that was what Dr. Stockton was referencing, that we have data on almost three-fourths of the deaths by suicide in our county, which is something that is unique to counties that do have a Suicide Fatality Review process and does enable us to get a better look at specific circumstances for individuals that die by suicide that are specific to our county. Once that is collected, Public Health sends a letter to request permission from the decedent's next of kin to review the case of their loved one. And along with that, grief and bereavement resources are also sent to the next of kin. If permission is granted to review the suicide, then the cases are reviewed by the multidisciplinary SFR team. And during those meetings, the specific death by suicide is looked at, and looking at specifically what systems did that touch that individual, where were areas that there could be improvements, what are trends that we're seeing throughout the county in areas that we could focus on and collaborate and target specifically to improve our systems of care and safety nets in our community. So SFR truly is a multidisciplinary effort. It's made up of the Humboldt County Sheriff Coroner's Office, and without them, none of this would be possible because they take the initial steps to fill out that surface form, which is instrumental in being able to do the Suicide Fatality Review. There are multiple other county departments, including DHHS Public Health and DHHS Behavioral Health, as well as a number of our healthcare systems, such as United Indian Health Services, Open Door, Humboldt IPA, North Coast Emergency Medical Services, Southern Humboldt Community Healthcare District, the San Francisco Veterans Administration Eureka Office, as well as Cal Poly Humboldt Counseling and Psychological Services.
So bear in mind, this is a relatively new process for us. This is our initial report out of information. And before we can get to the point of making more detailed recommendations, we had to have a better understanding of what risk factors and factors were in play in our county. So our initial set of recommendations revolve around increasing the use of routine screening tools, but potentially looking at novel locations to implement those. To increase suicide prevention intervention skills, we've actually hosted trainings that are both up-to-date from an evidence-based perspective and culturally responsive, and more than 100 providers in Humboldt County have either completed those trainings or are in the process of completing them currently. And I can actually speak to this as a provider myself. I joined the Suicide Fatality Review process prior to taking this position as a health officer. So I was took that training course while I was still in practice, and the difference in the ability it made for my my comfort with responding to people who were presenting with suicidal thoughts was incredible, and the skills that you learn in there are very timely, I think, for our county. So we're strongly encouraging that. We're also recommending increasing the the use of brief intervention safety planning and looking at improving systems of care coordination for individuals who've been identified at risk and how we follow up on an ongoing basis.
And one of our partners in the Suicide Fatality Review, DHHS Behavioral Health, has already begun making policy and procedural changes to better serve their patients who are at risk of suicide. They have used the SFR process, along with their own internal reviews and QI processes, to identify a set of system improvements associated with suicide prevention. These initiatives are set to occur over the next two years in collaboration with Public Health, and will focus on implementation of new policies and procedures associated with the use of screening and assessment tools, which will be utilized across all of Behavioral Health, and the establishment of initial and ongoing annual trainings associated with suicidality. So there are a number of resources that are available, both locally in the state and nationally, both for those that may be experiencing a suicidal crisis, suicidal ideation, as well as those who have lost loved ones to suicide. There's the Humboldt County Behavioral Health Crisis Line, which is available 24 hours. There's the Home Text Line and the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. For those that have lost someone to suicide, there are grief and bereavement resources, such as the Friends for Survival and Healing Conversations. The Suicide and Violence Prevention Program in Public Health does a number of trainings and provides a number of resources that are available throughout the community. There are trainings that can be customized to different groups. If there's a community organization, a business that is interested in doing a training with their staff or a community group that would like to host one for the community, they can get in touch with our program, and we're more than happy to go out and do it either in person or virtually, whatever people prefer. There are a number of different projects that the team is currently working on, including the lethal means safety project, since, as Dr. Stockton mentioned, lethal means is one of the most common ways to die by suicide in Humboldt County. We've been partnering with gun shops around the county to provide information and resources about how to keep yourself and your loved ones safe if you do have a gun in the home. And then the Public Health Suicide and Violence Prevention Team also facilitates the Suicide Prevention Network, and anybody is welcome to join that. Community members, any organizations that are interested are encouraged and welcome. And of course, Public Health facilitates the Suicide Fatality Review.
And finally, we would like to recognize and express our appreciation to the community members who've trusted us to review the deaths of their loved ones so that we can collect this information and hopefully make a difference in our community moving forward. But we would not have been able to do this work without their trust in us, and we're very grateful for that.
Great, thank you very much. Bring it to the board. Any questions, clarifications, thoughts?
Tough job. You hear all the, yeah, there's a lot of reasons. And the gun project, I like that, but you run into the problem usually, 95% of the time, the person who has control of the gun is the person who, you know, on the gun projects, it's usually the male. It's a male-dominated action. So that's disturbing to say itself, but I appreciate everything's being done. We've all been touched by this. We've all probably walked around with a daze for a while, going, what could I have done? And projects like this allow us to, you know, read this and understand and just say, I know, I see the ads on TV and everything else. When somebody reaches out, they're reaching out for a reason, because most people don't reach out until they're until they've run out of rope. And that's where we need to, you know, either tie a knot or give them more rope so we can help them hang on, so, and refer them.
And I would say, Supervisor Bone, that over the course of my career, many people, including the men who own them, have been receptive to plans to secure their firearms for a period of time. So a lot of people, if you talk about this from an approach of, you know, this isn't, you shouldn't have a gun or you can't do this, but right now, this may not be a safe thing to have in your environment. Do you have a trusted friend or another arrangement you could make? And people are very receptive to that as a whole. So I think, again, I agree with you, it is a very valuable project, and it's easy to expect that people wouldn't be receptive, but I find that many people are.
Yeah. And as you say that, it's no different than an alcoholic saying, well, maybe let's take all the alcohol out of the house. So if you have a urge, you can't fulfill, make the urge easy, or anything like that. So I appreciate that. And all that comes through the education you guys are providing, so. But with that being said, we've all, we have all been touched by this in so many ways. And, you know, we always act like we're shocked, and all of a sudden, we realize, well, you know, maybe I could have done something more. But until you can read those signs and pay attention to what you folks are saying, use the 988 line, which is a great tool. So, thank you.
If I could add just one thing.
Please.
Both for, you know, for everybody who's a community member here who's today, who's here today, there is a lot of concern that talking to somebody about the risk of suicide, so when you notice a friend or family member, other person that you're worried about, there is a lot of concern that somehow talking about the potential for suicide may cause that to happen. And the data really clearly shows that that is not the case. And so one of the best things that you can do as a member of our community, if you do see somebody that you're concerned about, is just ask, are you all right? And be familiar with these resources, that you can refer people to somebody who knows how to help if they do express they're not all right. So data very clearly shows that that does not plant the idea in people's minds who are not thinking about it, and that might, that interaction might make the difference between them reaching out for help and not reaching out for help.
Well, great. The data, I'm sure, shows when somebody actually does this, they've run out of options. So don't make, make sure you're not that option they run out of. Make sure you're that option that can pull them back from the brink. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Bush, now?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I want to recognize the work that you guys do with families after a suicide has occurred. And that, you know, forever changes your life, but it also, unlike a death that is accidental or from disease, it just really can change a person, it does change a person's life. And there's a lot of guilt that goes along with the could I, should I, why didn't I, and could I have prevented that? And so I think it's so important that that care is there for after. Preventing is number one, but it's not always the case. And so working with those families and people after a suicide has occurred is just so instrumental for recovery as well for the family.
Thank you. And I will also say thank you for the hard work and these tools that are being provided. You know, one of the other areas I think we we need some help with is you noted that the age 52 is the average, and it's pulled down by a lot of youth, as well as older folks, and so the average is 52. But for our youth in the community, if you're under 18 years old, and you're feeling suicidal, and the family feels the need to get you into a facility, Santa Rosa is the closest facility, right? So at the very time that you probably want to pull your children as close as you possibly can, but also get them some treatment, there's nothing locally that I'm aware of. I think there is some effort in Fortuna for some beds for youth, but at any rate, I think it speaks to our need in our facilities' master planning to really figure out how we can get a local facility that can help when these things get really serious. I experienced that with one of my grandchildren, having to go to Santa Rosa, and it's hard for the family and the child to stay connected with that distance. So no blame here at all. It's opportunity. It's something that we, as a board, you know, we're re-engaging on our facilities' master plan, our strategic plan, and this is a great opportunity for us to really think about what else can we do in that arena to help provide even more services. But thank you for your presentation and the work that you do. Supervisor Wilson?
I'll just echo everything that's said here, but also part of the overall preventative ness that we that we engage in is, as a community, a lot of empathy for those who feel separated and disconnected. And I think it's important that it's not just personal, and I think we do have a responsibility in that space, but we also have a responsibility as a community, both, as you were mentioning, the culturally appropriate responses, but then also within our youth with the LGBTQIA+ community, there is a lot of anxiety that we have to be aware of and 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 have a hold a lot of empathy with relationship to that. And I think, because, you know, it's just, it's just important that we do that across the board, not just within those spaces, but in all of them. And so, thank you for your work.
I will also say that I think our Hope Center is another one of those resources, right, that provides hope. And it struggles with staffing and a good facility and stuff. So there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and they all help us in that prevention area. But I just wanted to mention, I think the Hope Center is a magnificent thing, and hopefully we can keep it going and even make it better. So we all need a little hope out there, right? Okay, with that, we'll go to public comment. I don't see any hands up in the Zoom. Is there anybody here today that would like to make comment? I see an individual coming forward. Paul? Welcome.
Good morning, board. I just want to echo on what's been said with public health. I'm Paul Bignacki, Deputy Director of Behavioral Health, and my, most of my programs are crisis-related. And the work that we're doing with public health is pretty, is pretty crucial. Obviously, behavioral health has a stake in prevention of suicide throughout our community. In addition to the suicide, participating in the Suicide Fatality Review, which we do, we also have morbidity, mortality reviews that we do internally, as well as a Sentinel Committee that we that we participate in. All of these committees and forums help to inform what we need to do as far as making changes in our system, and we have done that with Public Health's help. We partnered with them to go after some grant money that they've mentioned. That's a two-year endeavor that we are going to initiate a suicide prevention initiative throughout our system. What that's going to do for us is, it's, right now, currently, we have all of our clinical staff that trains in suicide prevention, but this effort will open that up to everybody that has any contact with public. So front, front desk folks are at our reception, all the way through folks that are helping to clean our facilities and our buildings. So that effort's an important one, I think, because we all have a piece, a piece in this. So we are in the process of contracting with a couple of psychologists that are professionals in this area. They're going to help to review our system to see if there's any gaps. They're going to help us to identify they're going to help us to identify an appropriate tool to use, whether it's for screening and assessment, they're going to map out a training plan for all of our department and provide ongoing support for that. And those tools will be put into our electronic health record to make things easier for practitioners and for those of us that use that system. So we're really looking forward to engaging in this work and continuing this partnership we have with Public Health and moving this work forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, any other public comment here in the audience today? Hearing none, back to you if you had any follow-ups.
Thank you very much for your time today on this important topic.
You're welcome, thank you. And back to the board for a motion.
A move that we receive and file this report.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, and we'll go to our vote tabs. And there they are.
Motion passes 4-0.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, and now back to our regular agenda, we're on item H1, Letter of Opposition for Assembly Bill 742. Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, there's, sometimes things come from the state and they don't put us in perception of what we, what we do up here, and this AB 742 is a pretty important tool in Humboldt County that we use, all the agencies, and some of the misnomers, we do not use K9s for crowd control, we don't use them in low-level arrests. It has been a proven fact that they take away a lot of, they de-escalate rather well where, when they're in position. Our K9s are primarily used for detection of drugs or tracking purposes, which 742 won't stop, but I don't think we need to take the tool out of the belt when we have over 4,000 square miles, 2.6 million acres to cover, and a lot of times, we only have four or five deputies on duty at night, and if one of those has a dog, that's like having two, we don't put him in harm's way. It takes a lot of people, it takes our human sheriffs, rather than our K9s, out of harm's way, and they're very valuable. I think we have Under Sheriff Bro here, and we have former Arcade of Police K9 Officer and current Chief of Police of Ferndale, Ron Sly, here, to talk about the benefits and the importance of not hindering their use of these dogs. And the training is so far advanced, I know they train consistently over, over 120 hours per dog a year. We have three in place now, with a fourth one coming onboard. I think the last dog was bought by, or helped fund by Spencer Electric and Sierra Pacific Industries. So it's, it, it's a wonderful, and the community backs it quite a bit, and they're, and I'll let Under Sheriff Bro talk about the community benefits of the K9s also, with, when it comes to the schools and creating a bond between kids and our deputies.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. I can give some input on it, but I also think that I'm probably even more valuable answering questions if anybody on the board has any, but just to dovetail off of what Supervisor Bone said, I, the use of police protection dogs or police services dogs has been around my entire career, and I do think that they are a great tool for de-escalation, they are, how we use them, a great community outreach tool, they obviously can do things that humans can't do. I hate referring to them as a tool because they are a living person, but I think in the world we live in, anybody could see that we don't want to decrease the amount of tools we have at our disposal to de-escalate situations, especially with people in crisis, but we want to increase the amount of tools we have. With that comes strict oversight and a constant evaluation, reevaluation of whether tools are appropriate, how they're used, and making sure that there's strict adherence to training and deployment. And I don't have any evidence, anecdotal or otherwise, that that's not what we do. In fact, our policy at the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office is more strict, not less, than what the current standards are, and as Supervisor Bone mentioned, we use our police services dogs for detection of dangerous drugs, which is something that most of the time humans can't do through sensory means, and also for tracking, but what I've seen them most used for is for de-escalation, the presence of a dog, the presence of that bark, knowing that we will be able to track somebody more efficiently than just with the senses that a human being has, especially in a county where manpower is an issue, where we're often covering large distances in rural areas, and the ability to use K9s, whether it be the deterrent or the ability to track and sometimes apprehend, is a force multiplier and definitely keeps law enforcement and the communities that we serve safer. I'm all for oversight, it's a big part of my job, and that's not an argument here, I think that any tool can be dangerous, whether you're a carpenter, a doctor, or a peace officer, and I think that making sure that training is appropriate and adhered to, that, that rules and laws are followed, policies are followed, is the appropriate way to police this not to take away or the ability of professionals to use a tool. We wouldn't want to all of a sudden say a surgeon couldn't use a scalpel because it could be dangerous, we just want to make sure they're trained appropriately and held to an appropriate amount of oversight for the use of that tool, so. That's pretty much what I had to say on it, but I can definitely be available for questions, and I myself am not a police services expert, but we do have one here, if you guys would like to hear from him as well.
Yes, please.
Chairman Madrim, Supervisors, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you day today about this. My name's Ron Sly, I'm the Chief of Police in the City of Ferndale. I've been a police officer locally for 33 years, the majority of my career was spent in the city of Arcata, and I had the great opportunity while there to work with a police service canine for eight and a half years named Zari. It was the, by far, the best part of my career. You know, without rehashing what has already been spoken here, the ability to de-escalate a situation was unbelievable with that canine, when he showed up, people didn't fight us, they didn't run. You know, media right now, I guess, kind of portrays that the police don't want people to, to comply, but that is absolutely what we want them to do, we want them to comply, we don't want them to resist, we don't want them to run. We get hurt, they get hurt, it's terrible. The canine was a tremendous tool, he was a tremendous partner in de-escalating, and I, I was fortunate enough to have him on the street for such a long time, I became so used to having that, and when he had to retire, and I no longer had him, and I was confronted with that realization that I, I just couldn't provide the same service to the community that I once did, I jokingly said I lost my superpowers. You know, I, I had, I had so many situations where he was a regional tool, and at the time when I had him, the Sheriff's Department didn't have a K9 program, and so I, I would respond to calls within the county many times. I'm very happy and glad that the county has invested in the police service canine. I, it's an unbelievable tool. I'm a member of the California Police Chiefs Association, the California Police Chiefs Association is opposing AB 742. I'm also the current Secretary for the Law Enforcement Chiefs Association Humboldt, and we've drafted a letter that we will be submitting to our representatives about how we oppose this bill. I think there's a lot of negative consequences that could come out of this bill. People will run, people will fight, they will require officers to use other tools that, you know, just puts more people in risk. So I really appreciate you taking this up, and I would really appreciate your support for this, to oppose this bill. And if you have any questions about canine or what it was like being a handler, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you very much. Back to the board, Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, Chief Sly. When your dog retired, he became, did he become part of your family then?
Yeah, he was part of my family from day one.
Already, yeah, but I mean, you, this is the extension, when a, when a K9 officer gets a dog, it isn't just, okay, when I'm done, when he's done, I'm done, they go home with that family, tell. So it's a commitment that you make also.
Yeah, it's a commitment the whole family makes, I mean, I tell people, if you're thinking about canine, the handler's the hardest thing to find, the dogs are selected, the dogs are not vicious, that's a misnomer, the dogs are very controllable, they have to be social, and they have to be able to turn that on and off, and they're exceptional. The handlers are a hard part to find, because you have to have a commitment from the handler that's 24/7, you have to have the family's support there, because you have this member of your family that has a unique ability and job, and it needs to always be that job. He was my partner all the time, I took him on vacations with us at times, he was just, he was tremendous, and it, I miss him every day.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board? Okay, seeing, no, yeah, Supervisor Wilson?
Well, I was just wondering, having brought this to us, this is a question for Supervisor Bone, I guess, because this is bringing this to the board, can you give perspective on why this legislation was written in the first place?
You know, and I noticed that they said that it was predominantly against black individuals, and I tried to get those statistics from Sheriff Hansel's office, and we don't have that issue up here. The person that brought it forward has been an assemblyman for approximately, when he brought it forward, six weeks, so I imagine it was something that somebody brought to him to bring in, I think he's from San Jose, I think, I'm not sure on that, but this legislation does not fit our wheelhouse, and it does not fit our law enforcement, and at a time, and it was something when I first read it, and I read it a couple times, and then I went online, started trying to find where the opposition aligned from, and, and I'm sitting here right now, and we find out that, you know, morale is sometimes the biggest issue in law enforcement, and we start taking tools away from the sheriffs and that use these tools, and to protect us against things that go bump in the night, and then discussing them. If, I probably wouldn't have brought this forward if I wouldn't have found so much opposition to this amongst the law enforcement personnel, because everybody that's handled a dog, actually everybody that's ever been in a dog-related incident, has said the dog has made them feel safer, has made them more effective, and it can go places they can't, and the de-escalation, we always talk about the de-escalation, and one of the arguments was, well, won't it de-escalate if the dog's just there barking on the leash? Yeah, but it's like telling somebody, hey, I'm going to pop you in the nose if you say that one more time, knowing full well you're not going to pop in the nose, the person's going to turn and run, knowing that animal can't be unleashed. I can, I can outrun that 45-year-old deputy, the 30-year-old thinking, but I can't outrun that seven-year-old dog, six-year-old dog. So law enforcement and our deputies and our local law enforcement support this, and our California State Associations don't support this. So, I mean, we, we tend to think that we can do this to law enforcement or take tools away from them, and then expect them to be as efficient and want to come work for us. And I think they need to know that we have their back and want to give them every tool that they ask for. Sometimes they ask for too much, and we sit up here and argue about it, and they end up getting it anyway. But anyway, I'm just saying, they're the first ones that respond when things go bump in the night, and we just, we just heard it earlier with the dispatchers and everything else about how important they are to us, so that's, that's probably, if it wouldn't have been so adamantly opposed by the law enforcement community, I think we probably could have just let this go, but it, and it sounds like a lot has to do with crowd control, and I was down here for three or four of the protests we had a few years ago, and there were no dogs involved, and they don't use dogs on crowd control, that is completely adamantly, they're not, our dogs aren't trained for crowd control. So, I mean, you have to have, you know, so, and I'll, I'll let Under Sheriff Bro.
I was just going to add, for clarification purposes, I think a big part of this is, is the use of these service dogs in crowd control stuff, and also the apprehension part. We, like I said earlier, we use them for detecting dangerous drugs, for tracking people that have, you know, broken the law and are wanted, but also for apprehension, but apprehension is a very, very small percentage of what they're used for, it's very regulated and controlled, it has to be for a serious felony, a dangerous situation, it can't be used for, for nonviolent or minor arrests, which I agree is appropriate, and we are even more strict than the requirements and the guidelines for policy that were currently out there. We have a very low incidence of apprehension by dogs, it's the deterrent that is the most valuable part of that, but at the same time, even though apprehension using the dog is such a small occurrence percentage of the time, when it is necessary, when it is going to resolve a situation without further use of force or something more dangerous to the police officers or the public we're serving, it is a valuable tool to have. It's very low percentage, it's low frequency, high complexity, should be very controlled and monitored, and there's review processes already in place per policy and law, so to take it away when it's already very controlled and regulated, that'd be like taking away our ability to use our firearm. It's, it's very low frequency, very high complexity, very controlled, very regulated, very oversight, and it should be, and use of the canine for apprehension already is. So to take it away when there's already all of these thresholds that have to be met and these checks and balances, doesn't make as much sense to me, and in regards to the crowd control, again, like Supervisor Bone said, we don't do that anyway, that's not an allowed use of our service dogs, so I don't, I think that's a moot point, but I hope that clarified.
And to tag back on, I'd, I'd probably be fine with some of these things, but so many of these things coming out of the legislature, somebody, you know, you remember, what, we get, four, 6,000 bills a year come through, I mean, they don't all pass, but they're a blanket bill, they cover everything, and this may be, the two writers are from, I believe, San Jose and Riverside, they may have issues with, with something that's going on down there, so maybe locally, they could, they could impose their own type of restrictions, go to their Board of Supervisors down there. We're not having a problem, we're having, it's a great asset, and especially since we're understaffed, since we're understaffed, this is such a great, and you're right, it's terrible to call them a tool, we don't treat them like a tool when they're shot or anything else like that, but it is, it is a facet that you guys use, and so I just, and, and I know we like to say, well, hey, this has happened in LA, we've got to stop it before it gets here. It's not going to come here, I mean, we, our controls are well in place, our dogs are, you know, we, we know all our dogs, our community supports the dogs. I was kind of surprised how much outreach I had from people going, you guys aren't seriously considering this, and I'm going, well, this isn't us guys, we're just going to, you know, they, they thought it was ridiculous that they would put those kind of restrictions on the handlers, who are well-trained, and their dogs are even more trained, so that's in a nutshell why it ended up in front of us.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. Any other discussion by the board? Okay, we'll go to public comment, and I see a hand up in Zoom, 5288. You're up. There you go.
I'll try and make this really quick, ditto to everything Rex said, dogs are a wonderful thing, they're trained, they're very smart, if we didn't have them in the airports and in, in customs going through and sniffing for, for everything, and I strongly support not hobbling our, our deputies in any way, shape, or form, and I trust their use of these animals, it's a great partnership, Mother Nature's given us a gift, and I think we should continue to use Mother Nature's gifts whenever we can, thank you for my afternoon speak.
Thank you commenter, and this is an opportunity for those here in the audience today to come up and speak on this issue if you would like. And seeing none coming forward, I will say, I really appreciated Chief of Police from Ferndale, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Ron Sly.
Ron Sly coming up, as well as Under Sheriff Bro. I agree with you, you know, the harder part is the handler. I think, you know, dogs get a lot of blame for all kinds of things, and I think really typically is the human being that's involved in their training. And I think really typically is the human being that's involved in their training. You know, like pit bulls is a good example. They get a lot of, a lot of blame for a lot of things. And really it's the handler, you know, that probably matters the most, whether it's a pit bull or a German shepherd or anything else. And my, my guess, I mean, having always been a dog owner, um, dogs take cues from us. So they can be trained for all kinds of situations, to find drugs, to sniff out this, to do that. But they're taking a cue from the human being, the handler, in regards to what to do. Okay, now search for drugs. Okay, now, you know, I'm sure there's various cues they, they give them for these different things. And, and that's where the issue is, I think, where the data in these other areas, not in Humboldt, but in other areas, that's where the data was saying, maybe the use of this is a little skewed. At least that was the comments made by the person who put the bill in that I saw in the news last night. Um, I would be very interested to see data for us locally. I agree with Supervisor Bone, I don't think we probably have a problem locally. I've never heard of a problem. But I think it'd be a good thing for the community to have, um, a little report, you know, a little annual report that says, here were the number of canine, um, you know, where we put them into service in a situation and here was that situation. Here was the makeup of that, et cetera. Is, is that on our agenda? The report of those stats? Yeah? I apologize, I didn't actually see that there. It wasn't on my agenda copy I got. At any rate, um, so what does that say to us, the, the data in the local report? Could you speak to that? Just a summary of, of the information?
I would just start by saying it's hard to quantify the things that deterrence actually affect. Because it's, we usually don't count the things that don't happen. But anecdotally, and, and I truly believe that's the biggest value. But we have a very, I don't have the numbers in, in my head right off the top of my head, but if you guys have there. We have a very low incidence of police service dog apprehension where the dog actually bites. We deploy the dogs often for situations that are legally and per policy, uh, appropriate. It's very controlled. It goes through a heavy review process every time. We're constantly meeting, uh, training and assessing the appropriate use. And we have very strict policies that are within adherence to the laws on when that can be used and it's very slim window. Dogs can be used to search for drugs when appropriate and lawful. Dogs can be used to track wanted persons, but still even then only when it's appropriate and meets those thresholds. And apprehension, just like using a firearm, would be very, very stringent, very limited circumstances, very high risk, very, you know, no other options or very few other options. But a police services dog is a, a force option of de-escalation and also apprehension that really is not replicated in any of the other tools at our disposal. So it is, you know, for lack of a better words, it is already very controlled. It is already very monitored. It requires tons of training, documentation, reporting and constant reviews when any is used. So it is, it is not something that is used willy-nilly and I wouldn't think it should be. It should be very controlled and that is how it is already done. So the thought of taking away that tool without some evidence that it's being used inappropriately, especially in our region, doesn't seem to make much sense to me, but.
Supervisor Madron, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I, I did review it and I didn't see anything there. So again, I think it'd be nice to get an annual report perhaps.
Can I get?
As part of maybe the other things that you guys do just on deployment stats and situations, racial makeups, that kind of stuff that seemed to be an issue in other areas, just be nice to affirm that's not an issue in our area, if that's the case. So Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I just, it, I, I think it's in the sheriff's, um, annual report is where it's at. And that's where I got it from. So it's canine stats, utilizations were 79, this is 2022. Apprehensions were 14, training hours were 400-plus hours. Firearms seized was five. Methamphetamine seized 269 grams. Fentanyl seized 22 grams, heroin seized 27 grams. And that was by canine deputy Yahtzee, canine deputy Uno. And I love this part, the newest deputy, canine deputy Rex. So, I love it. I love it, you know. I meant, I, I meant, we buy the dogs and they're already named. So they had nothing, if you know, the trainer comes.
I, I just wanted to add something to that. The, uh, when you, you talk about apprehensions, I would want to look at that number again. Because we called apprehensions, we tracked somebody and found them and they gave up. The incidents where a suspect was actually bitten is incredibly low. Um, when I retired, we tried to come up with an estimation of how many times the dog was present during arrest in eight and a half years, which is a long span. We came up with about a thousand arrests. I'd been around there. The incidents where he actually was called in to bite somebody was six times in that. And they were all violent felonies. So, uh, one thing too, I want you to think about is if you think about some of the most violent things we've had happen in our community, we have a suspect on the loose. That's when the dog's called in. And it, I mean, it's terrifying to the whole community when these things are going on and you have somebody out there. And I, you need to think about that tool that's going to be coming away from us. It provides tremendous, uh, protection for the officers that are responding, they're searching for that. It gives them, you know, obviously the dog's sense of smell and hearing make them so much better tool to locate somebody. And, uh, I just wanted to throw that in there.
I appreciate that. And thank you Supervisor Bone for sharing that information from the sheriff's report. I think what's missing there that was the reason for this bill being put into the legislature process uh, was a insinuation that perhaps the deployment was racially based. That there was a far greater incidence of colored people having dogs, you know, used, canines used in various situations. So that was the suggestion of the author on the news. That's all I know about that. Uh, I don't think it's a problem locally, but we don't have as much racial diversity here in Humboldt County. We do have some diversity, in particular Native American populations. So I think it would be good to delve a little deeper into this data and make sure that's not an issue here locally in Humboldt County. That would just be my, my request, but I'm just one member of the board.
I read that too in, in the, um, in the bill. Um, my degree from Humboldt State's in sociology, so I like looking at these kinds of things. That, there, that is a lot bigger, more complex issue than those limited numbers right there. I think what you need to look at when you're looking at this data is the crime, the type of crime that's being used. Not so much the, the color of the suspect to, you know, and I think that's skewed. And that's been my training and that's been my experience. Um, I'm, I, I think you should just look at that, that data that way.
Appreciate it. You know, I absolutely want to have the officers' backs. I mean, and no way do I want to reduce your, your tools and your abilities. Uh, we value your service, all of, all of you in the community. And, you know, whatever de-escalation techniques we can have, all the way up to the beanbag shotgun are, are good. They do help, uh, protect lives, I think, and, and attempt to de-escalate. Um, but sometimes even a de-escalation technique can escalate things depending on the, the individual that we're handling or, or what's going on. Um, and I agree, you know, it's not so much the stats on the race or whatever. But I do think that, not just in this situation, but many law enforcement situations, it seems like lately, we keep hearing about stats where there is an inordinate amount of arrests of people of color compared to the population density or whatever. And so that is absolutely on the minds of people in communities, wanting to uh, do better in terms of, uh, the handlers, our officers, um, using good judgment, you know, and being fair in the, uh, application of, of that, uh, effort and stuff. But I do support our officers, I absolutely do. So thank you for your responses, appreciate it. Any other comments? Supervisor Bushnell?
Um, thank you. Um, I, I am opposed to this as well. I do believe that it, um, should come in by community and should be an ordinance that is brought forward, um, by communities if they feel that they have a problem. Um, I do 100% agree, it is not the, the animal at all. And that, um, the use of, um, the, the dogs is such a deterrent in so many ways. Also, um, I, you know, the city of Fortuna has canines as well. They're, um, they're amazing, uh, as partners. And I have seen them interact in the schools and with kids and in social events. And, um, I'm really impressed, uh, the, one of them, they speak German. The handler speaks German and that's to make sure that, uh, someone else cannot control that, that, uh, animal, is I believe is correct.
Well, it, like, my dog was a German shepherd imported from the Czech Republic. So I use Czech commands with him. It does add that, but obviously in the Czech Republic, they taught him in the native language. So I don't think, the dogs typically won't listen to somebody besides the handler.
Okay.
But, um, it's, it's kind of, uh, it's kind of typical for the dog to maybe, if it's initially trained in one language, to stay with that language.
Okay. Well, I, I've interacted with the, the dogs and, uh, the deputies down there a lot. And, uh, also with the Humboldt County sheriffs. Um, it was really interesting, we had a, a deputy that was in Garberville that had a canine unit. And he came into my store and, you know, cannabis is really prevalent down everywhere as it's legal. And so I was real curious to how the dog would react. Um, I had someone in my store that, you know, I could smell cannabis. So the officer just happened to be in there. It was really interesting to me and, and how, and I asked a lot of questions and, um, you know, got great answers. And, um, you know, I really just love the interaction with the community here. I, I don't, in other areas haven't been, you know, I don't go to other areas a lot, so I haven't had that interaction. But I've seen lots of presentations with, uh, the deputies or sheriffs and their, and their, um, service animal. And you're right about, um, deputies fall in love with their animals. And, um, you know, it's really sad when, when, and I, there's been a lot of, I don't know the data and I wished I had looked it up. But I don't know how many service animals have been killed, but I know there's been a lot. And it's, uh, you know, it's equally, um, obvious that people also, you know, shoot at and attack those service animals as well. And so, um, I just really love the, the service animals and what it brings to the community, especially in Humboldt. I've seen so much positive and so much positive interactions in the schools with kids and kids warming up to deputies and law enforcement and really, and then that's a connection we really need, um, with our young adults to really have that connection with, with, uh, the police and with, um, the kids trusting police.
I, I think it made me a lot more approachable. People would come up to me to talk about the dog. And, uh, I did way more, uh, demonstrations with a canine than I ever had apprehensions with a dog. We constantly were requested and we went to schools, senior centers, uh, all kinds, uh, of events. Um, they're, they're very popular. In the, our most recent shop with a cop, there was two canine units there, one from, I believe, State Park and one, uh, from the sheriff's department who were there in Target shopping with the kids and stuff. And the kids were petting them. And it's, it's just amazing that interaction. And they, they do, uh, they actually soften us up, I think, because people want to come and, and they can pet the dogs and it's, it's a neat tool, tool that way.
I just, um, flew home with, uh, from Denver and, you know, it's hugest airport. And, uh, they had several, um, canines there. I think they were drug, or no, they were bomb sniffing. And it just was, uh, it made me feel like, I'm like, okay, this is great. There's not, that dog's not alerting to anything. And it made me feel some more secure. And, and, um, so, you know, that, that's what I've seen in interaction as well in other areas. But, um, yeah, I just really, um, appreciate what the animals bring to, to society, actually.
All right, Supervisor Bone?
And with that, they have, they have police service dogs when you go into, through the interest to Disneyland. So I thought that was very interesting. The other thing, I was going to ask County Council. Um, how many lawsuits have we had filed against us for dog bites in the last? I don't.
Ever.
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. That's something that our office could look into and get back to.
Do you remember any?
I can remember at least two or three within the last year.
Okay, any other comments? Supervisor Wilson?
Appreciate this discussion. Um, I, uh, and I actually, I mean, really appreciate uh, our law enforcement and the work that they do. And I, and especially actually Justin and the work that he does in the community, just and, uh, and, um, within the community that I work with. I want to just put, there's context to this, a couple of things. One is, is there is context written into the bill that I think is really important. The history about how canines have been used with relationship to crowd control and apprehension and the injuries associated with it and the demographics around that. I think the imagery and the, and, and the, um, the intent of the past, uh, is relevant in this space. And even, I would say, even the history around why German is used to, as a, as a, as a language with relationship to, to canine use. And I think we have to be cognizant of that, um, and, and understand it in the context of why this is being brought forward. I think that this bill is not, uh, perfect and, and honestly, um, it's, um, but I, the, the language of this letter is deaf to the issues that are being brought forward. But also, I would also say that if we're talking about canines as a tool, this bill does not limit school demonstrations, community events, routine patrols, narcotic vehicle searches, area searches for lost citizens, uh, and recruitment fairs. So I mean, just want to be really clear, um, that doesn't limit those things with relationship to, to this. It's really specific about apprehension and crowd control. So from a tool perspective, it doesn't remove the tool. It limits it. And I actually really appreciate the, what, um, Under Sheriff Bro was speaking to with relationship to changing the standard, that we have higher standards than other communities. Um, that being said, I'm not supportive of this letter, uh, being sent. Um, and honestly, we're often asked to make decisions that are very, um, you know, these stark dichotomies, yes, no. Well, I would say that this isn't, this is just isn't a place where I'm comfortable moving forward with this letter of, of opposition for those reasons and, and really for, we're just not addressing that context. And that's just me. And I'm happy to, uh, that, move forward with that.
I'll make a motion to, uh, send the letter.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the letter and a second. And, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to our vote tabs.
Motion passes three, one.
Right, thank you very much and appreciate you being here today.
Thank you for staying all morning.
Okay, with that, we're at 12:00 noon. We do have, uh, four time sets at 1:00. We have three other items of, uh, on the agenda, but we're going to go ahead and break for lunch. Uh, we're going to recess till 1:00. I'm sorry, excuse me. Uh, Connie, were you hoping to get something in right now? Like the navigation center? Let's do that. Yeah, let's do that and then we'll still have plenty of time for lunch. Thank you for being here all morning as well. She's like, oh!
Thank you very much.
Great, all right.
Thank you very much, Chair Madron. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. Um, good afternoon. Uh, I'm, uh, I'm here with Hannah Ozanian. She is a consultant that works, um, with the HHS and we're going to present on the navigation center. I did want to set, set the stage a little bit and just talk about, um, the county staff and city staff that have worked, um, together for over 10 years, meeting regularly, um, to come up with solutions around, um, our houseless population in Humboldt County. So, um, several years ago, it was identified that if we had a place, um, like a day center, somewhere where people could be that was safe during the day, um, that, that would be, uh, one solution to, um, multiple, um, problems that we see um, with our population. That being said, um, we would have, uh, area for, um, staff to engage, um, the population, um, more often than, than what is happening currently. So, um, I'm going to introduce Hannah, let her talk a little bit about herself and, um, the, the work that we're doing. Um, Brooke, could you put the PowerPoint back up? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Director Beck, and good afternoon, board. I'm very grateful to be, um, playing a small role in this project and to be able to inter- to be playing a small role in this project and to be able to introduce what we have so far to you all today. Again, my name is Hannah Ozanian, and I come here as a consultant. In the past, I worked as a director at a very large day center in Sacramento, serving individuals experiencing homelessness called Friendship Park. And there are very few centers, navigation centers for, for the homeless population in general. And it's one of, Friendship Park is one of the largest day centers. It serves about 600 to 1,000 individuals every day, depending on the time of, of month and time of year. And while I served as director, we moved from one space at one end of our campus to a completely new center that was designed with all of our services in mind. So it was quite an opportunity for me to learn, and I'm very grateful to be here to try to bring some of what I've learned by trial and error to our community. So I will just show you a little bit of Friendship Park. Again, this is in just north of downtown Sacramento, so it's serving a much larger population, and an urban population, but nonetheless, the services that we're hoping to provide for our neighbors living outside are similar. So here is just an over, a bird's eye view of Friendship Park. You can see the entrance here. Just want to show you the, you know, lots of wide open spaces to accommodate many people, as well as their belongings, bikes, carts, luggage. And you can also see, we, we just aim to create a safe, welcoming, clean space where individuals can come in, get some rest, some respite, and then as well access their, what I call their survival services, you know, access to a shower, to clean water, laundry services, and then later in the day, they can eat at our dining room. Here is another shot just to see, you know, that there's a baggage area to store all sorts of belongings. That's one thing we have to be very cognizant of as we think of the design of our building, because we will be inviting, you know, many people in, as well as all of the things that they own. Okay, so on to what we are planning to do as far as our objectives with this center, that we intend to have down in Old Town, which would be on Third, West Third and Commercial. And if you're thinking, where is that? It's across the street from the dining facility, from St. Vincent de Paul's dining room. So where many of our folks are gathering every day anyhow. So what are our objectives? We want a central location where we can come together and work as community groups, and brainstorm together to, as far as how we are going to be able to face these challenges of, of our neighbors experiencing homelessness. So one central location. We will also want to be engaging with those individuals by, you know, easily connecting them with different service providers, and hopefully be getting them on a pathway to permanent housing. And then, of course, just some place where individuals can rest during the day and get some respite from their difficult lives, living outside. So services to include would be an assessment for service need, access to social workers, hygiene services. A huge, huge service we plan to provide is, is clean restrooms for our folks living outside. That's a huge need, as well as showers, a clothing closet, and laundry assistance. We'll have a community classroom and a computer lab, as well as storage lockers, a bike kitchen, a pet kennel, so that our guests can take care of their animals, and a safe place to be during the day. Okay. And I just should, I guess, now that I get to this slide, I should just back up and say, for this project, it really is two programs in one location. The first being this navigation center on the first floor, and day center that would perhaps be open, you know, business hours, Monday through Friday. And then, in addition, on the second floor of our facility, there would be a temporary shelter, non-congregate shelter for, we're guessing about 10 to 15 individuals. And though these projects will, or these programs will be housed in, in the same area, we don't intend to have a lot of back and forth. Perhaps an individual could visit the day center and be referred to the shelter upstairs for a few months. But other than that, they, we don't intend a lot of overlap. So this, that may become clearer in just a moment. So for this shelter upstairs, individuals, or they could be in a couple, could live in non-congregate shelter, in a non-congregate shelter for an undetermined amount of time at this point. So there are studios that you'll see in just one moment, and accommodation, accommodation for partners and pets' possessions, and then, of course, dedicated case management to help those individuals that are housed in this temporary shelter to get them into permanent housing. Okay, and here are some images of the vacant lot at this moment, that is across the street from the dining facility, and it is owned by Mercer Frazier. The dining facility, as I mentioned earlier, is a hub for individuals experiencing homelessness in Eureka and in Old Town, serving 100 individuals per day at St. Vincent de Paul. They are wonderful, wonderful people. You can see another image. The facility would be on our, right on your left-hand side where the fencing is. And again, there's just another shot with the fencing on the right-hand side is where we would be. So here is just a rendering of our building we plan to have. And on the right-hand side, or excuse me, on the left-hand side of the upper image, that corner would be on West Third and Commercial. That gives you a little more reference. But from a bird's eye view, I think this is a little more helpful as far as seeing what our intention is with the space itself. So on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see the yellow outline of the, the building. And on, in the middle, you'll see our planned outdoor area. So we intend to have a big open gate where we can invite folks in, and there's space for your belongings, for your bicycle, there's a, a animal kennel planned, and just a, an open area for people to be, gather, rest. And, and also, it would be from the street, it would be enclosed, so it wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily be, you know, looking in. It's a private, secured area. And here, you have a glimpse of what we have on the first floor. So again, this is the navigation centerpiece. You have a reception welcoming window right as folks would be entering into the, the outdoor area as well, to greet individuals, orient them to the space, and get them connected to services. You can see, we have planned for, for cell phone charging, for showers. We intend to have, offer showers and individual bathrooms for privacy. We'll have a clothing closet. And, and then, on the left-hand side of the screen, that sort of third of the building is dedicated to outreach staff, be it DHS or other entities, that would like to come and work with the folks receiving services at this center. And now, this is just a glimpse at upstairs, and you can see we have these, these studios with bathrooms and kitchenettes for our, our temporary sheltered individuals or couples. And at this, we have 13 units drawn up, as well as a, a office for the resident services. And perhaps one of the apartments themselves would be used for staff, overnight staff. In regards to safety and security, we would have 24-hour security, particularly, of course, when the center is open, but also when the center is closed, so that there is security for the shelter, the shelter residents upstairs. An important piece of these type of navigation centers is training staff to be, you know, aware of de-escalation techniques. And then, we also will be working closely with CSET, EPD's Community Safety Engagement Team, to, to help those. I mean, often, at my old job, we often did warm handoffs where police officers would bring folks that were in need of a pair of shoes, or just something to eat. So they will be our partners as we unfold this, this wonderful needed project. So that is a very brief summary, but please let us know if you have questions at this point.
I have a couple of things to add. I just want to talk about the facility itself. So I mentioned several years ago, so ongoing, we've been meeting with city staff. Several years ago, the previous city manager let me know that there was a building that was being built at this location, and that they were planning on leasing that building. And so I contacted the, the owner of the building at that time and said, hey, we'd really like to do this project here. It's right across the street from the dining facility. All the, all the, the folks are already there. And so we were hoping that there wouldn't be too much of NIMBYism in that location. And then, and, and they were interested, and so that's really great. The, it, we've been working and having conversations about this for years. We have funding set aside through our HAP funds, the county's portion of the HAP funds, to provide some upfront funding to get the, to get the tenant improvements going. And then, and then ongoing services will be allocations, our grant allocations will pay for the ongoing lease amount. So I just wanted to put that out there. I, I think that it's important to note that Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bass attended our joint meetings for several years, trying to come up with different solutions around this. So I, I thank you. And then, and then also just want to thank all of our internal staff that have been helping put this project together. We are in the midst of negotiating the lease currently, and it's taking time from council and public works to do that work. So my priority isn't always others' priorities, so I appreciate the work.
Thank you. This is exciting. And again, yeah, thank you to those Supervisor Bone, Bass, and everybody else that's been involved for so long. Supervisor Bone and Bushnell.
This has been a, this has been a process, and Friendship Square, and offshoot of loaves and fishes and everything else. I've got the distinct honor of knowing Hannah since she was born, and getting a tour back in 2017, when it first opened up, and then found myself gravitating there on my walks, just to see how it was operating. And you mentioned earlier that EPD can drop off people needs, sheriff's office can also drop off, law enforcement can drop off a need. This is, this is a Humboldt-based center. It's just based where, and, and what this does, this allows, what this is, is a wonderful tool for our local, the team that, that the city has in law enforcement, because you can't tell people to move on unless they have somewhere to go to. Now we have an option, we have a navigation center. And when Hannah opened the one in Sacramento, it was seamless. It was amazing to me how many volunteers she got from the community, and gave them train, you know, undetected training, that they were learning how to deal with things. And, and the place still looks great. It's still operating, you know, but you know, it's, 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 it's a, it's a great tool for Sacramento. And so then I started coming back and telling Connie, and then Hannah decided to move back to her hometown, and brought her little girl with her, and had another baby here, too. So it's great stuff. So we're lucky to have somebody that has that much knowledge in this situation, and is able to walk us through, because right now, she's field-tested this thing. She knows what works and doesn't work. That won't work. That'll work. You need this or it won't work. And it's, I, Hannah, I appreciate, you know, all the knowledge you bring to the table on this. This is like overwhelming for me. And again, Connie, thanks for staying with it, and our legal team for fighting through the contracts and everything else. So we're getting there. It's pretty exciting stuff.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you for the presentation. I know that the Southern Humboldt area would really benefit from something like this. And I think that Supervisor Bone answered my question, but it's not centric to Eureka residents. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I support this work. I think it's so important, and it gives people opportunity to, to help themselves, and I think that's critical. It also provides a lot of need, say, you know, we just had to have a cold weather shelter down in Southern Humboldt, and if there was a, a facility like this down there, that, that need wouldn't be, because we would already have that. I know that there is groups working towards this goal in almost every community in, in Humboldt County. And so I just am really excited that, and that this is coming forward, and all your dedication and hard work, and every, all of staffs. And I recognize that it takes a long time to do these things, but it can't come fast enough.
Yeah, one in each of our communities, can't we, please? No, but thank you so much, and it is wonderful to have your expertise, and coming home. Great stuff. Any other comments from the board, please?
I'll make a motion that we accept the presentation happily.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, but we need to go to public comments. So in the Zoom, I have one hand up, and that is 5288. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Strongly support this project. A long time in coming. The biggest thing I, I support is it sounds like we have management here that can manage it with the expertise. Did you guys Photoshop that rainbow in on the other one there? Kind of, anyway. Wonderful project. Move forward with it, please. And I do support having these, in, in all the other areas. Everybody should have one in their district, whether it be in the city or, or things. It's, it's, it's the future. We need this tool. And it sounds like it's one where we actually can get some of the money back they take away from us by getting grants to facilitate this, instead of telling us where we have to spend it. So a good job, get some of that money, and get her done. Thanks for my opportunity to speak, and off we go.
Thank you for that very concise comment. And seeing no other hands in the Zoom, we'll go to the audience here today. If anybody wishes to come forward and make a public comment on this item, this is your opportunity. Welcome.
Public commenter, but we have been working, I'm Miles Slattery, with the City of Eureka. I'm the city manager for the City of Eureka. I've been at the city for 17 years. This has been something that's been desired by our business community, as well as our overall community, ever since that. I think that we've done a really good job, and really appreciate the support of DHS, and all they've done to make this a reality. We've had this project permitted for at least six months now. So there's not only the long-term year wait of 17 years that I've been looking at this, but more so just some of the last six months of trying to get this finalized. So it's going to be a huge benefit to the community. We have every intention on holding a joint meeting, a public meeting, and notifying everybody in the area, and having discussions, and to express any concerns about this, to make sure that we can mitigate those concerns. The partnership with the DHS and our Uplift team, and our CSET team is going to be great for the success of this project. We have, we're going to be moving a new police substation at the foot of Commercial. That will be located close proximity to this. Our CSET team will be there, as well as our Uplift team. So it's going to be a great partnership, and we really look forward to supporting this. and making sure that this happens sooner than later. Anything we can do to support it, we're there for it, that's for sure.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the partnership. Couldn't do it without you. Um, you know, I think this is a great example of how we overcome NIMBY-ism, and you mentioned that in your comments, Director Beck, that, and we already have all kinds of things going on in various neighborhoods. And isn't it better when we create centers like this, maybe in the same neighborhood, but now we're providing services and helping people lift themselves up? So I think it is an example of how we overcome NIMBY-ism, you know? And maybe people are opposed to things in their neighborhoods, but stuff's already happening. You know, if you've got wooded areas around your neighborhoods, you've got stuff happening. And so I've been using this example in my community to try and convince people to be less in opposition to programs and like this. So thank you for persevering, persevering and moving forward with this. So last comments, Supervisor Bone.
Well, I think, and we have to go back a few years, quite a few years, when we built the village down there for Betty for a year. And I think we had a very robust, um, public meeting, um, at Betty's facility, basically before it was rebuilt. They're discussing this, this basic, you know, do we want that there and everything else? And I think after we saw the success of that, and then into their new location with, I still think they don't get any police calls at all, and Miles could nod his head, they, it's very low impact. It's allowed for the neighborhood to see if something is run properly. It can be more of a benefit. What's down there now is we have a sidewalk that the city paid quite a bit of money to put in, and it's double-fenced and unaccessible because they want, they had to keep people off of it. It works, but they're on the other side of the street. So I think when this comes around and when Betty's, even when Betty's Village was there, did a few barbecues there and everything else, and it, and it becomes an asset to the neighborhood rather than a liability, especially if it's going to be run. And I, I can't, I'm going to say it again, I can't tell you how excited I am that Hannah, with her knowledge, has come back home and is going to run this, because it's a big, big deal. It's a big deal to have that kind of knowledge and that kind of, it's been ground-truthed. So she's going to be able to take the helm and do a great job, or, I keep saying that, she's going to consult on it. I don't know if she's taken it over. We haven't gotten that far, but, you know, so I'm sucking you in as I'm talking, just so you know. I'll talk to your mom and dad. Anyway, thank you.
All right. And with that, we have our voting tabs up.
Motion passes 4-0.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And with that, we are adjourned until 1 o'clock for our closed session items, and we'll come back then, right at 1 o'clock, and read those into the record. And then we'll break for probably an hour or two and come back for our final two items on the agenda in the afternoon. Thank you, folks. We're in recess.
All right. We are back in session, and we're going to take it to the county council to read into the record the closed session items.
Thank you, Chairman Drone. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of MR versus Humboldt County, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201622, and Bear River Band of Ronerville Rancheria Tribe et al. versus California Department of Social Services et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2300408. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators.
Thank you, county council. And we'll go to public comment. I see one hand up in Zoom. 5288, this is your opportunity.
Boy, you jumped in there quick. I had, uh, I had Hannah Joy on the phone there getting some clarity. Anyway, I did wish to make comment on, I guess you got Mr., I don't know what, Mr. MR versus Humboldt County, won't comment on that one, haven't had time, but the Bear River Band of Ronerville Rancheria, this is California Department of Social Services et al. And I assume you're part of et al., and I don't know, but we have had some tribal problems they feel with the California Department and Humboldt County regarding protecting their foster children, maybe. I highly recommend that you do whatever you can to relieve any kind of pressure. We still have something out there from before kind of over our heads that hasn't been fixed. Comment on that one. Fix that one. I think it may be kid-oriented. Then you have closed session for your labor negotiators, and I highly recommend that, I noticed you have AFSMI in there. I think you have, you have SEIU in Home Support Services. I will always be going to bat for those people. I think they deserve $25 an hour or something like that. And I know we only pay a certain portion of it, so the money has come back here. I'm hoping there's some of the people in the room there. If they're not, if they hear this, give Ken a call, 707-496-7454, because I do wish to, to reach out. It's something so important. I have people all the time. How do I get that, these, these people to come and help, help us to take care of our older people? They're very high demand, and so I hopefully, hopefully you will give them a, well, at least the same amount of raise that, uh, over the years you folks have had, if you go back five years and whatever that totals out to. I know Rex says he leaves it on the table, which is greatly appreciated. But these are the people that I will always support, frequently are the lower-paid people out there and do the hardest job in Humboldt County. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on your closed session items.
Thank you commenter, commenter. And seeing nobody here in the audience today that wants to speak on this item, I'm assuming you're just here for the session. We will then go to recess, and we will be back, I'm estimating, one to two hours from now. Okay. We are in recess. We have two items left on our agenda, but first we'll report out from the closed session.
Thank you, Chairman Drone. With regard to item L2, the board, the board voted 4-0 with Supervisor Arroyo absent to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with the Mitchell Law Firm for defense of the case of MR versus Humboldt County, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201622. With regard to item L3, the board voted 4-0 with Supervisor Arroyo absent to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with Gordon Creed, Kelly Hole, Angel and Sugarman LLP for defense of the case of Bear River Band of Ronerville Rancheria Tribe et al. versus California Department of Social Services et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2300408. And there was no reportable action taken with regard to item L4.
Thank you, council. And with that, we will go to item four, and item five, what is it, eight? I, I five, which is consideration of Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation and Conservation District's request to assume the county's $2,320,000 Environmental Protection Administrative, Administration Brownfield Cleanup Revolving Loan Fund to the Samoa Pacific Group. So I assume Director Ford, you're here to present?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Drone, members of the Board of Supervisors. Good afternoon. John Ford and Michael Richardson with the Planning and Building Department here to present the request by the Humboldt Harbor and Recreation District to assume responsibility for an EPA loan that's currently granted to the Samoa Pacific Group. The loan would be used for partial payment of the Harbor District's proposed purchase of property that's currently owned by the Samoa Pacific Group. The county has provided a total of $2.3 million in several loans to Samoa Pacific Group for the removal of lead from the existing homes in Samoa. Want to say that in analyzing this, our extreme desire is to facilitate the Harbor District's request, and part of that is to facilitate development of the harbor for a heavy lift terminal, and also to facilitate Samoa Pacific Group and their development of housing. Both of those are extremely important objectives. The struggle is, is there are many competing factors in this, and I'm going to ask Mr. Richardson now to go over those briefly.
Okay. Thank you, Director Ford. Michael Richardson here. In their proposal in Attachment Six, the Harbor District requests that the loan term be extended for 10 years and for half of the loan to be forgiven if the property is developed. In recent conversations we've had with EPA staff, they are not supportive of either a loan extension or forgiveness of a portion of it. They're supportive of the transfer of the loan from Samoa Pacific Group to the Harbor District, but they don't want a modification to the loan terms be allowed. And then another consideration for your board with this item is how best to make sure that the homes, the historic homes in the town of Samoa continue to be, the, the lead hazards on those homes and around those homes continue to be remediated. Right now, we've, we're, because of the loan that we've issued to Samoa Pacific Group, there's a promissory note that we have, and before they can sell any of the homes, we are requiring verification that the lead hazard has been abated on those homes. And if we were to transfer this loan to the Harbor District, we would lose the ability to, to do that. And so what we're recommending is that your board, uh, in the approval resolution, authorize the planning director to enter into a, a side agreement with the Samoa Pacific Group to continue the abatement of the lead hazard in the town of Samoa. Right now, the, um, the loan has a, a requirement that all of the homes be abated and that, that work be completed by June 30th of, of this year. And that, that's not possible, frankly. There's 41 homes that have been abated over the last several years, and there's 50, 58 more to go. And so, um, they're going to need additional work and additional time to make, make the rest of those homes, to clean up the rest of those homes. And so that's, that's an issue that we need to, to deal with. And, and so your board, through this approval resolution, would authorize the planning director to negotiate the terms of that continued cleanup effort. The, we, we have received comments from the Harbor District and from the Samoa Pacific Group that they object to holding open this, the close of escrow until the, the homes are, well, the, the agreement is satisfied to clean up all of the homes by the end of June of this year. The, the terms of the escrow that they've entered into, the Samoa Pacific Group in the Harbor District requires that, that the escrow closed before then, and, and so it's kind of a nonstarter for them to have that condition be a part of the agreement. And I think if your board was, is supportive of this request, then you can just have the director, um, work with the Samoa Pacific Group in the Harbor District to enter into agreements that are, that would allow for the close of escrow in a time, in a more timely manner. That's the end of my presentation.
If I could just add one more thing, Chair, I apologize.
Please.
One of the unique requests here is that normally when there's a surety on, or for a loan placed on property, that there's some kind of commitment and some kind of tangible asset that backs that up. In this particular case, the Harbor District is a governmental entity, so they cannot allow a lien to be placed on their property. So what they're proposing to do is assign the rents from two different, three different properties that they currently hold as a surety against the, the loan. And that's fairly unusual for a loan like this. It's not unheard of for a governmental entity to assign rents, but that, that is something for the board's consideration. That concludes our presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Director. Questions from the board? Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you through the chair. So just so I can kind of get my head around it, so someone is going to, the Harbor District is going to acquire the property, and they, with that property comes this loan, and they're requesting a reduction in loan and 10-year extension when it was, it's due in full in 2024?
Correct.
And also, when I was reading through the staff report, there's an expense that, that comes with executing that $7,500, which hasn't been addressed either. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to make those points, and then I'm happy to hear discussion.
Great, thank you. Any other clarifying questions, comments?
I have one.
Yes, please.
Director Ford, is it not possible in the sale of that property just to pay the loan from the person? Just to, to, you know, take care of their loan, and the harbor would still then get that property? Or what is the?
There's other ways of, of certainly conveying the property, of paying for the property. I, I think that, uh, that what this does is allows the conveyance of property for, for tangible, something tangible, i.e. taking on the responsibility of the loan. It gets the SPG group out from under the loan. It gives the Harbor District the ability to repay money at a 0% interest rate for purchasing the property. So it, there's a benefit there to both, both parties. Otherwise, the property certainly can't just be purchased outright, yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Bone.
And the harbor's coming up with $688,000 of, to add on for a $3 million price tag, if I read that right?
That's our understanding, yes.
Okay. Um, and so will they be paying the rents directly to us, or will they be going to the harbor, and the harbor will pay us off of that?
The rents would be going to the Harbor District, and then the Harbor District would be paying us. The, um, the surety is, if we had to go after the rents, would be something that would be a separate process from the loan repayment. If that makes sense.
It seems like a lot of money without having something tangible to back it up.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Also, with half forgiveness of the loan, who, who loses, if I could ask?
Can't do it, anyway.
Huh? What?
The, yeah, the Harbor District is asking for, for basically forgiveness of half the loan, which would be, basically would become a grant. In the original grant that the county got from the EPA, 40% of that could be used for grants. The entire 40% has already been given away in grants.
So that's not an option?
That's not an option.
But the extension for 10 years is?
No.
No.
That's why we're recommending that the loan has to be payable in 2024 and that the full amount of the loan must be repaid.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson.
I mean, essentially, this is the financing, really.
Yep.
At an extremely good interest rate, considering where we're at. So I think it's, you know, from that perspective, the public is not having to pay an external or private interest loan for the acquisition of public property in the, in the long term. So it has a net public benefit, so I appreciate that part of this. I do, I believe in the, in the, in the loan that was just closed by the district, which was, Larry, help me out if you can, was, what was that called again? We, it was the? Yeah, the New Market Tax Credits actually did lean on, also, the potential for rent in the future, I think, is what, if my memory is correct. And the, and the district performed well on that, did it, and, and paid that off. So I would also say that this, this is still, would remain in public ownership. It's not, even in default, it's still public ownership, if that was, if that was to happen. So from that perspective, and not only public ownership, but ownership by the citizens of Humboldt County, because the district is in the same exact jurisdictional boundary as, as this agency is, and has all the same representation in terms of constituency. So in that sense, it's, it's still us in, in the ownership, no matter what happens. So what we're really asking is, from my perspective, is whether or not we believe that the district has the capacity in the long run to leverage this off, you know, leverage the, the acquisition in a way that will derive more income. Well, we're all working real hard on that right now. So I, I think if we are team players in whatever is, whatever we manifest on the peninsula, I think this is, it seems like, with, with the caveat, with all the, with the provisions that have been listed here, and you didn't list any others besides the A, B, C, and D, I, I think, I think this is, from my perspective, reasonable, unless there's other discussion around that. Is it a little unusual based on our experiences around private financing? For sure. But I think from a risk-reward perspective, I think it's pretty reasonable. And also, again, it's, we, as we've seen, the expansion of public facilities with relationship to ports has generally been a fairly net positive for communities, because ports is a transportation and economic development infrastructure from a, from a public perspective has been, well, so far, it's been, it's been pretty beneficial. So I support this in its current context, unless there's other discussion that changes my mind. Thanks.
Supervisor Bone.
And just, this is private property that we're buying, not public property we're buying, right? This is a private piece of property now owned by the Samoa Pacific Group that we want to take public, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so the improvements on the land will be taxed, but the land will come off the tax rolls. Is that correct?
The land may, the land, I believe the land will not be owned by the Harbor District itself, but will be owned by the holding company. And so I think the land and the improvements will be taxable.
Okay, and who's the holding company? I mean?
I should know that, but?
Have Mr. Ocker up to the podium to? Yes, Mr. Ocker, would you like to come up?
Well, be considered.
The land will, will be owned by the Harbor District.
Oh. So it'll be, so it'll be non-taxed, right? You don't pay, you don't pay property tax on your facilities out there now, right?
The property itself will not be taxable, but the leasehold interest will be.
Yes.
And so we have a lease with, or we're in the process of getting a lease with Crowley Wind Services, and there are several other leases that we have on the property, Hagfish and some other leases, and those are taxable.
So improvements, and I'm just, just because I've seen so many pictures now, the, the improvements, the, well, the crane, the high lift, all that's going to be owned by the harbor also, right?
Well, the crane and the dock, those are actually on the, the state tidelands that are held in trust by the Harbor District. And so all of the main dock and the vast majority of all of the improvements are going to be with, on the terminal itself. And then the upland portions, there's still going to be a significant amount of improvements to the upland portions as well. And I think there's cost estimates in the board packet that shows, the current estimates are about 750,000.
And then, so we have Nordic and the two leases, is that whose rents you're going to be forwarding to us to pay the, to, to pay this debt off?
We're, we're, that's not how assignment of rents work, but, so no.
No, they're going to pay you, you're going to pay the payment.
That's correct.
No, I understand, but it's, those are the three entities that you're going to be collecting, those rents are the ones you're going to, and then, and are you collecting rent from all three of those now?
We, we current, we're currently collecting revenue from all three sources.
Is there enough revenue being collected to service the debt?
I believe in the staff report, the packet says we're currently collecting about $1.75 million a year from those three sources.
Thanks.
Great. Got a couple of questions. One, 41 of the, so the houses are owned by Sierra, or Scotia Pacific Group? Samoa Pacific Group, thank you. And then, once they've been abated, they can be sold to private property owners on individual parcels? And those would be on the tax rolls for land and improvement?
So I, just to be super clear, the, the land in question is currently zoned coastal-dependent industrial, and is not associated with the houses with the lead. Completely separate parcel. The current agreement with EPA has a process by which the lead abatement process and work is reviewed by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The Regional Water Quality Control Board signs off on the abatement work, gives clearance to the county, and then the county gives clearance to remove the lien from the, the houses in, in Samoa. And at that point, title can transfer. So that's why there, there's a well-established process there that we would prefer to keep to ensure that that lead abatement is completed. It is a requirement of the IR for Samoa Pacific. I know this is all super complicated, try not to make it that much, but it, there is a requirement to remove that lead from those houses, and want to keep a process in place to do that.
And the houses that have been completed have been getting sold over time, and some of them even before abatement, is that correct?
No, we do not remove the lien from the house until the abatement is completed, until we get a sign off from the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
So 41 are completed?
Yes.
And they have been sold, or?
Yes.
They've been sold?
They've been transferred.
In many cases to the previous renter, but not always?
Yeah, I don't know what the numbers are.
That was the original, I, I know a lot of the renters were told that they would be able to buy their homes, but then the property values went through the roof, and the prices skyrocketed, which made it pretty hard for a lot of those low-income residents to actually buy their homes. That seemed like an issue, that was certainly a big issue for those renters, and that's still the case, although the market has cooled some, interest rates have risen, and some of them are probably not selling as quickly. How many, how lo, how much time did it take to abate the 41 houses?
That's really only been going on for about the last year and a half, I think, in, in terms of diligently working on that. The map needed to be recorded.
Okay.
And then that was done, and then the abatement work began.
And so there's 58 left to abate, and it's supposed to be done by the end of June 23, so in two months. That's obviously not going to happen. But we have the ability to extend that timeline for the lead abatement cleanup to how far out?
That?
I mean, if the whole loan's due in '24 anyway?
Right.
It suggests to me that's the drop dead deadline right there.
It wouldn't go beyond that.
And that's what, what month in, is that June?
March.
That's March of '24.
Correct.
So all the lead abatement has to be done in the next year, more houses that were done in a year and a half. When that's happening, do the residents get displaced?
No, I think it's done on the exterior of the house.
So it's exterior lead paint?
Yes.
Not interior? Okay, that's good to know, that people aren't being displaced. Those were my questions. Any other questions from the board?
So regardless if this transfer happens, there's still an amount that would be in question for the planning department to do that work, is that correct?
So the, yeah, we, obviously, the work of writing this report, doing this work, there's not a, a, a fee recovery format for that. And then I think we do get a little bit of administrative cost for the clearance of the houses as part of the loan. But if this was all forgiven, we would no longer get that.
And so in the staff report, it references to around $7,500?
That's just for this work.
Yeah, so, I mean, given our budget issues, and, you know, we've, we're asking departments to, you know, tighten up, I think, I don't know if we should not require someone to take care of that. It's not common in any loan process, when a loan is obtained, that you don't pay that fee. And, you know, I, I know that, talking with Director Ford, there are, you know, a lot of these add up to a lot of money when you can't recover them. So I, I would like to have that discussion and see how the board feels.
Yes, Supervisor Wilson.
I mean, I don't know how much this is, will be in total, but I do, I mean, I have to say, like, we partner with the district in cleanups, we partner, that, you know, it's not on their property that we work together on, there's lots of things that we partner on. So I don't want to, I don't want to get too in the weeds about, you know, our, you know, we're talking millions of dollars here, and if a few thousand dollars here or there is, is an issue, I want to, I just want to make sure that we, what do you think a total is going to be? Is it really $7,500? And if it is, for me, I, I'm not, I don't think it's a substantial value.
Thank you for the question, the opportunity to clarify this a little bit, is that with the board report template, we're asked to report what this action is going to cost. So that's simply what we have identified, is here's what it costs, there's not a, a cost recovery mechanism associated with doing this transfer. And so basically, it's a, it's a general fund cost to the department's budget. And that's, that's really what it's about. And there, I guess, really is, as Supervisor Bushnell brings up, and you're going to see these come in more and more from the Planning and Building Department in this context, is that not everything that we do is cost recovery. A lot of it is funded out of our budget by the general fund. And, and so it really does require the board to be aware that when we're doing these things, there is a cost there, and there is a cost against the budget. And, you know, at some point, you will want to give us direction on what you want us to do and not do, because everything we do costs money.
I think keeping track of it through the Chair, I think keeping track of it is reasonable. And we did just receive, I don't know, $800,000 and some odd thousand dollars with relationship to a grant from, for economic development around port development, specifically, I think, right? Can you, can you be specific?
Yeah, we received $151,000 and some change. That money is for the first phase of a three-phase process to, it, it, yeah, it's, it's highly centered around education and stakeholder mapping.
And, and my point isn't that that would be a source necessarily, my point is that we're partners, in significant, significantly. And so I just don't want to nickel and dime us in a way that strains that relationship. That's just my perspective on this. I think if it gets beyond, I, I think we'll know when it's, when it gets really uncomfortable. But for me, starting at $7,500 is not, is, is not significant. I think, well, let's keep track of that, that's just my, my opinion, but I'll hear the board.
Supervisor Bushnell and then Bone. Supervisor Bone.
And I agree with, we have been partners. We've given the harbor hundreds of thousands of dollars through the headwaters funds for dock improvements, Redwood Dock, I mean, quite a few improvements over the last 15 years, 12 years, 15 years? I was looking back. But I think you've had like four to six loans or grants, loans, to, so we've, it's not that we haven't partnered up, and I don't know where we cut off that, I don't know, $7,500 isn't a lot, but $10,000 is, or $12,000 is, I don't, I don't know, you know, $10,000 here, $10,000 there, what's $20,000? I don't know that. I think we're just covering our expenses because of the situation we're in. I don't think this means we're not being a partner in any way. I mean, it, the big partner is, is we're willing to transfer a $2.3 million loan with no, no collateral at all. And that's a, that's, I mean, and, and that's not to say this isn't going to happen, but we're, we're a couple of good lawsuits away from maybe none of this happening either. I mean, nobody can, unless somebody can guarantee me we're going to have the turbines up in 10 years, and we're going to be shipping salmon out of here in 10 years, I don't think anybody can make that guarantee. We can all hope and pray it's going to happen, and I think that's what we're all trying to do. So I think we're just trying to get answers. And this is going to benefit, you're right, this is going to benefit so many people in our community, but if it goes south, the benefit turns into a negative. And so that's what we have to look at. And I, 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 I'm tending to support this, because I think, I think the housing, I think the Samoa Pacific Group, as Supervisor Madrone said, they were selling these houses at one time for $240,000, and I think they're going higher than that, because that's what the market's done. So we've got to, you know, we, we have to weigh all that in, so. And all the houses that are out there now, going on the tax rolls, they're on the tax rolls now, too, also, so. But we'll probably get an increased tax roll is, as they come out individually. So I, I, I support this reluctantly, but if there's going to be costs, because we're going out on the limb already, I would like the cost to be borne by the person. And I'll ask Mr. Ocker again, are you having to borrow the $688,000? Or do you guys have that in your balance sheet? You're a public agency, so I just?
To be, to be clear, this property was supposed to close escrow on March 1st. We were prepared to deposit $680,000 on March 1st. We've had to spend $10,000 to do a 30-day extension of the escrow, because this has failed to come to the Board of Supervisors. A couple of days ago, we spent another $10,000 to, to do another 30-day extension. We only have 30 days left, that's it. And then this property is, is done.
But the $688,000 that you are putting down on, is that, is that coming out of your operating budget, or did you have to borrow that also?
We have $680,000 of cash that we, we have $50,000 in escrow that's deposited, we have $680,000 of cash that's sitting in escrow, or I'm sorry, that we're waiting to deposit. We have the cash on hand.
And that was cash on hand that the harbor had?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think here, we're missing the main point, but I'd be happy to discuss that when you conclude your deliberations.
I don't, I don't think we're missing the main point, but that's what we're talking about. Thank you. I, I, I understand what Supervisor Wilson's saying, and I'm supportive of this also. However, when we talk about nickel and diming departments to death, we send the director right back to figure out how he's going to nickel and dime his department and every other department, because we're not recovering the costs. And we can sit up here, and it's no, no offense to the harbor, but we can sit up here and say, go deal with it, and then they go back and try to figure it out. And so the cost of doing business costs everyone. And I don't think it should cost our departments when we already are saying, cut your budgets, hold a vacancy rate, no, don't do your travel, no, don't do this. I don't think it's right. And I know $7,500 is not a lot of money, but it is a lot of money to a department that has to try to figure out how to cut it. And if this, this board doesn't want to do this today, you know, when do we do it? Because those $7,500 add up to a Because those seventy-five hundred dollars add up to a million tomorrow. And I, I don't think we're being very responsible if we don't, if we don't address it, when we're telling everybody across the board, start cutting. And it's nothing against the harbor. Like, I'm supportive of this item as well. But there are born costs that come with doing business. And I don't know that the county should always, or departments should have to eat it.
Thank you. Now, as I understand it, the, the houses will get taken care of no matter what we do here today, but we're going to probably have to extend that agreement out to March of twenty-four, right? Because right now, it's June of twenty-three. So, that action would need to be taken just for that piece.
Yes, and that's something that we could do separately.
Yeah, I'm just saying that that has to be done no matter what decision we make on the other. I tend to agree with Supervisor Bushnell and Bone about the costs. I mean, it's seventy-five hundred dollars already, and it will be more as you complete the process of finalizing these negotiations and getting them into agreements, as were described in the staff report at great length. So, my estimate is going to be ten thousand, fifteen thousand by the time our staff are done with all the work that has to be done to fulfill these agreements. It is a small amount out of, you know, two-point-three million. I think it's less than one percent. But I know that when I come forward for a request for Mick Mack, who's working on economic development in McKinneyville for a town center and all kinds of other things that it desperately needs, suddenly, that seventy-five hundred dollars is a big amount, right, to ask for. So, none of this is small. It's all important, and I tend to agree that we ought to be trying to recover these costs. But I also want to be a good partner with the harbor district, because they and us are very heavily engaged in what could promise to be some really excellent economic development for our community, including really good-paying jobs, which we all desperately need. So, I fully understand that. But the fact that the harbor district wanted to extend the loan out ten years suggests to me that financially, it would be a whole lot better to have that extra time to do it. But EPA won't agree to that, so we're stuck with March of twenty-four to pay this back, which basically means all of those rents for two years, not completely, because one-point-seven is three-point-four, right? And we only need two-point-three plus whatever. So, those rents are happening now, even though Nordic doesn't have permits or other things aren't had. There's already these rents occurring because they have some control over the property, which they needed to, to be able to move forward. Is that, is that my, is my assumption correct there, that we do have some control over, over that under current development standards? So, even if Nordic didn't happen, or even if wind or whatever didn't happen, which I think is highly unlikely, but you never know, you've got the rents to be able to pay this back in two years. Is that correct? Or is that going to be a really tight scenario, given all the other liabilities?
The, these are based upon the current rents that we collect today.
Okay. And the three parties were Nordic?
Well, really, everything from the Samoa Bridge to the Pope Mill.
And what are the three entities, though? Nordic has a lease?
And we have approximately eighteen tenants in Redwood Marine Terminal Two.
Okay.
Plus another three or four in Redwood Marine Terminal One.
Okay. Okay, well, I.
I would imagine the Crowley rent.
Excuse me. I would tend to agree with support for this project, but I would like to see our costs to be recovered. So, Supervisor Bone?
Just going to say, I imagine the rents are going to escalate once they actually start doing something on the land now. So, I, that's, yeah. So, I mean, the, the basis is there. So, I would make a motion to do staff's recommendation. The caveat to staff's recommendation, I don't actually see it in here. I would like to see that the county still oversees the clearing of the abatements, because we've been doing, we have somebody on staff doing that now, right, John?
Yeah, that actually is covered in item A.
It is?
In the motion, yep.
We maintain that control.
Okay, all right, that's what I asked. So, okay, I'll think, I will do staff's recommendation then, with all fees to be covered by the harbor.
Second. Got it? Okay, Mike's got the second.
So, we have a motion by Bone and a second by Wilson. So, we'll go to public comment at this point, and we got three hands up in Zoom, the most we've had all day. So, we've got seven, four, five, four? Before we do this, I have a clarifying question from Supervisor Wilson. Hang on.
And, and I think, and I'm just clarifying the motion with relationship to what was referred to as fees. And I think what, what you're saying is not fees, but the, but the cost, the staff cost associated with, with the staff cost to prepare this report and execute a new loan agreement are expected to total seventy-five hundred dollars. Is that correct? Or is there? Yeah.
I want staff costs covered. Their estimate is seventy-five hundred dollars. I want staff costs covered.
I understand that, but that doesn't, it's not fees.
The seventy-five hundred dollars was for this report, right?
So, the way I understand the motion is that it is to cover the cost of staff time to finish this transaction.
So, seventy-five hundred is the estimate to complete the process?
Seventy-five hundred is to date.
To date, and so, it will cost more to complete the process. So, I think, just to clarify, Supervisor Bone, are you?
Yes.
You're saying full cost recovery on these costs?
Ten-four.
Okay. So, we've got clarification on that. Any other clarifying questions? We're going to go out to public comment. Seven, four, five, four, your chance to comment. Seven, four, five, there you go. No? Oh, that disappeared. Okay, we'll pick you up back on five-two-eight-eight probably, but we're going to go to four-two-four-three. Four-two-four-three, this is your opportunity to comment. Star six to unmute. Everybody's watching us on the video. Four-two-four-three, press star six to unmute. Last chance, four-two-four-three. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
All right, sorry, sorry, sorry. My first time calling here.
No worries.
I appreciate the patience. And I, and I kind of missed it right at the beginning, but I'm just calling to, or calling to double-check that SPG, the Hawaii Pacific Group, would still be the ones on the hook and liable for doing all the abatement. What's your?
Okay, that's your question?
Oh, I guess that's like my question, yeah, that's my question, and I guess the comment to go with that is, because I know, I'm a homeowner out here, and at the beginning of all this, they really tried to push and bully and, and not do the abatement. And so, I, one, one thing, and I know, I know the harbor district needs this, and, you know, that's another thing, but the first thing that steps up, or that strikes me is that maybe it's a way of them, like, as, as this next, you know, you have, you have made a side agreement to keep them on the hook, that they're going to try to somehow get out of it, or, or not be liable to do it.
Great, thank you, caller. And I'll have Director Ford respond to that at the end of comments.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have five-two-eight-eight. Five-two-eight-eight. There you, there you go.
Okay, well, that was an uphill battle, two phones and juggling them all in the air. Yeah, I, I would like to reiterate what the last public speaker said, that is a great worry. I know it has been. I know people finally gave up and did not buy their houses because they were basically, well, they would promise something, and then when the rates went up, they, somebody reneged on their promise. My question for you, maybe to ask to John, how long has this, have they had to do this abatement? In other words, when was the, the money set aside that they could have moved forward on? And, and it's, I think it's been way more than a year. I think, what is this, a three- or four-year-old process? I just, I just find it, you know, I want the county to get what they want. Have no problem working with the, with the harbor district. You may wish to ask Mr. Otter if the harbor district budget includes those rents, which I believe it does. So, I don't know whether they're going to get their other source of income from this. As he stated, Mr. Crowley or the Crowley Company have not signed their lease. And there's a vast, maybe Nordic's paid a little bit, but my understanding is they may not be moving forward. I'm really not optimistic. I really appreciate the fact this will all be taken care of by, by basically, I guess you said, March of twenty-four. The work, cleanup work, as far as the, the abatement should have been done at least a year or two ago, in many people's opinion, wasn't done. But I don't feel sorry. I know you want to work with the harbor district, but they always ask you, this is a two-way street. What has, what has the harbor district done for you lately? Have they enabled you to get some bunch of money and, and asked to have some of it forgiven, or you asked for have it forgiven? It seems to be a two-way street. And of course, I knew where Supervisor Wilson was going to weigh in. This would really appreciate the EPA holding close to the contract. That's how it should be. And I'm, I'm not sure that this is actually in the taxpayer's best interest to do what you're doing there. Sounds like you've got enough votes to move forward, although possibly begrudgingly. And I always, I always have a problem with people coming, we're going to lose this in thirty days, and, you know, this kind of stuff should have been taken six months ago, as far as a backup on the situation. Seems to be an ongoing thing out there on the peninsula, where we get, we're going to lose our housing project, we're going to lose our money, we're going to lose this. But that gets to be a little irritating as far as lack of professional handling of financing. They come up to you and speak.
Thank you, commenter. And that's it in the, no, let's see, we've got six-three-seven-three showed up, yes? That's new. So, six-three-seven-three, this is your chance to comment. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Thank you. This is Stephen Coleman. I'm a harbor commissioner for the Third Division, and I wanted to thank you for taking up this item and consideration of it, and just wanted to take the opportunity to remind all of us what an important project this is, not just for the harbor district, but for the county as a whole, for the jobs that it'll bring in, for the tax revenue that it'll bring in, and just the moving forward renewable clean energy in our area. And so, there's going to be a lot of items like this that continue to happen in the development of this project. This seems to be like a really small piece of the puzzle for putting this together. And so, I know there's a strong will for the county and the district to work together, hand in hand, to promote this. And so, I just really want to encourage the board to find ways to cooperate and not put up unnecessary barriers. The property in question does not have any of the houses that would need lead abatement, and so, it doesn't make as much sense to me why any lien would remain on that property. And just want to thank you for your work on this and that, you know, we really need to work on this together. The harbor district is a very small district, and doing something that's really going to have an extraordinary benefit to the entire county. And so, considering that everything that we're trying to do here is only for our benefit, and we need to pay for it, is a little unrealistic. And so, appreciate your foresight in finding ways to help smooth the path forward for these things. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And that's it in the Zoom, it appears. So, we'll go to the audience here today. Would anybody like to come up and make a three-minute comment? Welcome.
Thank you. And again, I think, as Commissioner Coleman, my board member had stated, is that we really appreciate the board's help over the years. It's been tremendous. There's no question about it. We're, we're a small organization, and we have giant goals. And I apologize if I said something wrong earlier. I didn't mean to offend anyone. The, the point I was trying to make is, is that we're in a contractual obligation to close escrow. We entered escrow, I'm sorry, yeah, we entered escrow in May of twenty-twenty-two, approximately ten months ago. And we met with the county almost immediately after that, and we said, we have to close escrow by March first, and we need to complete this transaction well in advance of that timeframe. As Kent Swaski said, is, six months is plenty of time. We should have had our act together a long time ago. Why we're here now, ten months ago, trying to do this is beyond me. And, but we're here today, and that's, that really is the point. We, there's a condition, condition two A I in your staff report, that, that basically says that you're going to put this, there has to be an agreement in place in dealing with the lead-based abatement homes, as Commissioner Ford said, that, that cannot be achieved within the time periods that we need to close escrow. That's the point I was trying to make. We're missing this larger point. There's a condition that staff knows is in their recommendation, and it's be, well, not even close to being within the timeframes that we need to close escrow. And so, the way this, this condition is drafted is just not attainable, and we, we can't accept the, the money, period. Secondarily, is the, we need the county to remove this deed restriction from the property. At this point, this has gone on so, so long that we're going to have to seek alternative financing for this. And we're going to have to do it in record pace. Because this has just taken so long to get to this point, the harbor district is going to go out and get a loan. It's going to have to be at a higher interest rate than we normally would on the open market. And we're going to pay a lot more money on the open market, because, as Kent said, we should have given up on this process six, nine months ago. But we were repeatedly told that they were going to come to the board, and we were going to get this to conclusion. And so, we're at a point today, this is today, that the offshore wind deal is really close to being dead because of this transaction that's before you today. And the reason for that is because we have a contractual obligation to close escrow by the end of the month. We have to get three million dollars to close escrow. If we don't have three million dollars, the deal falls out of escrow. It falls out of escrow. You know, Dan Johnson from Samoa Group, in the last couple of days, has, has posed the question to staff, if we walked into the county with two and a half million dollars tomorrow, would you remove the lien from the property? We're yet to get a response from that. We have to have the county remove the lien from the property so we can go get private financing and close this transaction. This is a simple real estate transaction, and it has been a simple real estate transaction for a long time. We have to remove the item from the title in order to close escrow on this property. And the harbor district is, at this point, we're, we're going to have to go get private financing and to close this deal, and we expect to close escrow no later than, at this point, May thirtieth. And the plan is, at this point, is to get bids for the financing, go to my board on April twenty-seventh, and then go to our board meeting on May eleventh, and ask the board to approve rapid financing for this project. This is an important project for our region, and that's what the harbor district will do in order to complete this, this project. We met with Congressman Huffman this afternoon. That's why I couldn't be here this morning for your meeting, talking about this project, and talking about the ways the federal, state, our partners, and the county is an integral part of this, this process. They're, they've been our partner. This particular loan is, has, has failed to this point. We're looking for a way to salvage this operation so that the harbor district can get private financing and close escrow on this transaction. It's just not feasible that we had a deal, that we laid out the terms for the last ten months, that were ten years, fifty percent, and then the staff report shows up on Friday afternoon, was, which was the first time that the harbor district had seen that particular condition, that we, we had one year to pay off the loan. For the last ten months, we've been working under this assumption. And then on Friday, we received the staff recommendation that said, come up with, you have one year to come up with two-point-three million dollars. And again, we're fully prepared to do that. We cannot do this with the conditions of approval that are outlined in the, in the staff report. We believe there are workable solutions to this. First and foremost, we have to get the county to remove condition two A from the staff report. Secondarily, what we would recommend, and whether we pay all the fees or whatever, those, as Commissioner Coleman said, whatever, we don't care. We need to close this transaction. And what our preferred recommendation would be to direct staff to remove condition two A, and then direct staff to finalize the loan assumption agreements by April thirtieth. We have to close escrow. This has to happen now. We can't wait. We've been asking for this since at least August of twenty-twenty-two to come before the board. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I absolutely appreciate the chair giving me extra time to deliberate. I truly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Well, I don't see it as public comment. I mean, you're a partner here with an application, and we're all trying to work together on this. But very alarming, what you're saying, basically, what's in front of us that we're considering approving or not, doesn't work for you, is what I'm hearing. we're considering approving or not, um, doesn't work for you is what I'm hearing. Um, and, I mean, that's why you're asking for the 10 years, but a lot of this, we're constrained by EPA. I think you understand that. And we also need to make sure that we have assurances for this money. Uh, we need assurances with Samoa Pacific Group that through a, a new memorialized agreement, which responds to the earlier speaker's comment, that protects the county and makes sure that work gets done by them, that has to be in there. Um, and we have to pay this loan back by March of 24. So what is it that you're wanting us to do sounds, we're not able to do? I mean, I, I'm not sure where we're at with this. I'm actually a bit confused at this point.
Through the chair. I was, I was wondering, um, before Larry speaks again, I was wondering if John could just address, uh, because there was lots of things in there that you said, so I was hoping that, uh, Director could address those.
Let's do that. Let's do that. Director Ford, please.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, address Mr. Ottkar's comments. So this has been a process that's been going on for some time. And the original understanding is that the property would be the surety for this. Then we were given an agreement that showed that there would be an assignment of rents, and that was completely different from what had been discussed previously. And, and so there was discussion, uh, with the Harbor District, with the attorneys, about how that would work, whether or not that was really reasonable, how that could even be structured. And, and so that's why we've gotten to a point where you don't have a complete agreement. You've got pieces of different asks and pieces of an agreement because it's never been completely put together, ready to be signed, because there hasn't been agreement on how to go about getting it done. It's not like we've been sitting on this for 10 months. Frankly, knowing the urgency of this is why we brought it back, brought it forward in a conceptual form for you, the board, to give us direction on to take and finalize it. Um, and, uh, actually taking a bit of a risk, asking for you to trust us is to do, carry out the direction of the board and then sign the agreement so it didn't need to come back to you. The second part, I think Chair Madron, you had it correct. We're not asking for all of the Samoa Pacific Group, um, abatement to be done by June 30th of 2023. We're recognizing that the current agreement says it needs to be done by June of 2023, and that, and a separate agreement needs to be entered into identifying how that's going to be completed, how the houses are going to be cleared, to make sure that the lead is abated out of each one of those homes and the spirit of the current agreement is carried forward. The intent here, and if it's not clear, I apologize, is to remove the lien from those homes. I mean, the lien is no longer on those homes because Samoa Pacific Group would no longer be responsible for the liens.
Once the abatement's complete?
No, once this agreement's done.
Okay.
With this agreement, Samoa Pacific is no longer, the money's not tied to them anymore, so the liens aren't on the homes. But they still have responsibility to complete the abatement. And so that becomes a separate process apart from this agreement to reassign this loan. And, and that's what A is. It's not that we're requiring them to get it done in an unreasonable amount of time and that we're not going to lift the lien. That's not it at all. It is, we need a separate process, a separate agreement with SPG to make sure that the lead is abated. It's that simple. When that's done by, that's all negotiable.
But once this new memorialized agreement is in place, the liens can be removed?
Correct.
And so what are the guarantees that the work gets done, then?
That is going to, that's the art of the agreement.
Right. It would have to have something in that agreement, and you're suggesting it wouldn't be a lien.
Well, it's not going to be a lien tied to this loan because we're taking and reassigning this loan to the Harbor District. So it, it, it can't have those fingers going back and forth.
At any rate, you're confident that in this new memorialized agreement that you and staff can work up assurances to make sure that, that work gets done?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Wilson, and then Supervisor Bushnell?
We did, and there was a sequel document associated with this work to be done. Wasn't this a condition of a sequel document that this cleanup would be done?
It is a mitigation measure in the EIR. That is absolutely correct. So it's really how that mitigation gets carried out.
I'm just saying, so we have a hook, a legal hook to make that happen?
Yes.
It's not like it's can't, I mean, we...
It's not something we're pulling out of the air. It's something we're carrying forward.
Yeah. So, I mean, yeah, well, this is it. I mean, so, um, okay. I mean, we have a legal hook to make that happen, and we can litigate associated with that. Matter of fact, not just us, but any environmental group can litigate to get that done if it needs to get done outside this process. Okay. Thank you for helping me clarify that. Um, but on the, what we're talking about in this moment, I want to turn it back to Mr. Ottkar. Does, I'm, I'm still unclear where you guys are differentiating now. Like, where is that? Where's the cleave occurring here?
Well, the, in, in the first place is the, there is no relationship between the, the county's, um, mitigation measure, condition, and requirement to clean up all the 99 homes in this Brownfield loan. There is no nexus between those two at all. These are two totally separate agreements. When the county got the Brownfield loan, it wasn't, hey, you're doing this to satisfy the, uh, the EPA loan, but I don't want to go into that. I'm not here to represent the, the town of Samoa. Um, the, but, I mean, our research on this, the, a couple of the, the core questions really is, you know, the, the, if Dan came in tomorrow, or the town of Samoa came in tomorrow and paid off this loan, then they would remove that, uh, that collateral from there. This house doesn't have any lead paint on it. There are no houses on there. Um, the Director Ford already said that as houses are abated, they remove the lien on those and allow those transactions to take place. I don't understand what the difference is between this property and the other ones that they've already released those liens on.
So through the chair, in my line of inquiry here, that, so what you're saying is the property, the separate piece of property right now, you're saying is clean, doesn't have lead, so why would it have a lien on it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it was the reason, I mean, to a certain extent, you have to think, the town of Samoa was pretty much, I think there were two or three parcels, uh, when they took the original lien. And so what happened is they placed a lien on the property that went on every, the whole thing, and then the subdivision happened, and it scattered through every parcel that was within the subdivision. That's how this parcel got caught up in that collateral thing. It wasn't even a parcel when the, to my knowledge, it wasn't even a parcel when the original, uh, loans were approved, because the subdivision hadn't occurred.
Okay. Uh, we got to figure this out.
Supervisor Bushnell?
If I...
Director Ford, and then come back to you.
I, I think this can be figured out. Um, and I, I, I think it's becoming more complicated than it needs to be at this point. I think that one of the things, uh, Mr. Ottkar and I completely agree on is that there can be two separate processes here. One is the loan transfer, one is implementing the lead abatement. The fundamental requirement for the lead abatement still comes down to the EIR. I'm not clear on what happened with the mitigation monitoring reporting. It seemed like that was carried through as part of this loan, and that's why we're tying it together, because the loan does require that 99 homes be abated. The Harbor District is getting this loan without the requirement to do any additional abatement. So the original purpose of the loan should be fulfilled someplace. We're divorcing the two into two separate agreements to, for ease of implementation, but that abatement still should be completed, and then the, the loan, whatever's going to happen with that can, can, can be transferred, can be paid off, and then follow the normal course on that. That's what we're trying to get to. Um, we think that that's the easiest and most simple way to implement this.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Mike, do you want to?
I just, thank you. I just want clarifying language that gets us to some form of yes today. That's what I'm trying to get to. That does the job that the district needs to do, that protects us in the way that we think is reasonable, whatever that is, that's where I want to get.
So in the, in this, thank you. And through, in this motion, Director Ford, doesn't this give you authority to work those details out with the harbor?
Yes.
And so that accomplishes what needs to be done, and, um, can you come back up, please? So are you, are you, are you still thinking that this isn't going to happen with direction, with the motion that Director Ford and you work out those details to remove what, the, the obstacles to get you to the final point, because you are in escrow? And correct me if I'm wrong, Director Ford, but I think this motion covers that.
I, I, that's what it was written to accomplish.
Okay.
Is, well, I guess the question is, is he going to get this done by, uh, April 30th? Is the...
Well, I, I think that, um, I mean, I'm going to let him speak, but however, what he said, Larry, is that there were obstacles on both sides that prevented that, and I think we all need to recognize that and not lay blame. And I think Director Ford's committed to get it done before April 30th.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and so our core, uh, because at, at this point, our plan is to get private financing for this, uh, because, you know, in the, in essence, it's one year to pay back $2.2 million, you know? And like you said, dedicating all of our rents for essentially two years, that's just poor management. We have other operations to do. It's not even wise decision to do that. Um, and so we may need a little bit of time in order to, uh, to get the financing, but at this point, our plan is, just as I said, um, we contacted our loan underwriting, and uh, we're planning to have proposals on April 27th, and, uh, hopefully have our financing in place, uh, by, uh, May 11th, and then we will pay, the Harbor District will pay another $10,000, um, in order to have a, the last and final 30-day escrow. We, we have no more extensions. This is a real estate transaction, 30 days, May 30th, drop dead. If we do not close escrow by May 30th, the deal is dead. That's just the way it works. It doesn't matter. And so our recommendation is to remove condition 2A I from that. Director Ford can still work on everything that he wants to do, um, and what that does is that just removes that, that requirement from this, uh, this condition.
I'm sorry, can you read 2A? I don't have it up in my agenda.
That's the home abatement. So how does that affect your...
Yeah, it doesn't, it...
I don't understand how the two are tied together.
Can, can I make sure that we're...
Because we're trying to separate them.
Through the chair, if I can clarify. I want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. We're talking about the, the term Samoa Pacific Group remains responsible for the lead abatement in the historic homes in Samoa. This shall be memorialized in a separate agreement. The process of clearing the homes in Samoa for lead abatement be continued prior to transfer of the property to the new owner. The current agreement requires this work to be completed by June of 2023. This is the language that you're, is there...
Yeah, that's second to the last sentence. That's second to the last sentence. The process of clearing the homes in the Samoa for lead be, be continued prior to the transfer of the, the lead.
And this document gives Director Ford, if not, and I think he explained that earlier, our motion gives him the option to, and he said, he is going to, it's going to have, go ahead.
So to be clear, what this says is that there are references in the existing proposed Harbor District agreement that give entitlements to the Samoa Pacific Group. That needs to be modified. They're still responsible for completing the lead abatement. That, the provisions in there that strike their responsibility, and that need to be taken out. Okay? So when that's done, and these other provisions are done, B and C, and D, relative to the Harbor District, then the Harbor District's agreement is fulfilled. Then separately, we're going to work with SPG to deal with their issue under a separate agreement.
Yeah. I guess what I'm concerned with is, is that, because the, the chances of us assuming this loan are next to zero. Um, I just want this, uh, to be removed from title. We, we just need, the, there's, the county has a lien on title. We need to get the lien removed, because when we come forward with $2,380,000 of our own cash that we borrowed, we need to have it free and clear of a lien. It's just like you buy a house. You're in escrow, you're buying a house. The person you're buying the house from says, I'm not going to release my existing mortgage. You have to buy my house with my old mortgage on the title. You cannot do that. This is the core, core problem with this whole transaction.
But, but that's what happens when you owe money on a piece of property. It isn't often that you even get the consideration to do this. I hope you understand that. I mean, you, you don't go, you don't buy a home that has a $2.4 million loan and say, I don't want, want it in the conditions that go along with that money. That's never an option.
Yeah, the town, uh, I mean, the, there's...
If you're assuming the loan.
There's, well, I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm, we're, the chances of us assuming this loan are slim to, to none. We're going to get private financing and close escrow on the property without the county's money at all. We're past that point. I mean, we've, we've been past that point.
So you're saying that you're going to borrow the money, pay this loan off?
No, we're not paying off the loan. We are paying DANCO. They can choose to do what they want with the, the funds. We would like the option to be able to, you know, to keep the loan just in case something falls through, but at this point, um, you know, as of last Friday, when the staff report came out with these conditions, which was the first time we saw them, um, in particular, condition 2A, then, um, we, we just have to close escrow.
So, so what is, so what is the county's surety? Because you're saying that you, you think there's zero risk, that, that you think DANCO's going to pay that prior to transfer, right? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm, oh, in the first place, I'm on, um, several, I've done hundreds of loans. I'm on AEDC's Loan Advisory Committee. The assignment of rent is just a standard practice. I checked with AEDC, um, REDEC, they do them regularly. John Ford sent an email to county staff and asked them if they've done loan with headwaters fund with assignment of rent. They reported back and said, yes, the county has given loans with assignments of rent. Um, the County Board of Supervisors passed a resolution that said, under this program, government and nonprofits are eligible for grant funds. These, these are just the normal things that are part of your, your process. Um, and then to specifically address your, your question is, we're talking about the entire town of Samoa that they have. There is, you've got way over collateralized. Your loan is way over collateralized with all of the parcels that are on the town of Samoa. If you remove this one individual parcel as collateral, you still have probably 90 or 100 other parcels that you have this exact same...
So who, Larry, who would you think would be on the hook for this money, then? If you could, if I could just ask specifically?
Well, the town of Samoa would still be on the hook. They would still be on the hook.
So I want to try and reel this in a little bit. I think we're all kind of confused, frankly. I know I am, um, because I keep hearing you saying that you're not even, you don't even want to do this loan anymore. It doesn't work for you, and I, as I understand it, that's because it would have to be paid off by March of 24, and that's just not doable for you, without just basically allocating all those rents to it, which leaves you no money for other operating costs and that kind of thing. So I heard that really clearly. So, I mean, what are we doing here? It seems to me that this has been kind of a futile discussion, if that's where you're at on this. Uh, we could have just started there perhaps, but, so Director Ford, can you respond to where we're at on this at this point, and what's our movement forward? Thank you, Larry.
So the, the board has a couple of, of choices. Uh, you can, um, continue with the motion that's been on the table to accept the recommendation that staff put forward. And then if the Harbor District chooses not to engage in, uh, modification of the agreement that they've put forward to get it into a format that the county council will accept, and the provisions that the board has approved, then, um, it, it won't go forward. Or the, or, and if they do, then they can assume the loan. Uh, or the board can, um, choose today to just say, no, we, we don't want to do this, and all that takes is to rescind the existing motion and to make a new motion and to, to reject the idea, and, and we can be done.
Okay. I want to suggest that we take a five to 10-minute break, uh, for the parties to convene and have a quick discussion, come back here to the board and see if this motion is going to stand and move forward, or if we're going to do something different. So we're going to take a short recess. It's 3:30. We'll be back here at 3:40 to see if we can move forward on a decision.
Can somebody take care of the band out? It's the door and sort. Do you guys...
Very quick, um, and I would just like to ask that we please maintain decorum and go through the chair if we can and not break down into multiple people speaking... if we can and not break down into multiple people speaking all at once if we could. So with that, with that, Mr. Ock.
I wanted to thank the chair for the recess. I wanted to thank the chair for the resource, recess, and I really appreciate the opportunity to work with county staff. And I think we've come to a resolution and, you know, we're, we, I think we can, we can work on this and, and continue our long partnership that we've had together. Really appreciate everything the board and staff does for the Harvard District. And I'm sure we're going to have a long and continued working relationship together. So I really appreciate the opportunity that you've taken today. I know you had a completely full schedule. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Director Ford, would you like to explain what the arrangement is?
I think the board can move ahead with the recommendation or the motion that's on the table. And the Harvard District and the county staff will work this out.
Okay. It's that simple. Well, that's, I think, what we were looking for. Boy, five minutes, that's all it took? We should have done that an hour ago. Okay, with that, I believe I already did take public comment on this item. So we'll ask for us to go to our voting tabs. If Brooke is able, yep, she's already got them up. Look at that.
I don't know if it's happening.
What? Okay. Let's just do a roll call. Seems how time is becoming part of the essence here. So.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes. Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
I, I need, there was one comment that's tangential to this.
Okay, so it passed 4-0 and.
I wanted to make, which was related to the prices of the housing. A lot of those houses are being sold out there as short-term rentals. Pricing is often predicated on the ability of property to generate income. And we're seeing it impact the housing prices in our community. And we don't have a short-term rental ordinance to help mitigate for that. So part of that, I'm just saying, we need to, we need to digest as an institute, as this institution and, and deal with it as soon as possible. Thanks.
Appreciate that point from Supervisor Wilson. I mean, initially, these were going to sell to the low-income residents who had lived there for 10, 20, 30 years. The market went up and suddenly the value went way, way up beyond their means. And now they're being turned, some of them into short-term rentals. So we're losing housing for low income. It's a sad, sad statement in terms of how that unraveled. But that's what happens when you don't have really good written agreements that are very clear that both parties are agreeing to tend to. So thank you for that. And I guess we're done with that item. Appreciate everybody's time on that. Thank you for your work at the Harbor Commission.
Thank you, Larry, for coming over.
Thank you.
Harbor.
Thanks, Mitch Mauder.
He heard that. All right, we have one item left on the agenda. We should be able to finish this by five. All right, take it away, Director Ford.
Thank you, Chair. Madron, good afternoon, members of the board, John Ford and Karen Medel. Presenting two different code enforcement-related actions or requests. First is approval of proposed administrative civil penalty assessments on property owners or properties who are in violation of the Humboldt County codes related to commercial cannabis land use. And these are all property owners who have largely been unresponsive. There has been one property owner who has been in contact with the department this week. And if they provide sufficient evidence or the needed evidence, essentially consisting of pictures of, that the site's been cleaned up, we will not impose the lien. The board has approved other similar liens and similar situations in the past. In fact, there are, I believe it was 20, that have been previously opposed for $900,000. There has been one for $157,000. So the nine today would be a total of 30 liens. There have been concerns expressed that the county is imposing these liens and then leaving them recorded on the property to be dealt with when the property sold. And so one of the things that the county code allows the county to do is to, if nothing's being done, to initiate foreclosure proceedings on these properties. It's not been the practice of the staff to pursue foreclosure on property and for two primary reasons. One is that we've not wanted to have the threat to homeowners out there that the county is interested in taking their property because the county is absolutely not interested in taking their property. Code enforcement is absolutely not interested in taking people's property. And also, the county really has not wanted to be a, a property manager or a property owner for properties that are in the abatement process. So the status quo would be to impose these liens and wait until the properties are sold and then receive whatever equity is available towards payment of the lien when the property sells. This leaves the properties in the state that they're not being cleaned up. And it really creates an environmental liability because they're not being cleaned up and it leaves future property owners who may be unaware of the circumstances in a situation where they may inherit something that they don't really want to have. The other all, option that's available to the county is pursue foreclosure, which would then put the county in a position of foreclosing on the property, taking possession of the property, cleaning the properties up, and then selling the property. This is actually written into the county code. This is not a change that's needed, but prior to initiating this process, frankly, I thought it would be good to have this discussion with the board before going about beginning to foreclose on property. And I want to be clear, this would not apply to only the nine assessments on the agenda today, but it would also apply to those 21 previous assessments that have already had a lien placed on them. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director Ford. And Karen, you're here to back up, have any questions, that kind of thing?
Supporting role, yes.
Yeah, great, thank you. I will say that a couple of things I was looking at when I was looking at this list of properties was how big's the parcel? That's not there. And what's the appraised value of them? Which is hard to say. I mean, what's, I guess all we know is what the current tax assessed value is on the property. And we could see when did the property turn over, you know, and that could give us some sense of the value, but not really. Anyway, I was just thinking about those things because if, you know, keeping the lien on there until it sells versus foreclosing, if we foreclose off and then things end up going to auction after we clean them up or whatever, it's a, it's a lot of responsibility. And at auction, things don't sell so much at market value typically, right? So, I mean, we're never going to get the $900,000 on some, on a 48 per parcel, for instance, and things like that. So there's some, and I was just trying to think through my head, what is the best way to get these properties into responsible hands at an appropriate value? You know? And that may be less than the $900,000? And is there a way for us to, to be able to arrange those kinds of things?
Yeah, I, I don't think our thought is ever to, that we would get more than the property's worth. And many of these properties won't be worth $900,000. We recognize that. The fines and penalties are, and this has been said before, are a tool in order to encourage compliance. And obviously, decisions have been made by property owners not to pursue compliance. And, and so we're now on a different path. And, and the path that the code describes for us is to then foreclose on the property. And then we would want to clean it up and then recoup the cost. Really, what we would be looking to do primarily is recoup the cost of the property for the foreclosure proceedings, the cost of the cleanup, the cost it would cost us to put it together to sell it. And, and then if there's any equity beyond that, the county's not in this to make money.
No, I understand that. But at the same time, the irresponsible landowner shouldn't be in a position to necessarily make money, being completely unresponsive, you know, and all that. I mean, imagining a process whereby a potential buyer puts forth an offer that gets into escrow, or even before it gets into escrow, there's a conversation with the county that here's the amount of administrative fees, here's the cost of cleanup, or you're going to agree to the cleanup, and here's the details of the cleanup. And then whatever else is left beyond that, should that go to the previous irresponsible landowner? Or should it end up accruing to, to the county for all the efforts we're putting in? I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just.
Well, I think at that point, it accrues to the county. And once the county takes possession of the property, it doesn't go back to the property owner.
Right. But in order to close escrow, say we had $900,000 lien on it, which these all do here today, but the property is only worth, say, 400, 5, say 500,000 in today's market, and they pay off the fees to us in these different parts or whatever, and then up to $500,000 worth of our lien, it would be less than that minus those costs. But a certain amount would come to us to pay off our lien. But then there'd still be a, a remaining lien on the property, which suggests it probably would never sell. Who's going to buy it with this massive lien on it, right?
So I, I think one of the things I need to be really clear of, and, and I probably haven't done a good enough job of explaining this, is that this really is a new and different process where the county would actually take title of the property.
Right.
This isn't a tax sale. This is taking title. This is foreclosing on the property.
If we chose that route, right?
If we chose that route. And, and then the county would not, it could auction them off as surplus property, but could also just sell them. And then sell it at market, whatever the market value is. And at that point, the lien becomes irrelevant. It's really about recouping cost. Recouping the cost of the cleanup, recouping the cost of foreclosing, recouping the cost of preparing the property for sale.
And perhaps recouping the cost of a current appraisal.
Correct.
So that we both know what the value is and the, the buyer would pay that cost. That, that's a route forward. I have Supervisor Wilson, Bushnell, and then Bone in the queue. Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks. I mean, there's one big assumption here is that the cost of cleanup isn't more than the value of the property. And we keep talking about it as if. We're in, you know, I think a lot of these properties are probably in a, in a downward trend in terms of value. They are probably not able, you know, their original value was predicated on an assumption of its ability to generate income, which doesn't exist. And now has significant modifications, illegal modifications to the property that have a significant capital cost to, to remedy. I would imagine that some of these are probably, those costs are probably, could be more than the property values themselves, which will be right now on us. I think part of this discussion, and maybe it's not happening today, but we should really be seeking a, a funding mechanism through the state to look at mitigation support for restoration of these properties and possibly reintegrating them into larger land ownership models if they can't sustain or if there isn't a buyer that is, you know, that wants to take these things on. I just, we're, we just have to be realistic about this. And we're making, still making assumptions on a, on a economic model that may not exist.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, through the chair. So currently, I, you can look these properties up, and I did. And they're in different varying amounts of acreage and so forth and so on. And Supervisor Wilson's correct that many of them, it's going to exceed the amount of the cleanup, the value. My question is, and we, the, the county's not out $900,000 on a lien.
No, I know.
So that is something that, that can be forgiven. And if property owners want to keep their properties, they need to call the planning department and we'll work with them, correct?
Thank you for saying that. That's absolutely correct.
Yes. So that would be ideal in anybody's book, that you'd take responsibility for your own thing and get yourself, your property cleaned up. Many of these have homes on them when I was looking at them. My question is, though, along with, there were sheriff department busts on many of these properties, as well as fish and wildlife attended and code, code enforcement. So what happens with the, with the water quality and fish and wildlife stuff that is happening on these properties currently? Are we going to take that on?
We'd have to look at that selectively. And we are looking at other sources of, of grant funding. The one that we thought was most viable had some strings attached to it that probably would not be conducive to being able to get a, either a property owner to agree or perhaps even to sell the property because the source of the funding was looking to have access to the, unrestricted access to the property for a period of 10 years. And, you know, not a lot of property owners are going to give up access rights to have a governmental agency come onto the property anytime they want.
So either Karen or John, can you, can you answer? I looked at one, and so I know that there is a fish and wildlife lien or fine, not a lien currently, but a fine. There's fines accruing and violations. Do you, how would you anticipate if we foreclosed on these properties, that we deal with those fines and penalties from the state? Would we then, the county, be liable for those?
Well, I think before taking possession of the property, that's a question that we would definitely want to answer because we're, we don't want to take on a large criminal fine liability with the state. I don't know how the state would respond, but I would hope that if they recognized the county was taking on the property to clean it up and to abate the nuisances that are there, that they would not want to go after the county for any kind of fines and penalties.
Okay, thank you for that. My last question would be, and it's a question, so I don't, I, I'm not, it's just a question. When is the last time that we tried to contact or interact with the property owners regarding these issues on these properties?
I don't, I'm not sure if you're asking like for every single one of these parcels, but in the staff report, there is a table of most recent actions. And you can see when we sent our, we call it the over 90-day warning letter, letting the property owner know that there's still an issue on the property and it's unresolved. Some of the, most of these cases were started in 2018, 2019. So that letter went out in 2019, 2020-ish. And so it's been probably that long before we.
So three years since we've.
Sent the warning letter. And then, since then, we have issued the notice of this assessment that we're bringing before your board today. And those were done in the middle of 2021 in most of these cases.
Were those sent out certified?
Yes.
And you?
And first class and posted at the property.
And did you get re, returned signatures on them?
We do.
So all of those notices were received by the landowners?
Well, we, we send them certified. Sometimes they return to us undelivered or.
I'm asking if there were landowners that signed that document saying that they got that notice?
I don't know for each and every one of these, which ones came back signed and which ones came back. Sometimes people refuse them. So I, I don't know that.
So I was just looking for, as you can tell, I was probably, I'm looking for response from the landowners to, to see if that happened. I'm just curious. So, and so we don't know that.
No, I don't know which of these had signatures for the certified mailing or were returned unsigned.
Okay.
Supervisor Bone?
Simple thing, have we checked to see if the taxes are being paid? I mean, that's, that's a good point of abandonment. If they haven't paid any taxes since you sent those letters out, and they may have got the letter very well, but if they didn't sign for it, you're going to get it back, so.
We do check the tax records on these. Some of them, a lot of them have not paid and are in default. Some of them are very close to going to county auction for defaulted taxes.
The five-year.
Yeah. Because some of these are so old that.
And so if they go to that five-year, you're right, if they're on 18, they're 23. So if they go to that, are we, are we in first position? We're not in first position, are we?
No, the.
The lien holder is in first position, right?
Correct. We are a lower priority lien with the penalty liens. And so from what I understand from the assessor is that any bid over the minimum bid that would pay off the default of taxes could be applied toward our lien if there weren't other higher priority liens. But there's no guarantee of that.
And, and the liens will follow through the, through the sale. I mean, that's why you do your due diligence. That's why we need, need to make sure the liens are filed. So when they do their due diligence, the liens are, come up.
You're correct. They're recorded and so they do follow the property. And that's why you do due diligence.
Supervisor Bushnell?
So on that same note, I'm curious if it goes to tax lien cell? Are we notifying? This came up two weeks ago when we were doing a, approving tax lien. So we, we would then notify at auction that there's a 900. So we, we would then notify at auction that there's a $900,000 lien on these properties, correct?
Yeah, we're establishing and building up a procedure between the assessor's office and tax collector's office and our office so that we can communicate about what properties they have, getting ready for auction versus which properties we have liens on or other code enforcement action that would be impacted by an auction. So that communication's being built as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
So I've been getting some calls lately from people who had leased property to grow cannabis, from an owner, and they were the ones that took out the 1600 permit with DFW. And so that LEC is on the hook for that. And they haven't grown for two years. They've, you know, the landowner abandoned the whole thing. The LEC can't do anything about it, but the LEC is left with this 1600 permit requirements that often can be 100, 200,000 dollars or more of roadwork, culvert replacements, and all kinds of different things going on. So I mean, yeah, if the taxes haven't been paid, state cultivation taxes aren't being paid, and the 1600 and/or water board permit conditions and requirements aren't being dealt with and done, we're looking at a massive amount of liabilities that very well, as was stated, could exceed the value of the property. 1600s run out, but even if they've run out, there's still an obligation there, right? That goes on, I believe, beyond the term of, of the 1600 permit. So I'm just thinking that, you know, you gave us these three, a range of opportunities available to us, and there's three of them listed, continuing lien process, foreclose, and the other one is to work with organizations that might purchase and clean them up. And I was thinking about the Urock Hoopa, you know, Hoopa's interested in picking up properties in Supply Creek or other areas within their watersheds that drain into the square. Urock's been taking on more stuff in the lower Klamath areas. And there are land trusts out there that are also interested in picking up properties. And some of them have gotten some of these cannabis cleanup grants from DFW, but only where the landowner is willing to sign this 10-year access agreement, which is absolutely a constraint. Even with a responsible landowner, they kind of look at it sideways, let alone working with an irresponsible landowner, the likelihood of them signing those agreements, so. But I think all three of these are actually tools. You know, and it, it may very well be that we don't really today, you know, line up on one of these, right? It may very well, I mean, from my perspective, I think all three of them are important tools. And it kind of gets a little, it gets site-specific or property-specific in a way as to what maybe is the best path forward. Supervisor Bushnell?
I just wanted to ask Director Ford Brown the comment of the 1600. When I was looking into several of these properties, they don't currently have a cannabis permit on them. And so the 1600 wouldn't come into play and isn't established. I, three of them that I looked at was sheriff's department, code enforcement, and did not contain a cannabis license on that, on that piece of property. So I think, I don't think we can assume that they are cannabis legal properties that have all of that work done or have that work in place. I think it's better to possibly assume that most of them don't.
Yeah.
So, and I just would like ask, to ask Director Ford or Karen if that seems to be the case.
Yeah, these assessments come from unpermitted cannabis cultivation.
Unpermitted, so they never got 1600s?
Correct.
Although they should have, right? Yeah, I mean, the only reason the 1600s get triggered is because you're doing some sort of discretionary action that then triggers these other permits.
Is, is voluntary, voluntary to start the 1600?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I don't know, you know, what's the pleasure of the board here? And do you have any more feedback for us, Director Ford?
Well, I, I heard maybe in kind of an alteration on what Supervisor said, Wilson said in relationship to alternative three, which is to develop more of a policy relative to trying to, what are we going to do with these properties? What's the, the long-term objective? It's one thing to take them in and, and then try to sell them, but if they're resource lands and, you know, they could be used for everything from carbon credits to forest holdings to other things that really have benefit to just plain habitat value. And, and part of the direction of the board today could be to work on developing in our spare time, a, a policy to address that. But I think that we're getting to a place where we're going to have to recognize that these parcels, as, as Karen mentioned, working with the, the tax collector, is that these are going to start to come up for sale.
Yeah.
And do we want to have a plan to deal with these before they go to sale? Or instead of going to sale, or should we just let them go to sale? There's 30 parcels that we're talking about here. 30 parcels that have some degree of cleanup probably that's needed, some of which may exceed the value of the property, but all of them have, have value from an environmental standpoint. All of them have, have value once they're cleaned up.
Okay, I got Mike.
From a property value standpoint.
Okay, thank you. I've got Supervisor Wilson and then Bushnell in the queue.
I mean, you, we can, we can look at the parcel map in relationship to the county and what it is today versus what it is, what it was 50 years ago. And what has driven a lot of subdivision is what was illegal and then now legal or some, some still not legal cannabis cultivation. But where that has go, you know, where that's, that probably not the future for a lot of this. And so we have to ask ourselves, I mean, there's still some future there for, for, for folks, but some of these are just very, they're just extremely challenging spaces. And they're extremely challenging places from the perspective of trying to survive on 30 acres of what is, you know, almost ranchable, almost forested, almost, you know, it's just, it's a very difficult space. And then there's these impacts and these violations that have occurred on these spaces. I, I do think having some sort of policy by which, sort of a land conservation, transfer policy that we could talk about. Again, if, that assumes that no one is coming forward to want to invest in that piece of property either for their living or their residence or whatever that is. And I'm looking at the ones that are in front of us here. They're pretty remote, a lot of them, I mean. And as Supervisor Madrone mentioned, you know, some of these probably have, and I saw a couple that probably, if not adjacent, pretty close to some reservation territory or, or, or within watersheds that may be important to certain tribal organizations. I think instead of like waiting for your spare time to come up with policy, I think maybe what we could do is seek funding to, that might help us address that policy. Like, I, I think there's a real, there's a real pitch that could be made that this, that we could have some, some good land use policy around how to, I don't like this term very, very well, but I just use it, how to repatriate or how to, how to get these pieces of property into good landscape management condition and, and direction.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Director Ford, I'm wondering, you know, like Supervisor Wilson wants to say remote and rural. Well, that is my district, remote and rural, where many of these properties are. And many of these properties have homes on them. What would, if, what would happen with the homes? And many of them are not permitted, I understand that. But could you kind of talk about this, that just for a minute?
So we, we would need to take a look at the condition of the houses, whether or not they could be permitted under, well, prob, under some provision that we've got either AOB or, or, or Uniform Building Code or California Building Code. We, we could put them into a receivership where somebody takes the property, looks at re-establishing the value and, and then selling it.
So if you were, if we were to go down the road of, you know, leaning and repossessing or, or foreclosing on, and there's a homeowner that's not permitted, then as the planning department, you're going, you would have to deal with that. Is that correct?
Well, I think that it would be bad form for the county to sell a property, make a property available that had unpermitted structures on it.
I don't know how we could.
Yeah.
Really, so, okay. And with what Supervisor Wilson was saying, that would be if some private person doesn't want to assume that property. Is that correct? So it would be private over organization first? If that was, was that your idea, Tim, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, basically, we're just going to be running into these just spaces where it's just not functional for someone to invest in that. It's just not going to work. So what, what are we going to do? They're going to be abandoned properties that we need to have some sort of policy around.
Right. Well, I do think the intent of this is to, to recog, to get the landowners to recognize that this is serious and to make, and have reaction to that, that they're going to lose their land. Currently, in the state that it, that it is, you, we put these $900,000 liens on them, and they do nothing. And if the property is owned outright and never sells, nothing happens with the $900,000 lien. And that is, that goes towards the cleanup. So I don't know what we do currently with the other 21 properties. There are violations still on those properties. They're just sitting there, is that correct? And nothing's happening. And so the intent, I get the intent was to, to encourage cleanup so you don't lose your property, which I think works. You got a call yesterday, I think, Karen, from a landowner that doesn't want to lose his, his property, correct? And he's going to work with you now. I recognized some property on there, and I called my constituent and said, "You're going to lose your land, dude." And so that was the intent. But now, going forward, the violations are still there. We do nothing with the property. We don't seek cleanup of the violations. There's $900,000 out there, you know, line item somewhere that just sits there. So it doesn't accomplish anything. That's what my frustration with it.
Supervisor Bone and then Wilson?
Well, I didn't realize we had that many. I know we got one, but I didn't realize we had that many land speculators on here. I think the way we need to look at this is we have property that's basically, we need to, one thing we have to do is we need to get this done sooner than five years. Basically, instead of waiting for the taxing. If somebody hasn't paid their taxes for three years, has $900,000 liens against it and everything else, it's a pretty safe bet they're not going to jump back in and want to fix it. I think they've, you know, dialed away, except for Dude. He's, he's coming in, but I'm just, I'm just saying, out of all, all of these, of all of these, what I'm saying is, I don't know how we do it because we're an agency, but we have relationships with Realtors. And we have Realtor, we have relationships with Realtors that handle ranch properties, rural properties. You know, they'll go knock on their neighbor's door and says, "Hey, you own 480 acres next to this 40, and you realize what a pain in the butt this guy was. Are you interested in getting this property for and cleaning it up?" Or something like that. And then look at what, look what the percentage they'll do it for, or whatever the case be. They're going to give you an assessed value. They're going to do a little bit of the legwork. Hopefully, the market's soft enough where they, you know, there isn't a, you know, they're not beating the door down to buy these properties. I understand that. But there are still people looking for good deals on properties. We're looking, our whole idea behind this is to cover our fees and clean the property up. I have heard that for over 10 years. We, we're putting these fees on there. Exor, is to get their attention, get it cleaned up for the environment, for the watersheds, and put it back into a workable landscape. The guy who worked at 460 may have owned his for 40 years. I mean, there is a lot of speculative buying out there. There, there was, there was a lot of, they didn't make it. So boom, they're gone. Good. But I think what we need to do is bring a professional into the room that handles property. We're making speculations on property, what it's worth, what it's not worth, how we're going to do it. You know, we don't even know how it's auctioned off exactly. So we need somebody that, that is aware of all that, knows the parameters they can work within, you know, and I, and take it to, take it to four of the land brokers and say, "Who will do it for what percentage?" Maybe somebody will do it for three and a half. Maybe somebody will do it for four. Maybe it's going to be 7%. Doesn't matter, but we're not staffing it. And then, and then putting timelines on it all. And I, and then you're going to find out if there's any interest in the property or not at all. Because I, I would love to give them the con, give them away to everybody, but I just, you know, we, we keep doing this. We're not going to have anything on the tax rolls here pretty soon, so.
So Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks. Yeah, which, by the way, the district, my district does go almost within two miles of Fortuna. So, well, I have some, I have some rural properties on my-
Yes, you do. I tried to give you even more.
On my, in my district. Let's see, let me get back to where I was, where I was at. I, I don't think that the board is very far apart necessarily of what, what we're talking about here. I mean, there seem to be some, you know, ideas about strategy a little bit here and there, but mostly it's, you know, what can we do to get to cleanup? I think that the, the $900,000 is at this point somewhat symbolic. It just represents that you've hit the end and, and, and something needs to be done. And yes, there will be a few people who I think will want to maintain those properties, but there are certainly some of these that have just walked away. They're, they probably maybe even don't live in the county anymore or whatever. They're, they're, and that, I think what we're seeing right now is the beginning of this. I don't think this is like the sum total of what we've got. This is the beginning. And that's why I think it is important for us to start thinking about a, a comprehensive policy on how to, to deal with this moving forward, because we're just going to have abatements and mid, and across the landscape that we're going to have to deal with more and more. And I think that we should seek funding from maybe Office of Planning and Research at the state or some, or even some conservation organization or whatever it is to figure out a way to, to give, to help us give, not just a path from a policy perspective, but also seek funding. Because again, many of these properties are just going to be, the mitigations and the abatements are going to be more than the property is worth. And that's then suddenly on us, and we're going, we're going to have, we really need to seek a path to deal with that. That's all I have to say. And appreciate the discussion.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. And I'm going to jump in, I haven't been in the queue for a bit here. I think that, you know, we talked about, the county doesn't want to get into this to make money, right? But it's costing us money. That's the thing. It's cost us a lot of administrative time, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I mean, one idea would be to hire a professional real estate planning expert who is dedicated full-time to looking at each of these individually, because they're all very different stories, and they have different financial scenarios that are going to play out based on the fines, the fees, the liens, the permitting conditions that are still outstanding, those kinds of things. Some of them may very well have less liability than the value of the property in today's market. Some of them are going to be double the liability to the value of the property. But that's a case-by-case basis. So, I mean, from my perspective, like I said earlier, I think all three of these are options, right? But who's going to manage it? And Mike says, you know, "Let's get some money from grant." Okay, maybe, but I think if we stepped in with a position, that person would be able to manage conveying a lot of these properties back into ownership while getting our costs paid and maybe even having a little bit of money to help spay for that position. You know, so that's another way to try and look at it. I have had both the Hoopa tribe and the Urock tribe tell me, and I've been working with the tax assessor, that they want to know, anytime there's any properties that are going to be coming up at auction or in any other way, so that they can bring them back into their, their ancestral territory and their holdings. So they're very interested, and the tax collector is now providing lists when it goes to auction. Here are the properties that are within the Hoopa zone. Here are the properties within the Urock zone. So both those tribes, and I suspect Bear River and, and Weot and others might equally be interested in having the opportunity as a first come, you know, opportunity for them to weigh in and see if they could end up with this property and clean it up and do all these things, so. But you're going to need a position, whether it's through grant monies as Supervisor Wilson suggested, or it's through the proceeds from sales that weren't upside down. Well, you know, those are two different mechanisms to be able to pay for a position, to be able to, to manage all this. Because Karen and her staff already have a full load with code abatement. We've talked about the code enforcement over and over, and, and your staff all have that. So, and that's another way to look at it. Could we use this process to finance a position to help manage this? Because we're going to have 30 before another year is over, not just nine. So we already have 30, actually. We could have 50.
Could, could I put in a-
Could, could I put in a pitch for the budget year?
Yes.
We are looking to reorganize the department to create a new management group. One of them is a program manager to basically oversee, partly oversee, just the kind of thing that you're talking about would be acquiring grants to do work that we otherwise wouldn't be able to do.
Okay.
And it really has to do with acquiring grants for multiple things. One is to do long-range planning work. Another may be to do abatement. Other is probably to do just what you're saying, is to acquire and reconvey properties. And, and those are, are, are things that we're touching right now that we don't have the bandwidth to hit. And so what we would like to plan on proposing to the board is that that's an unfulfilled need within a department that we need to address.
Yep, and there's a way to finance it, I believe, through these properties.
Right.
Okay, final thoughts Supervisor Bone?
Well, I would still, I'm going to go to bat for us hiring a Realtor firm, because if you hire a firm, you get 12 people and we pay them 4% and they don't take sick leave or anything like that. And, I mean, they can, they can tee it up for this person, because they're going to, somebody's going to have to tee it up, clear the property and everything else. But then you get it out there on multiple listings and then you get everybody looking. We're not going to be able, you know, I, I don't know if we want to get into the private enterprise of being in real estate, getting it ready to sell for a real estate agent or a firm, or whoever we decide, or, you know, list it out there, throw each item out there. If you have somebody individually and says who will do it for what, but somebody out there can sell anything. It all, it all sells. I'm just saying, I don't want to, I, I always worry when we take private property into public, and I always worry when we take private jobs into public, when there's somebody already doing that job. And so you're talking about taking a lot of property and just, well, I'll just let them take it and do it. So I, I think the, the vehicle in place to sell it is already in place. They've got, they have their relationships with all their firms and everything else. We are still, they're still not going to be the ones that have to clear up the property. We're still going to need those positions to clean them up, let them know what the liens are, let them know what's going on, what the restrictions are. You can buy it for this with a binder saying you need to have it cleaned up in eight months, because a lot of people would rather clean the property up themselves. And I've probably done 10 or 12 through John, who got these letters. And the $10,000 a day does wake people up that plan on living on their property. So they come in, they clean it up, they can do it a lot cheaper to the level that it needs to be done at, because they, they're, they don't have to mow in, mow out, don't have to pay preventing wage. They're doing it themselves. So I would be reluctant to put a Realtor, excuse me, a Realtor on, but if somebody could tee it up for the Realtors to take care of, I think we have enough of, of, the Realtors Association has enough people out there that could, who have land-based values in there. And I'm thinking of three or four right now, so.
So are you getting what you need to be able to move forward, do you think?
I, I think we are. The only thing I would ask the board to do at this time of the day is to take an action on the assessments, so that we can have that done. And then if you want to give us specific direction on the policy going forward, what I'm really hearing is that the board does not want to just stay with the status quo. There is a, a recognized need to be more proactive in addressing these properties. And part of that is to go out and see what other opportunities are available and develop a policy surrounding that.
Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask for two motions, please?
Yes.
Okay, two separate motions.
That's fine. You want to make them?
I'll make the motion that we address policy concerning the, I don't know, John, how do you want to?
Well, there's approved the administrative civil penalty assessments, and then there is provide direction to planning building on administrative civil penalty liens. Those are the two earlier recommendations, but you've changed that slightly.
Well, I, I am trying to capture it all, because I think what I'm hearing from the board, if I could capture it in a motion, it would go something to the effect that the board directs staff to pursue the different avenues that are available to address these properties with liens. That the policy is not to let them sit. The ideal is to have them conveyed to adjacent properties, placed into larger holdings, cleaned up and, and prepared for sale. And, or any combination of, of those. But there's not just one specific method that the board chooses. I think the board also did mention that it would be beneficial to get a grant, fines, grant money to develop a policy and to implement a policy of, of, I'm not sure the, the word that was used was repatriate. I'm not sure that's the right word, but to place these properties into properly managed.
Holdings.
Holdings, yep.
Okay, obviously, Brooks can have to go back to the archive or the audio to capture that motion. I think you beat us on lengthy motions there. But it's easier when they're written down for certain, but it is late in the day. Are we okay with what John, what Director Ford just shared with us?
I'm not going to vote on the motion to oppose penalties or on these properties without a direction. I had already explained that to Director Ford. And this meeting is not coming with that direction at this time, so I am opposed to that portion of it, as I was when we did it before. I'm happy to vote on the second portion of that, though, if we can split the motions.
Okay, so the first portion was to go forward with the penalties. Second portion was to seek grant funding and/or other things and follow this procedure to get them into proper holdings and cleaned up, et cetera.
Right.
You had more words to it, and I'm sorry that Brooke will have to go back and gather all that for the motion, the actual motion.
I'll, I'll type something and send it to Brooke.
That would be good.
Thank you.
Something very similar to what you stated.
Very, very similar.
Yes, just to be clear.
I'm willing to make a motion for item number one, which is the approved, the proposed administrative civil penalty assessments on property owners who are in violation of various Humboldt County codes. And there's more to it, but it's all written out here and I'm happy to make that motion. I'm not happy to make the motion, but I think it's, it's, it's necessary in order for us to keep moving forward with these processes. And no one believes that anyone is going to pay $900,000 necessarily, but that is the process that we voted on earlier to like get us to this place. And I think it's still reasonable in terms of the motivation to get these things cleaned up and, and dealt with, so.
Okay, we're keeping that separate from the second item right now at this point. Is there a second for that?
And if there's not an alternative, I would ask the board to, to ask us, ask John to give us an alternative, because I don't see an alternative to this right now without really reformulating an ordinance.
I, I would say that's correct. The, the ordinance doesn't give us alternatives in terms of how to finish this process.
Well, I would second the motion for that one part. And I, I do think that, like Dude, there may be people out there that have less than $900,000 in liability and the property is worth 900. And they might be willing, if they knew, they could come forward and figure out exactly what the fines and penalties are, what the conditions are still left that they need to clean up on the property, and if that's less than the value of the property. I mean, in the very early days of code enforcement and abatement, before it came to your department, there were raids happening and there were a lot of prop owners we're talking about. It seemed like a lot of the raids ended up focused on those parcels that were already owned, right? Where there was a lot of equity in the property. Whereas ones that were belly up and didn't have a lot of equity, they got flown by. And I heard this from many landowners, you know, that there was this system of basically getting the people to buy their property twice, you might say. And I heard that from many landowners in Southern Humboldt. But at any rate, we're not there anymore. I recognize nobody's ever going to pay this $900,000, but it is property-specific. It really is for me. So I'm seconding the motion and is there any more discussion on this motion? Please Supervisor Bushnell.
I just, I do want to say that Karen and John, I'm very supportive of, you know, the actions that come from your department. However, I wasn't part of this decision back when. I probably wouldn't have voted for it, because it, as we can see with 21 properties sitting there with no action being taken or cleanup being taken, it has holes. And so I am going to be voting no, but it's not a reflection on your work. I, I just really want to say that.
Thank you. Okay, well, let's go ahead. Do we have any voting buttons or, yes, public comment? Thank you, County Council. That's usually what it means when I get the, yes. I will, but first, we're going to go to public comment. Thank you Supervisor Bushnell. Okay, public comment. We're going to go to the Zoom. We have 5288 with a hand up, star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
So, so the Dude, is, was that the great Lebowski? Wasn't there a movie about him once, the Dude? Anyway, I guess we're getting close enough. Maybe we can stretch this out to five o'clock. I, I did strongly want to say thank you to Supervisor Michelle Bushnell for going that extra mile and actually researching these and looking at that. That always makes the public feel really well, that someone's really paying attention and taking that extra time. If you were to ask me a suggestion, which you won't, I'm going to give it anyway. Yeah, I'd form an ad hoc committee and, and I know Rex is totally in touch with the process of dealing with the Realtors. It would be great to have on board here, strongly approve his technique. And Michelle's obviously got her, you know, already weighed into this. I think it'd be great, great to have an ad hoc committee to work on this. Here's a question you may wish to ask, because this is what I do. I'll tell you first, number one, people will not be buying any of those properties if that 90, 900,000 showed up. They won't even look at it. We don't have time to. We could research all those and maybe, maybe none of them would end up actually happening. We won't take the time. Here, here's a foreclosure thing. Again, this is what I do. If I, if I'm going into a foreclosure and I'm really serious about the property and I see that the lien is, is something that I can deal with, I'll go to the bank. I mean, you guys technically are the bank in this thing, if you're foreclosing. And, and that, you're able to sell that interest in that, in that note or the foreclosure process to someone else. So it might be to the tribes, it might be somebody, therefore you have clean hands. You haven't touched the title. It's never gone into your hands and yet you've been able to transfer that through the process which Rex is bringing up there also to the, to the eventual property owner. And I think there's ways to get around this. I think an ad hoc committee could, could go after that, strongly support you considering that. And I guess I'll, I'll just go ahead and, and say, thank you for having the conversation, even though it was a very long one. Thanks for having me speak.
Thank you commenter. And we'll go to those in the audience today. Would any of the 200 of you here like to come forward? Seeing none of the 200, we'll bring it back to the board for a vote. And we'll do a roll call vote on this one. No, it's too detailed.
Are we, are we voting on which one, one or two?
We're voting on the, what John Ford put forward, I thought.
I don't think there was a second on that. You seconded, I thought you seconded.
I seconded his.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, that's correct. So that's really the motion that's in front of us, is item number one on our staff recommendation.
So if we can vote twice, then I would make a motion for the second recommendation that Director Ford is going to bring forward. And then we could just do two roll call votes, I guess.
I'll second that one too, but I don't think we can do them at the same time.
We got one on the table, so I appreciate that recommendation. So we're going to go ahead and take a roll call vote on the motion to approve staff recommendation number one.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah.
Supervisor Bushnell?
No.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes. Okay, and with that, do we have another motion?
I believe that Bushnell made the motion to have the policy brought back and that was seconded by Supervisor Wilson.
Okay. And any discussion, I will say, is the ad hoc interested in weighing in on this topic at all? You've gotten your hands full with the other stuff.
I think that the staff is very capable and can bring back what they discover.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we need public comment on this motion? No, yes, no? Same item, okay. It's just different parts to it. We separated, okay. Very good. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes. Okay, well, we got both those items. Took us a while to get there. But good discussion, everybody. Thank you. And with that, I believe we are ready to adjourn in honor of John Rice. Anybody like to make any final comment in regards to him?
Um, sure, and we're, actually, we're going to adjourn, adjourn in memory as he passed away two weeks ago. And I, I didn't have the privilege of knowing John very long. I knew of him through my grandfather for many, many years, but actually, since I was elected, have had lots of opportunity to meet with him and, and talk with him and Peggy and his son, Joe, and his grandson Skylar. And, you know, the haydrop idea really was his and something that he had done in 1989. And when I called him and said, John, how are you doing? How's the ranch? And he goes, you know. And that's where that came from. And I, I appreciated John for so many things and his way of life, which was my grandfather's way of life, and he reminded me so much of, of my grandfather. He was an honorable man and just really cared about people. And I'm sure that Rex can say a lot more. He did have a really good relationship with him, but I will miss him. I send so much love to his wife Peggy, as I know she's struggling. I don't know how long they were married, but 50 plus, I think. And I just send tons of condolences and love to his family. And he will definitely be missed in Humboldt County.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
And I, it wasn't mentioned earlier, it was mentioned about the Williamson Act and how strong they were, his dad. But you remember, his dad started the Williamson Act because he was a county supervisor. So John, you know, so he's been around the ropes. He was, he was a regular visitor in my office for years, since I was elected. We'd go have lunch at a local establishment fairly close to here on, on occasion. Got to visit at the ranch a few times. Have known him for many years, did business years, years before that. But the one thing was is he was a true gentleman and his kids, his, he, he followed his kids and his grandkids everywhere on all their sporting adventures, basketball, soccer. Kind of think he went to Texas and stuff. I mean, he, he went all over him and Peggy to, to follow the grandkids. But the, the name is, is synonymous with ranching. You know, there's, there's, there's just a few of those names that are synonymous with ranching before the turn of the centuries and things like that. And, and he was one of those and it was always great to see him at Catlin's. And he was kind of like Joe Montana walking through. He was just that guy. And he was, you would never know that he had more than an acre of land or $2 in his pocket, because he was just that, a true gentleman to everybody. So it's sad, those kind of people you wish lived forever and they don't. But again, to the family, everybody involved, it, it, it was a sad day and, and you talk about the snowdrop in 89. They lost, in this year's snowstorm, they lost two barns caved in because of snow load. Hay storage barns. They were the two barns that they rebuilt in 1989 when they caved in from the snowstorm. So they got 34 years out of them and then they caved in again. I was talking to Joe the other day, so. And I, he passed due to complications from pneumonia and it probably didn't help that he was in four foot of snow on a cat a week before he passed, pushing to feed his cattle, so.
If I could add to that, when I talked to him and said, John, we're going to start dropping hay on Sunday. Can we help you? And he said, not this time. And he'd been on his cat and he said, pass it on to somebody else, but just very humbled. And he said, I'll call you if I need help. And I called him a couple of days later and he had gotten sick and Peggy said, well, he shouldn't have been out on that cat. But I'm just so humbled and just really, you know, said, no, I, I got it this time. I have a cat this time. So just a real, real true gentleman, as Rex said.
That's great. Well, in memory of a, a great gentleman, John Rice, we are adjourned. Oh, sorry, we're not adjourned.
This is actually an adjourned item, so we'll need board action and public comment. Thank you.
Okay, and that's why it was at the end in the way that it was at the end. Thank you for catching that. We are not adjourned and so I just closed my Zoom. Do we have any public comment on Zoom?